Is Spock not coming in?
I don't know.
Why did he bring him in here?
Is he here?
I didn't see the truck.
Do you have his mobile number? Is he coming?
I assumed, I don't know. He didn't call to say otherwise. I know Dan is unavailable.
We can delay it, but if we go ahead, we still can go ahead with just three board members, but there can be no dissent. Everybody has to...
There's really no action being taken today. It's more of a workshop in that we're going to be discussing a lot of the capital.
How come everybody's sitting in the back?
Yeah.
It's just like school.
We're going to go call Cliff and see if, do you mind calling?
Do you want me to turn this back down? Are you going to start?
That's recess until we give Cliff.
If three people are talking at once, more likely they're to go to sleep. The budget is not the most exciting.
Well, the topic of it is the budget workshop, but I really want to focus on workshop as the title of this meeting. I want to keep it really informal. I would like to make it where it's a question and answer. All management staff is here for that purpose. A lot are going to be presenting some of their ideas, what they do during a regular workday, what they're in charge of. And the main thing that we're going to focus on today is capital. Capital is our main driving force in the budget. A lot of the operational stuff is what it is. I mean, you can cut a few things here and there, but the main driving force of the budget is capital. And so that's where I wanted to really kind of heavily focus on, not only current capital, but long-term capital. Also, I wanted to kind of give maybe a background history of how we got here, what's driven us here to where we are currently in our financial condition, and maybe an outlook of where we're going in our financial condition, how we can better serve the district financially with some of the decision-making processes that we're, this as a board will do. The board's main job that we've seen that's got them in trouble or has got them in favor is capital. It's capital decisions, and capital drives all of the focus of the district. And the thing is, the district has a lot of capital, and then we have a lot of old capital that maybe has been neglected due to the fact that we don't have the funds, you know, available to do it. So those are the things that I think, you know, that I'm not a complete expert in, but I know that we have experts over here that are experts in that, that they're going to be presenting to you. The one thing I did want to go through in this, just for edification of the board, is that... Do you want to do a roll call?
Well, I just think for the record.
Okay, sure.
I'm sorry. You're on a roll.
Now you're on a roll call.
Director Whitely is unavailable. Director Rice?
Here.
Director Solak?
Here.
Vice President Jacobson?
Here.
President Kellogg?
Just for the edification of the board, just being that a lot of these is the first time this board has gone through a draft or through a budget, is just I wanted to kind of explain the philosophy of the budget, first of all. So obviously, a cover page here and table of contents, but what the previous board, and also to let you know, this was normally ran all through the Finance Committee. So the Finance Committee did all of the edits, did all of the ideas, and then it was brought back to the board for kind of a one-time view to the board as, here we go. This has not been presented to the Finance Committee. This is the first time this is being presented. So normally what we do is we kind of give the Finance Committee a rough draft of what the budget's going to look like, some numbers kind of tossed in there. Well, that's what you guys are seeing. So this isn't buttoned up. This isn't, that's why I kind of put in quotations, "rough draft." There's a lot of things that haven't been updated due to the fact that there's a lot of changes that are going to still be made. And so my, and based on kind of George not, GM not being here and stuff like that, I think that we should kind of take this and not rush it through. I think that we should, we don't have to have a budget completed by June 30th. There's no state requirement like a school district or something like that. So I think that what we need to do is really flush out a lot of the ideas of where we want the district to go, the priorities of the district, and then build the budget around that based on those thought processes. So if we adopt this in July, in August, that's not going to affect the district. I think it is, it's probably a good thing to make sure that every kind of thing is kind of thought through and that the board's mindset and decisions and voices is heard within this budget, not just the Finance Committee or not just staff members. So that's my two cents on that. So basically, what it's kind of done is you kind of have a district overview of who it, and obviously, I realize these are not correct, those will be updated, but it kind of gives an overview of who, what the district is, what our leadership style is, our mission, who we serve, how the budget's controlled in the budget process, gives a staffing summary. This will be updated also. This was George, one of George's programs that I still am trying to flesh out. And then it gives just a big budget overview. So it kind of tells where we were actual, where we're going budget, and where, and then the next year's thought process or budget.
Are we going to come back and go through each one of these after you get done here?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not glossing over that?
No. And it just kind of gives a global view of everything with what the districts, the categories and the estimates that we're making. Again, a different view of that budget overview, cash projections, blank pages you'll see in there for printing purposes. And then it kind of goes into a letter from the board about, or a letter to the board about kind of the capital improvements, the priorities that we're looking at, tenure capital summary, the accomplishments of the district. And this is where we kind of get into more of the voice of the district, of what we want to kind of promote. What have we done? What have we done in the past to really promote the district and save the district money or just to improve the district? Try to promote that our water rates are still very comparable to others and still very Talk about what the challenges, what we've done, the gallons per capita per day. And then we get into the issues and concerns of the district. Okay, these are kind of the drivers of the budget.
Kevin?
Yeah?
Do we have enough copies for all the staff?
I think everybody got a copy. If not, I have a copy right here if someone wants one.
There's an extra one, a couple extra on that.
I have one already.
There's another one there, too.
No, they've gotten all ones.
You guys need one?
I'll take one.
And then this gets into the strategic business plan that we kind of put off because of, with the GM leaving, that will go through and update. But then it kind of just then peels apart from there. It goes into revenue, gives a revenue overview, the rates, where we're at, operational expenses, budget, labor, and then it goes into each one of the departments, and we'll walk through each one of these departments later on. But we have, just for everybody's knowledge, we have five departments. We have sources, we have six departments. Sources of supply, recreation, water treatment, transmission and distribution, customer service, and administration. So those are the six departments that we work with on an operational basis. We also break apart pipeline because pipeline is a capital project. So even though we're using our own labor, we're capitalizing that cost and putting it on the books as a capital expense. So that's why that's broken out. And then we have the capital improvement part. We'll walk through those. We'll walk those in much more detail, and then our debt service. So that's just an overview of how the budget was structured, kind of the philosophy behind it, that the further you dig in, the more detail you get. If you want the, just the, you know, thousand-foot view of what's going on, it's at the very front of the document.
I'm glad you mentioned that a lot of this was incorrect for dates and everything because I was feeling sorry for Ann because I knew she was going to run out of tabs.
No, I didn't.
That's why I said it was rough, rough draft.
I started highlighting things and I thought, boy, Ann's going to, she's going to run out of little...
No, he told me that it was all rough, so I...
Okay.
So I'm going to just present kind of a little slideshow that I actually presented at the very, at one of our things, is how did we get here? Kind of, just so that the board knows kind of the history behind the depletion of the reserves, of how we've kind of gotten here through the thought process of the previous board. And so that's kind of, how did we get here? So 2011, the staff did come to this board with a Prop 218 notice that included a 12% rate increase, a four and a four. At that time, we actually had a really large debt service payment that was almost a million dollars a year. So knowing that in 2011, if you remember the economy, the economy was in the dumps. People were very crying, a lot of poor, which a lot of them were. People were losing homes, a lot of vacancies. And the board heard that and understood that. And so with my help, they, we went out and we were able to take that million-dollar loan that was going to be two years of a million dollars and spread it over three years at $500,000. So that helped us in that we had cash flow issues that were available to there to pay for that, to try to get us through this little lump of process. So after hearing, after the board hearing from, well, after, the board decided to take the 12% and move it to a 3%, knowing that we could still stay cash float, or still stay afloat cash-wise because we reduced that debt down, and they delayed it till six months. This actually cost the district a million dollars. But that was known to them based on this spreadsheet right here. If you look at the spreadsheet, this was what was given to them to show that their rate increase that they were going to do was going to run the district out of money in 2016. That was, that was knowledge. So them coming to the public at that, 2016 with the large rate increase, this, the board was, had knowledge of that. Staff had knowledge of that. I think that what we did was we didn't communicate that well to the, to the public at the time in 2011, that, hey, we're going to get you through this, but in 2014, 2015, be ready for a big rate increase. So that's, that was the first item that we, so us depleting our reserves was a board decision. They knew that based on the information that was gathered right here. And the capital that was, that was taken into consideration at the time was a $2 million process water recycle project, not a $15 million process water recycle project. So that was with the initial 2011, 2012 study that showed, oh, we'll just have to redo some ponds and maybe put this system in here that do the magic. So where did the money go? So in 2010, 2012, we did the meter replacement project for $5 million. That was through borrowed funds. So when people start talking about that we had $10 million in the bank and where did you do all the, with this $10 million, you just blow it every place. Most of that $10 million was borrowed funds. So $5 million was our monies, but it was already earmarked for the meter replacement project. We had an office corporation yard, we did a skater project and a Billy Road project, and we borrowed $3.3 million for those projects. Again, those were decisions that were made before that 2011 downturn, before the other things. 2013 and 15, we did a A-tank rehab and A-zone upgrade for $650,000. That was just paid cash out of the reserves. Those were some of the things that was in that capital that they knew we were drawing down those reserves for, that were earmarked for those projects. The water rights extension, we've paid out $320,000. Again, not borrowed funds out of reserves.
Is the water rights extension all legal fees?
No, it's all environmental...
Sequo?
Yeah, engineering fees.
Oh, and was that for that bladder that was going, supposed to go on topic now?
No, this is just for the water rights that are outstanding, that we have, that we're trying to get an extension or go to permit on.
Okay, thank you.
I'll comment on that because I just got a copy of the work done by, I think it's three years old, I think.
De novo?
Yeah.
Five-year rule.
Yeah, but several times I asked for it, I never got it, but Kevin got it for me the last time, and Dustin gave it to me. As far as I know, none of the rest of you have seen it. And that was 250,000 or 300,000?
It's $360,000 contract, but we still have 66,000 outstanding.
Yeah, well, they haven't finished the report. It's a draft.
Yeah. And so what I, and Neil can talk about it more. He was, he's really actively involved in that, but we'll, and that's one of our long-term capital things that we'll go over. And then in 2012 to current, the process water recycle project, it's $2 million that we've paid out of reserves. That's monies that we are, it's not borrowed monies, it's not grant funds, it's not, it's $2 million out of reserves. So that's...
What were the reserves?
Huh?
Exactly, which were the reserves?
Well, we had a, we had the facilities fund that we paid quite a bit out of that, and then the other ones is just out of operational reserves. I mean, non-designated monies that were just sitting there that weren't earmarked for anything special, but that's where they have gone, is to the process water recycle.
And that's the money we've paid to AECOM so far?
That's correct. AECOM and Lee and Rowe. So Lee and Rowe was the original one that we paid monies to, and then we paid the remaining monies to AECOM after they picked up what Lee and Rowe had already done.
So that was for my time, Lee and Rowe, who was that?
So Lee and Rowe was the one that brought forth what they called the Deskin System, which was the original thought that was, you were going to redo this, the ponds, and put in under drainage stuff to filter out all of the bad stuff, and then take that and recycle it back into the plant.
That was one of their alternatives.
Yeah, that was one of their alternatives.
They developed the preliminary design report.
Alternative report before alternative.
The ultimate conclusion was that was some plate settler and a large basin and recycle there the plant. Then AECOM was brought in to do a life cycle analysis cost on that versus a wetland. And from that, it developed into AECOM doing the design work based on the preliminary design report that Lee and Rowe had made.
So yes, so Lee and Rowe was hired in 2012. Right around there. So they were hired right within the, so the permit expired, or we got notification of, in 2010 of the items.
There was a permit in 2010. It was a 2010 to 2015 permit.
But we knew we had to change.
To be able to meet the end of the 2015 criteria.
So we hired them in 2011, 2012, right around there. They went through multiple iterations to come up with, I believe, three alternatives to have a design. The board decided to go with alternative three, which was the plate settler design and the big basin. The wetlands was also brought up at that time as a solution. The board decided to take the alternative three that the majority of the board decided to go with, and the wetlands, and bring on, and go out for RFP for a life cycle analysis of which, of, to give a full cost analysis of both options. The board selected AECOM through the RFP to do the life cycle analysis. They then came back with the conclusion that the wetlands would not be the correct solution, that the alternative three would be the correct solution for the board. The board then decided to give the design contract to AECOM at that time.
Well, could you briefly explain what the first two options were from AECOM, not the wetland?
From Lee and Rowe.
Lee and Rowe.
No, you said there were three from AECOM.
No, three from Lee and Rowe.
Oh, okay.
Board decided to go with alternative.
So one of them was Lamella plates, and what were the other two from Lee and Rowe? Just briefly.
Destins was the first one. Yeah, which is a proprietary, basically like a rapid sand filter. We actually went and looked at a few of them, the two different places that had just put them in, that they weren't working.
Okay.
So we said, no, we definitely don't want that one.
What was the other one?
It's all along, I think rebuilding the ponds, doing the ponds of...
Yeah, one of them.
It was a pond auction, yeah.
Without, I think it was, wasn't Destins, it was a modified Destins, second alternative. Instead of proprietary Destins, it was just a modified kind of a pond there.
I was curious, seems like we're kind of going in a circle.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's copies of the reports on file. I have a copy at home.
Yeah, I do, too.
So if you want to go to, as far as reading what happened, the project went from 2 million to 8 million at that time.
Those two Lee?
2 million was never any hard or fast number.
No, okay.
It was a spitball number that the engineer threw out that he regretted.
Well, the next meeting, he came to apologize.
That was Lee and Rowe or AECOM?
Lee and Rowe.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, that's a lot of money going out of this district. So that's just capital. Conservation costs in 2011, and Neil's got some really good information on where we've gone when it comes to conservation. Conservation is great from a operational standpoint, but it's really bad from a revenue standpoint. So in 2011, when we did that big elaborate spreadsheet and it showed that we were going to run out of money in 2016, we had the assumption that consumption was going to stay flat. And that we weren't going to get, and we actually had, we were showing some, at some points, consumption going up in areas, some areas, you know. So we were assuming that consumption was going to stay flat. With the meter project, one of the costs, or the benefits of the meter project was you were going to receive more consumption revenue because your meter was going to be more accurate.
Yeah.
So we made that assumption, too, that, oh, we're going to get more revenue, people are going to be, you know, charged for exactly what they're going to be used, and then we had this drought. And the state came in and the mandates and our customers were very conscious of water, and we just started seeing this fall off and fall off and fall off and fall off. So 2015, well, first of all, in 2010, the state put in 20 by 2020 mandates, and our cus, we met it as a district by 2012, I think. I think we had met our goal of 20 by 2020. So that, that right there, or 2014, I know we met it by 2014, that we had already cut back 20% of our production. A lot of that, though, was lost water savings because we went through and we did a tremendous amount of great pipe replacement. We replaced Billy Road, which Neil will talk about, was just a geyser, just water was going, we have no idea, down a river somewhere. And that, and so we saved water that way. So the production side, we were showing that we were saving the 20 by 2020, but we were hoping that on the customer side, we would still see the revenue stream coming in. So they set our cutback percentage in 2015 to 36%. Under PID policy, we would only require a 20% cutback. The district spent over $100,000 in conservation costs, toilet replacement program, the spray nozzles, water timers. So again, money's going out without monies coming in. And PID customers cut back 41% on the highest consumption months. So we just saw a big decrease in revenue. And I have this up to February of last year because as of April is when we actually put in our new rates. So April, we actually saw an increase. But this was our big drops, where through these hot summer months that we normally were seeing the 300s, $1,000 consumption numbers, we were seeing 150,000, almost half of what we got. So that's $700,000. So not only have we spent all these reserves down, we spent money on conservation, now we're not bringing in the 700 that we assumed we would be bringing in based on those other consumption budget numbers. So here's the process water recycle project. I think we kind of went through this. Oh, here's our options actually in there.
Hey.
So the district hired Lee and Rowe. It was 2012, but January, to develop a solution. And then 2014, so this took a long time, two years to finally get just this three alternatives because it was such a complex issue that they were trying to, within a small area of land, presented the three alternative, constructed existing ponds using tanks to hold the water, wash water clarification basin and equalization tanks. Is that right? Does that make sense? And then the clarification size for absorption clarifier flushing rates. So that's more the option three is where Lee and, or AECOM went through, and that's where they developed the option three. So, and that cost us $231,000 just to get the three options out on the table. We had constructed wetlands. Ronald Christ presented wetland option. There's a life cycle analysis. So we paid AECOM $22,000 to come in and perform a life cycle analysis. And then in August of 14, the board hired AECOM to design a mechanical dewatering system. And we've paid them $1.6 million for the 70% plans that we've already done. That's all, all this money is coming out of reserves. All this money is coming out of reserves.
There was a pilot study now also.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Confirming that the mechanical lamella option is feasible.
What was that?
We did a pilot study.
Pilot study, that's right.
How long was that run for?
Three months, three months. It all, it finally worked when we found the right polymer. Tried to use our own plant polymers as a way of saving money. Did not work, failed. Used the proper polymer, it worked. Had the proper loading rates.
Did you run it, did you run it in a change in weather periods, or did you run it during good times or bad times? When did you run it?
We ran it when we had it, unfortunately, which was late spring, summer. I can't remember if that...
It was, yeah.
It wasn't winter.
It wasn't winter.
So we really don't know how it would have done when the water was really turbid?
Well, the turbidity feeding into it should be fairly consistent because it's not our raw water. It's our cleaning water. Our cleaning water is, doesn't really change based on different types of year.
Your frequency and everything would definitely change.
Frequency sure changes, without a doubt. And volumes change, but the turbidity of that water really doesn't change too much.
During the summertime, aren't you going to get more algal-type organisms? And in the wintertime, you're going to get, you're going to get higher turbidity that's going to be inorganic and...
We don't get algae that significant in the summer.
Really?
That would affect that, might, yeah.
Because I would think your chlorine levels would have to go up during those times. And during the wintertime, you wouldn't probably use much chlorine.
I don't worry typically in the winter, I'm going to go in the summer.
Interesting.
What, what polymer was it that you used that helped?
Superflock.
Superflock?
Yeah. It was recommended by the manufacturer.
That wasn't AECOM. Who was the, who'd we use for the pilot study?
Westec.
Westec?
It provided the equipment. AECOM, they lined it all up, I think.
And that's the polymer that made the plate settlers work? Is that what you're saying?
And that's the polymer that made the plate settlers work, is that what you're saying right?
Yep.
I think we paid AECOM direct, they set up the Westec to come in.
Yeah, AECOM set the whole pilot.
The pilot studies on the website, used to be anywhere.
So going forward, what, and this is kind of for the edification of the board too, the salary and benefits kind of the one, I mean, that's our biggest operational expense. The board voted five oh in 2014 on both the union and management groups to include a one percent, one point five percent upon ratification. So they gave a one point five percent increase upon ratification. And now the COLA is attached to social security every year. And so in January of 2016, it was zero. And in January of 2017, which is not on here, is point three percent. So from a district standpoint, controlling the salaries and benefits has been pretty good. I mean, I, I think, I think the district has a really good, fair contract with both groups. The one thing, healthcare is going to be an issue that continues to increase, we'll have to see where it goes. But the union contract expires June thirty, June thirtieth of 2017, and then the management is a year behind that. So the last contract, they used to be on the same contract years, and now they've split them so that one comes up and the other one. So management actually took a four-year contract where they took a three-year contract.
Is that a pun, the last sentence, the remaining salary increases are tied to social security?
They're tied.
They're tied as well, but they're tied.
I'll have to change that. I just, I just switched the screen, you can't see it anymore, it's changed. And then here's our debt, our debt service. And if you look in 2017, eighteen, we made assumptions that we were going to be borrowing quite a bit of money going forward. Obviously, that hasn't come to fruition, but money's still going out. So it's a good thing, bad thing, we haven't got reimbursed for a lot of those expenses that we were assuming we were going to get financed. And because, and the reason why is because the state revolving fund is a difficult process. It's a process that's worth going through because of the benefits associated with it, but it's a very difficult process to get finalized. We're working right now to try to get monies back from a design standpoint so that we can kind of split the design of the process water recycle project away from the construction of the process water recycle project. But there's also issues now of, of what is the project? What are, what are we designing, you know? Is this, are all these different iterations of thoughts going forward? Are that, is that one global design, or is it just the design of the end result? And so me and Jim have been working with the state revolving fund to try to get that narrowed down. So until we get that narrowed down, those funds that we've expended out of reserves are just sitting out there. They're not, we're not getting reimbursed for those type of things. So, so it's, it's not like we're out of the woods by any stretch of the imagination.
How much did we ask from the state revolving fund?
We asked for fifteen, fifty?
Almost seventeen point three.
Seventeen, seventeen point three mil. But what we're looking for is to split that seventeen and go, give us three million for design and give us fourteen million for the project. And if you do that, what you can do is then once the design is complete, that, that stops that process. So that, that then shifts the design off into one bucket. And then you can take your construction side and shift that into a different bucket. So it does, if you never go to construction, you're okay. Because you, the design portion is its own little bucket. Where right now, everything's in one big bucket. So there, the design and the construction are all in one big bucket. So that's kind of what we're trying to do, and that's what, what Jim did with the BRES, is he shifted the design into one bucket and the construction into the other bucket, even though the full project has been deemed fundable.
So if we did nothing ultimately, we would lose the money we'd spent already, it wouldn't be reimbursed from the state revolving fund?
No, what we're trying to do is say, we want to be reimbursed for that. So what, that's what we're trying to do to split those two is to say.
So if we're successful in that, then if this alternative that we've talked about, where we could get the water quality to back off, and we did nothing, we could still be reimbursed for the money we've spent.
Right, but, but we still have a project that is going to be associated with that. Because with the, with the study is going to be probably redesigns of something. And so what we're thinking is, okay, that's, that's not only lump the study into the design, but lump all of, from Lee and Rowe to that study into one bucket. And then once we get an understanding of what we have to do to meet the new constituent requirements, let's say, then we back into the construction side, and now we have a construction loan on that side. So that's, that's, that's our thought process is to kind of, okay, tell us what, what you're looking for, and then now, now that we know what you're looking for, we're back into the construction to make that work.
Is there any restriction on, on this money that you're going for, that we couldn't choose a design build project?
I don't believe there is. I, I, no, I don't think that there is a design build, like restriction on that.
Thank you.
Kevin, are you looking for any other sources?
Always, yes. And that'll be something I think that we, we as a board need to look at too, is the grant, maybe looking at grant options. But maybe also, you know, we have, we have one grant writer, but maybe we start, maybe go out for maybe another proposal of grant writers.
You know, that, that brings up a point, Kevin, and I can't remember who mentioned this to me about too long ago, but they said, we haven't heard anything lately about the individual we've been paying a salary for grant.
Yeah, we're not, just, we're not paying a salary, we're paying her based on her hourly use or time.
Have we had any, have we been paying that individual, and have we had any activity?
Yeah, so we, yes, we have been paying, yeah, we, we just got a, and we'll talk about it further on, but we were, we're able to succeed, successfully get that FEMA grant that has multiple great projects in it, and it's a seventy-five, twenty-five grant.
I think we're paying like nine hundred and thirty-six.
Oh, it's not successful yet?
June twenty-eighth, FEMA and OES, our meeting to discuss our project. Okay, we're in the second iteration, we were invited to participate in the second iteration of grant proposals. So the first, first iteration, we didn't get it, second iteration, I think we ran out of money, but we were asked, so.
You submit, that's good.
We're still in there. June twenty-eighth is coming up.
That's great.
Twenty-eight days.
So we're fingers crossed.
And our portion was around nine hundred and thirty-six thousand on that?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And, I mean, Sherry Lassek, our grant writer, was big instrumental in that, as well as Neil, in the grant of writing for that. And the second step, she, she made sure that we were in conformance with what CALOES was asking us to include in the, in application. So she's been very helpful.
Okay, so she's just been quietly behind the scenes doing her thing and it's been productive?
Yeah.
All right, I just didn't have an answer, and I can't remember who it was that asked me, but I said, yeah, I haven't heard anything about that lately.
But I, I think maybe when we get through this, go ahead.
There is, in Durham, there is an expert grant writer that I'm in contact with who would just love to bid on sort of grant writing services. She's the principal owner of a nationwide grant writer company, Grant Writers and such and such. She's between DC and Sacramento and all over, so.
What's her name?
I, I'm not sure, I can't, it's been a while, it's been a couple of months.
A blonde lady? Have you met her?
I talked to her on the phone, told George.
Last name?
We just haven't resolicited yet.
Sure, maybe, maybe now's not the appropriate time, but maybe it would be nice for staff to put some type of a report together as to what we've been doing with this current individual, and what we are looking at going forward on, and possibly, maybe you could weigh in. And we, I think we would all like to know a little bit more about what grants are out there and who's working toward it.
I agree, and I think it's her last name, Carter.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah.
She's one of my customers, and I've talked to her at length about this and recommended her a couple of years ago to become involved. She knows the grant writer we have personally, seems to be very knowledgeable. Politics are out of it now, so maybe we can actually talk to the lady.
I agree.
Yes.
Very qualified.
Yes, very quali, much more qualified than the present gal we have. And the present gal was supposedly not going to spend much money unless she got results, and for a long time, she didn't get any results, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and I think it is appropriate to kind of talk about it now because this is what we're here for. I, I, I think Sherry has done great, and I, but I do think that someone local would be a benefit to us. I know that the one that, I can't remember her name, but Carter, is very knowledgeable in, in water and getting water and grants and disadvantaged community type stuff. I think she's, she's probably, I think she's worked with.
How do we reach out to her then?
Be simple.
I, I, I.
I have a contact.
Me too.
Just pick up the phone, call her.
What, do you want to, do you want to take that maybe and see if you can pursue an introduction to the board?
Sir, well, sir, sure.
Absolutely, I have her at contact too, so.
Well, I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we were, I think we were planning on doing an RFP for grant writing, so she would participate in that.
That's why I didn't know if this is appropriate time or not, but I thought of bringing it up because.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's what we want to talk about, yeah, is maybe, and I, and I think she's been successful in a lot of communities around the area.
She's been very successful.
Yeah, yeah.
Her resume was fantastic.
Yeah, she's super personal.
Do we have that resume?
I don't, it's.
I just found out, I found her, I saw her consequences, I, somehow she popped up and I called her and.
You can go online and probably find out some stuff.
Yeah.
Do we have a current contract with the other gal, or?
No, it's, well, I think it's, it's, it's an open contract.
Open.
So it's not a, it's not a do this, I think it's based on, she's supposed to be out there looking for issues or grants for us, and then it's based on the work that she does for.
I think it's ten percent of what she gets.
Oh, I see, yes.
She knows an hourly rate.
Hour?
Hourly.
You know, we've already spent money on her, that isn't on a ten percent, because we really don't have any money from.
Is that in, is that in our financials that we see every month?
Sherry, yeah, Lassek, yeah, you would see any checks that would have gone to her, and one would probably be coming up.
She's been a line item, actually.
If you, oh, okay, let me just see how much further we have here, because.
Sure, go ahead, I didn't mean to get you sidetracked, I was just kind of curious.
This is what this is for, I brought this up, so this is an open book for, for the, for the board. If you want to know how much we paid last, Sherry Lassek, I can just tell you.
Oops, am I in, oh, not accounts, I need to go into AP.
She tried for a conservation, water conservation grant, we didn't get it, it was kind of complicated. Too many, I think there were too many aspects that we were trying to get out of the conservation grant.
That's Lassen.
Patrick, no, that's not the right one.
L A S I K.
No, it's not coming up as her, Lassen.
Is it under Sherry?
Silver, it's Silver Consulting, S Y L.
That's right, S Y L.
Silver, yeah.
There it is.
There it is.
Oh, there you go.
So we've paid her thirty-eight thousand dollars over, what was that?
Oh, I see, okay.
Four years.
Four years, okay.
Thirty-eight K, and what did she actually brought us in that period?
Well, this will be the first one, actually, yeah, yeah.
Nothing.
Just, just on her.
Uncle, back in, back in history for you, when we hired her, Doug Fleischer talked up and said she better have some performance or we might find somebody else. Well, that didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, well, maybe it's appropriate that I brought that up.
I think we were, we were going there anyway.
Yeah, we were, we were on that path.
Good.
But, but yeah, so if you got, I mean, that's why this is an open book, if you guys want to know how much we paid X, Y, and Z, just, there it is, so.
Great.
Thanks for the info, yeah. Yep. So that gives you a little bit of background of how we've got to where we are. Hopefully, that's, that's good knowledge for all the board to understand. Now we're going to get into going where we're going. And this is where we'll get some input from staff about long-term capital needs of the district going forward. I'm going to let Neil take it from here. This, I think water supply is a, one of the crutch, crutches of the district. Just, just a little bit of background too, from just being out there and talking to other districts and stuff like that, is that we're unique. We're a very unique district, that we have our own reservoir, our own water rights, and our own construction crews. To try to find a district to compare us to, it's, it's very difficult, very difficult.
Kevin, this is all only on the monitor, is there a way for you to center that somehow, I'm only seeing half of your data?
Yeah, sorry about that.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, South Feather is very similar to us, except they have power plants and lots of money.
But, but South Feather also has ag water too. We have, we, we're a disadvantaged community, we have tons of steel pipe. We were built, you know, back in the early nineteen hundreds. We, we have two reservoirs. And so we, we are, we are unique in that way, and you're right, South Feather is comparable, but they have power now. Before South Feather got power, their, their financials did not look good. They were, they were going, they were going down quick, but, but they also knew that there was that, you know, little air pad at the bottom that was going to pop them back up and make them go to the ceiling. So, so they, they definitely are, are similar in some areas, but now they're, it's hard to compare. But to try to go out, you know, a lot of these districts, they're, they're, they're buying water from wholesalers. They're either, or they're pumping the water out of the ground. They don't have the infrastructure costs that we have, where we have treatment plants and we have the reservoirs and all of that. And then, you know, trying to, to work within the community that we work with, where we have no sewer systems, you know, we have bigger lots, we are in a fire zone, you know, those, those things make us very, very unique. So I think water supply is, is one of our big concerns, and it's been a concern from, from a long time ago, but I think Neil has some really good information about maybe going forward, what our concerns should be and maybe shouldn't be. So I'm going to turn it over to Neil.
Okay, and Kevin, I'm going to ask for your help to switch slides, you kind of, kind of bounce back for a little bit.
Sure.
But basically, what I'm going to talk about with respect to water supply is liability. Because one of the big hidden items that the district has been looking forward to for quite a long time, longer than I've been here certainly, has been capital cost, capital cost for projects involving expanding our water supply. But we've seen some big changes in how we're using water over the past twenty years, say. Nineteen ninety-seven, we were right around ten thousand feet a year of district water demand. By two thousand eight, we were down to eight thousand feet per feet. By twenty-ten, twenty-twelve timeframe, which was pre-drought, so we're not talking about the influence of the state mandate to reduce water use or people seeing that it was dry and they were pitching in to try to help conserve. We were down to around six thousand feet per feet a year. It was bouncing around a little bit, but it was, you know, below six thousand, a little above six thousand.
Can I stop you for a second? Kevin, should he be at the microphone so that we're good with the, because I'm not sure they can hear you, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Go ahead.
So basically, we've been looking at this trend where even absent the state's mandate to reduce, that came about in recent years, we were seeing our, our demands dropping off, and there were some reasons for that. One is that we have reduced our lost water pretty dramatically. Kevin referred to a project that we did in two thousand eight where we replaced about a mile. Kevin referred to a, a project that we did in two thousand eight where we replaced about a mile of pipeline on Billy Road. A pipeline we didn't even know was particularly problematic, but when we got out there and replaced it using a contractor, they found a number of non-surfacing leaks which were huge. Our lost water dropped by about fifty acre feet a month immediately following the replacement of that main. We hit the jackpot. We reduced our lost water by about six hundred acre feet a year, just with one pipeline project. We had no idea that that, that sleeping dog was there, but it was, it was causing us an enormous amount of lost water. We've done other things to reduce our lost water and we've done things, the, the metering project, for instance, to help our customers reduce their lost water. Now we notify people promptly that they've got a leak and some of our customers don't respond to that, others do and they fix that. Now, there's the downside for revenue, you know, Kevin looks down and says, our projections of revenue increasing because we're going to have more accurate meters and we weren't going to have under registration. That's been offset by our customers saving water. So anyway, even by, before the drought came about, we were already reducing our, our water demands pretty dramatically in the district. That's a trend that you don't ordinarily expect to see. I mean, you expect growth to slowly increase demands. We've been going the opposite direction. That's a good thing, because it's going to save us an enormous amount of money on capital projects if we don't have to build expensive water supply projects. The cost to build a new Magalia Dam would be tens of millions of dollars. If we don't have to take on that cost, that's going to be something that's going to save the, the customers money and it's going to save the district an enormous amount of borrowing. So anyway, what I'd like to do is move forward to the next slide here. You can kind of see, this is a really busy graphic here, but what's going on here, this is from a model that I've created and I run fairly frequently with all sorts of different scenarios and tools to, to model different what-if things. And what we're looking at here is a few things superimposed on this graph. So I'm going to, since you haven't had a chance to see one of these before, I'm going to just kind of slowly walk you through what, what's on here. There's a, a graph there that's blue colored and that's storage levels. Those blue points with the blue lines connecting them, that's storage. I better back up though and explain that what's going on here is, this is looking at a particular demand for water, superimposed on historical runoffs to our reservoirs. So this is not, and this is not showing you what actually happened in nineteen twenty or nineteen thirty-four or any point in time. What it's showing you is what would happen if we were to take a demand, in this case, ten thousand acre feet, and superimpose it on the runoffs that we historically had, actual runoffs, but with a, with a arbitrary number for demand. And so what, what this allows us to do is see, well, what would be the influence of taking a particular amount of demand and putting that on our water supply facilities? So in this case, this is looking at nineteen ninety-seven type demand, ten thousand acre feet. And you can see that if we had to superimpose that demand on our historical water supply, that, that graph drops down pretty low in some places. Now, another thing that's also on here is a bold red line and that red line is the amount of water that we're supplying in response to that demand. Over on the left hands, or the right-hand side, you'll see a label that says, demand percent supply, and there's percentages there. And so that red line goes up as high as a hundred percent in the years that we were able to supply a hundred percent of the demand, given that supply availability. But you can see that it also drops down even as low as fifty percent. So in some years, actually quite a few years out of that hundred and hundred and, yeah, a hundred and ten years or so of time interval, we have records for the hydrology of our, of our watershed. You can see that there's quite a few years there where we had fifty percent cutbacks would be required if we were trying to supply ten thousand acre feet of water a year. So basically, what, what this does in this model, the rules that apply to our cutbacks from our water management plan are applied by the model itself. So it looks at the reservoir level as of April first each year and says, what does the urban water management plan say about that? And so if the, the storage is below, I think it's ten thousand two hundred acre feet or something like that, it implies a fifteen percent reduction in water supply. If it's below a different number, it's ninety, around nine thousand or so, I think it is, it applies a twenty percent cutback. If it's below the thirty percent cutoff number, it applies a thirty percent cutback and so forth. So that's why this red line then is in here indicating what we can supply, because each April first, the model looks at, well, what would the urban water management plan say about what we should serve our customers for the coming year? And it would apply that cutback the way, in a, in a manner analogous to the way the board would do. They, if the board were looking at, well, gee, our reservoir is pretty low and we can't, we can't possibly meet our demands this year, so based on the urban water management plan, we believe that we should institute a thirty percent cutback this year, for instance.
How did you factor in the, the lowering of Magalia Reservoir into this?
That is factored in here because the storage that's in this particular model run is the, the storage that's available with Paradise Red Fork and Magalia Reservoir reduced to the seven hundred ninety-six acre feet that it's.
Okay, so the whole thing is based on what currently it would be as of today with our lowered level?
Right.
Okay.
But it's also possible to bury that storage number in here to do what-if scenarios of, well, what would happen if we built another reservoir that held this much storage? Then we could, we could create a new model run that would.
What would that have looked like in comparison to this if we hadn't had to lower Magalia?
It would move that number, you see the, the, the blue lines come up and spike at about twelve thousand three hundred acre feet. Well, that would move that kind of threshold there higher. And as a consequence, it would mean that the entire.
Yeah, graph would.
Graph would move up accordingly.
So lo- so lowering that reservoir really could cost us in times of crisis?
It did cost us, yeah. This is the nineteen ninety-seven demand, superimposed on the reduced reservoir, which occurred coincidentally in nineteen ninety-seven. So, yeah, that, that cost us. And if we were to make other changes to our water supply, for instance, when we go into the licensing of our water right, if, if the, the state will do that.
Right.
We could conceivably have to surrender perhaps more flow for fish. The model will take that into account as well. Right now, the half a CFS that we have to release on an ongoing basis out of Magalia Reservoir is in the model, but if the state said, well, we'll let you license for this much water, but we want one CFS now instead of half a CFS. Well, that's going to have an impact on this entire thing and the model can demonstrate what that impact is.
That's basically the problem with the model, it's because we don't have our water rights secured.
Well, the model could help us decide when to secure our water rights too.
We're starting, hopefully, we're starting to work on it again.
The model is a tool to allow us to understand what are the impacts of making different management and operational decisions. So then, if we switch forward to the next slide, you see what happens if you look at superimposing the twenty sixteen demand of only forty-three hundred and fifty-nine acre feet on our current supply availability in the reservoirs. You can see that there's only one year out of a hundred and ten where we have a cutback at all and it's a modest cutback of only, I think it's fifteen percent, yeah, looks like a fifteen percent cutback. The, the impact on reliability is enormous. By reducing the demands, we can meet those demands with much higher reliability than we could when we were in a situation where the demand was taxing the system pretty much to its limit and maybe a little beyond. So if we go forward to the next slide then, this looks at, this is actually a summary of, of reliability at various water levels, or at various demand levels, rather. So in this slide, across the bottom is the percent that we supply the water according to the urban water management, water shortage contingency plan. And so that plan is set up to identify specific levels of service that will result in specific or that result from specific storage available at the beginning of the high demand period and the end of the rainy season. So basically, on the far right, you see a hundred percent, and that hundred percent means that in, in that situation, we're supplying a hundred percent of the, the demand. If you go all the way to the left-hand side of that, that horizontal axis, you see that identifies fifty percent. Any, anything, points that fall on that line identify situations where the district is only supplying fifty percent of whatever that demand is that, that, that is on the curve. So then, on the, the left-hand side, the axis there is the percent of years that supply is available at the supply percentage. So basically, this is looking at what's the reliability? If we're going to provide a hundred percent of the demand, can we provide it a hundred percent of the time? Eighty percent of the time, that type of thing? How often can we provide fifty percent or more of the customer's demand? And you can see there that all of the curves converge on that point. Basically, there is no situation where we can't supply at least fifty percent of the demand. So then, starting from the bottom curve, which is nineteen ninety-seven, that's, that's representative of a ten thousand acre foot demand. And you can see that at a hundred percent of the supply, we can only supply that seventy percent of the years. There's a fair amount of graph here that's above the line. And anything that's above a particular line is the time that we can't serve the customers' water at the rate that we'd like to. So at, the bottom curve is nineteen ninety-seven, that's ten thousand acre feet. By, by the time we got to two thousand eight, we, we reduced our typical demand to eight thousand acre feet. That's the red line, which is the third one from the bottom. And in that case, you can see that reliability has improved quite a bit. Now, instead of providing a hun- a hundred percent of the supply seventy percent of the time, we can provide it about eighty-two percent of the time. Eighty-eight, one, I'm not sure exactly. By the time you get to two thousand ten, two thousand twelve timeframe, where we were using around six thousand acre feet a year, we're up to that blue line, which is the, I guess, about fifth one from the bottom. You can see that our reliability now is really getting quite good. There's only five percent of the years that we can't supply a hundred percent of the demand and to supply seventy percent of the demand, we can do that a hundred percent of the time.
Was this improvement here based on the leak fixes you talked about earlier or the change in demographics of what we were supplying water for agriculture versus residential and?
I don't think there was probably a big demographic shift. There's been somewhat of a shift from ag to residential, but it hasn't been dramatic. But we have identified that where lands have changed from ag to residential, that there tends to be a, a water savings. So we don't, we don't consider urbanization to be an adverse effect on our ability to serve water, it tends to actually be the other way around. But I don't believe there's probably been a significant shift there. I think it's more a matter of customer conservation and the reduction in our water, lost water that we've done through, you know, getting really lucky.
So those two have made that significant of a difference in those years? Wow, that's pretty dramatic.
Yeah, it's, it's quite dramatic. So even if we were to continue on in the, the vein of the twenty-ten to twenty-twelve conception, there's probably not as much motivation to be looking at expensive capital projects for building new reservoirs as there would have been when we were looking at the, the situation twenty years ago where, you know, when you, when you talk about having almost one year and three that you're going to have to ask the customers to cut back on their water use, it's kind of a bitter pill for people to swallow, because it doesn't seem like we're doing a very good job of providing them with the water that they need. But if we can, if we can meet their demands, a hundred percent of their demands ninety-five percent of the time and, you know, a fairly small reduction for, for the other times, we're talking about a much lesser impact on, on their lives when, I mean, ninety-five percent of the demand, that means one year and twenty, we're going to have to ask them for a cutback. Doesn't sound too bad. By the time you look at what happened with twenty sixteen, which is the, next to the top line there, where we were at forty-three fifty-nine acre feet for PID's demand, basically, that, that previous graphic shows that we're only going to have one year out of a hundred that we wouldn't be able to allow the customers to use as much water as they're demanding, assuming that they're demanding forty-three fifty-nine.
And this graph is based on actuals, not the, the, the previous?
No, this is based, this is based on the model.
On that other model?
Yeah, the model, the model looks at how it is that we can meet demands based on our previous hydrologic history. Now, hydrologic history is something that doesn't necessarily have to repeat itself. It's kind of like when you, you know, see the results on the stock market, they say, you know, past performance is no guarantee of, of future results. And that's true with hydrologic performance as well. We could have the twenty-thousand-year drought starting tomorrow. There's no way to prove that that's not going to happen, but we do the best we can with the information that we have, which is the, the hydrologic record of record, which is for us, about a hundred and ten years now that we have information on how, how this watershed performs, which isn't bad. I mean, that's a fairly decent amount of data and that data is used then to make these projections about reliability.
Okay.
So kind of to sum that up, I, I guess, what I'd like to just also add here is that the, the top curve there is our twenty-sixteen demand reduced to fifty-five gallons per cap a day. Now, that number is something that the state is, is working on legislating. I'd like to see internal, interior demand be capped at fifty-five gallons per cap a day. Looking at our twenty-sixteen demand with an interior use of about seventy-one gallons per cap a day, that would mean a reduction, still lower, almost five hundred, over five hundred acre feet lower. In that case, we'd have a hundred percent of the demand supplied a hundred percent of the time. Almost points in the direction of, for long-term capital projects, I think that the district would be in a position where it would be advisable not to be actively pursuing storage projects at this time, because we probably won't be able to get the bang for the buck from them. Furthermore, there's the situation that we've just lived through with the state requiring that we reduce our, our water use. I thought George made an excellent comment on that. He said, well, it's a darn good thing we didn't spend five million dollars building the pipeline pump station down at the, the head dam to take water from the Mysc Canal, because they wouldn't let us use it anyway. And that's, that's one of the underlying realities here is that, you know, we can try to be the masters of our own destiny, but the state has an enormous amount of clout in this situation. And if they can mandate that we're down at numbers around four thousand acre feet, we're simply not going to be able to, to use the water. But it's not a bad thing to have all that water still in our reservoirs, because it gives us that reliability. We don't have to sweat it when we get to a drought, because we're not telling people, you can't have any water. There's another part of this graph that's actually, well, I guess it is visible there. Right down the right-hand side, there are some numbers. These numbers are associated with each of the curves that's on here. And basically, that number is, what's the lowest that the reservoir storage got in the modeling analysis when we said that we were going to try to use ten thousand acre feet, for instance? Well, we got down to a thousand acre feet. That's scary. I don't know that anybody in this room would want to see us down at a thousand acre feet, because that's the next best thing to mud. We'd, we'd be really concerned about, can we, can we meet fifty percent demand even? If we're down at a thousand, we'd probably be saying, no, you got to cut back to seven, got, got to cut back seventy percent to thirty percent demand or something. So that's, I call it kind of the flinch factor. When that, when that reservoir starts getting close to empty, we're going to be hard-pressed to be able to look at our urban water management plan, can water shortage contingency guidelines and, and act on them. We're going to be afraid to, to push it right to the very limit like that, because what do you do if you run out? That's one of the things, as we then move to higher and higher reliabilities and lower demands, we see that, that minimum storage level number starts to move quite a bit higher. That also, it, it gives us security as we make decisions about reducing water demand or not in a drought situation.
Even, even at a fifty percent level, isn't that going to change the temperature and the turbidity and the organic material in the water, which is going to make it more difficult for us to provide the same quality of water when you get down into these lower levels?
If the reservoir were extremely empty, I would say yes, that water temperature would increase, that biological activity would increase as a consequence, that the treatability of the water, particularly in the summertime, would be affected fairly significantly. Whether that would push us outside our, our current operational envelope or not, I, I really can't say. The operators may have a better sense for that, based on the fact that they have at times treated some pretty skunky water out of Magalia Reservoir, because they had to.
Right.
So it's, but certainly, that's, that's a well-taken point. I mean, it would affect water quality as the reservoir moved.
And I, and I would think that we also, you were talking about the state earlier. This would, this assumes no growth. How do we factor in, I mean, our community is going to grow and we're going to have to provide that margin for growth. So if we just figure that growth is flat and we're okay without any capital projects to increase our. to increase our ability to provide more water, we're sort of putting ourselves in a box, I think, where it's kind of limiting to me.
Well, I guess I'm not suggesting that the district never do anything with storage, but if you look at the district's rate of growth over the past, say, 20 years, it's been very small. And I think absent something really kind of monumental happening.
Like a sewer?
Yeah, like a sewer.
You know, there have been discussions about creating some fairly large subdivisions on the south side of town. I don't know what the likelihood of those being, actually bringing those to fruition is. I don't know. I know they've been talked about as long as I've been here. They've been talked about, you know, for 20, 30, 40 years. Is there a chance that those will get constructed someday? I guess there is. Is there a chance that there'll be a sewer-ing of the entire community someday? I guess there's a possibility of that. I think the town's maybe experiencing a bit of sticker shock in their recent sewer investigation, or maybe they don't see that as a problem. It's going to take a fair amount of funding, though, to swing that project, and that's only for kind of the downtown quarter.
Right.
If there were a sewer, certainly, I would expect that there would be an increase in density, because right now, what's controlling density in large measure, I think, is the inability to dispose of wastewater. Yeah, I mean, growth is certainly a possibility. It's not something that we've been seeing happening actively recently. What we've been seeing recently in, you know, the past 10 or 20 years is a significant movement in the direction of conservation. That certainly will be offset by growth. Whether it will be a significant offset or not, I guess, depends on the rate of growth.
Neil, can I ask a question? Go back to the low reservoir level. If we were at those low reservoir levels, doesn't that make the value of a recycled water project more valuable?
It does, depending on what we do with the process water.
Mm-hmm, right.
It'll have an impact on the way the model predicts and the way the reality will be. I mean, if we were to just take the process water and dump it in a hole somewhere and make it go away, that's that much water every year.
But we're dumping, we're going to be putting it back into the reservoir, which is a water supply for ourselves.
We're currently doing that now.
Yeah, we're doing that now.
Right, or back to the head.
You know, that keeps being brought up, and that kind of bothers me, because it doesn't pencil, to me. We say that if we put in the recycle, we're going to save X water. We're putting all that water back in the Megalia Reservoir anyway. We're not losing it. Whether we filter it or not, it's still going back in there. It's still the same volume. So I don't understand what we're going to gain volume-wise by recycling.
When we put it in the Megalia Reservoir, it's lost.
Why is it lost?
Because that dam leaks so much water.
But it leaks whether we put it back in there or not. It's still going to lose what it loses.
You don't see that reservoir gain, pretty much holds flat. Now, we don't put it in yet. You can see that reservoir likely falls.
I mean, it's going to leak whether we put recycled water back in there or not, so...
The major difference is the fact that we won't be pulling as much water out of Paradise, so Paradise will fall if that's the case here.
I had a question on the graph. The 55 gallon per capita, did you also include the, there was a part in there for landscaping and then a part in there for large commercial use, or was that just the straight 55 gallon per capita?
That's just the 55 gallon per day.
Okay, so it would be a little higher than that.
Residential use. Some of those other things are really not very well-defined yet. They're, you know, talking about doing aerial surveys of residential areas and applying different factors to construction of different ages, so that, you know, if you have a really old home, that you're under a different standard for the factor as opposed to more construction. That's going to be a fairly detailed analysis. It's going to flesh out what that's going to look like in terms of...
But this is the worst-case scenario, the 55 gallon per person, because there should be additional for institutional users, landscape, I don't know, swimming pools, I don't know, whatever it's going to be.
Yeah.
You can't just tell everyone in Paradise, "You can't have a swimming pool." I don't think we, I mean, you know, or let's say in California, because that's what's going to happen.
He kept the outdoor usage the same.
Oh, okay.
All he did was factor in indoor usage.
Oh, okay, so then it was factored in.
To limit the indoor usage to 55.
Thank you for that clarification.
And the other thing with growth issue is with all new California Building Code requirements with conservation and all that other thing, is that you're probably not going to see that. I mean, you'll see an impact on your water supply, but it's not going to be this enormous one like before, where people would put in estates and all this other stuff. There's such now restrictions on conservation, drought tolerance, landscape issues like that, too, that we've kind of thought about also on growth issues.
I guess I'm done.
You were timed out.
You're not done, you're not done.
I don't know about anybody else, but my eyes are yellow, and I got to go there. So we're going to take about a four or five-minute break. I assume somebody else needs to go. So many people wanted a break, and we're going back for a second time. Everybody got all the food they want? Okay, off we go again. Thanks, Neil.
Okay, so now that Neil kind of gave you the water supply issue there, we're going to kind of cover some of the Megalia Reservoir and dam and spillway issues.
Okay, so, yeah, Megalia Reservoir was constructed back in 1917, 1918 timeframe. It was originally a little smaller than it is now, but if it were, if we were able to use the full storage in Megalia Reservoir, it's around 2,400 acre feet. Currently, we're down to around 800 acre feet under research. To kind of go back to your question, Cliff, about the loss of water and recycling, actually, Megalia Reservoir at 800 acre feet and our total storage around 12,300 acre feet, you can tell us around 7% of our total storage, and it enjoys 25% of our watershed flowing directly to that reservoir, which is kind of a bit of a disadvantage for us, because, you know, we'd like our entire water shed to flow to our upper reservoir, because that way we can capture all of it with all of our storage. In fact, because significantly larger or disproportionate amount of our watershed discharges to that lower reservoir, which is almost nonexistent, it's no problem to fill that thing even in a dry year. And so that's one of the reasons why, when we get into this issue of, you know, is water that's recycled? Additional water, or is it not? If Megalia Reservoir were to drain itself completely dry due to leakage, we'd still expect to refill it the next year, even if we were unable to fill Paradise, because it was a dry year. Because the reservoir is so small compared to the fairly large amount of watershed that discharges directly to that reservoir and not to Paradise. Anyway, so in 1997, we lowered the water level behind the dam due to safety concerns, and that's basically the issue of this dam was constructed with a hydraulic fill method, and the material in the dam was not compacted, so the material is soft, and it's susceptible to ground motion, causing it to basically kind of settle in the event of an earthquake. And according to the analyses that have been done, it would be a fairly significant amount of shifting of the soil, and so DSOD was concerned that water could be released. They don't like that idea of catastrophic release of water.
That's the Bureau of Dam Safety, right?
Yes.
Yeah, keep us all educated, and we can get away from the words you guys use all the time, immediately understand. I've been here for years, so I understand a lot of it, but not all of it.
Yes, that's the Division of Water Resources, or rather, the Department of Water Resources, the Division of Safety. So anyway, in 1997, we lowered that water level. There's been a fair amount of discussion since then about what can we do with Megalia Dam. There was a discussion about fixing the dam. Quite a number of years ago, the county was looking at widening the skyway, and in connection with that project, there was something proposed called the Major Fix, which I think probably is not going to be something that Division of Safety of Dams would have accepted, but it was something that was floated as an idea. But having a highway on top of that dam is going to make it very difficult to repair. Basically, we've got a lot of vehicles traveling across that dam every day, and there's no really good secondary route to put them on us to detour. There is another way to get into Megalia, but it's a long roundabout way, and to put all that traffic on Kootenai Road and shove them around the long way would probably not be popular with the county, with residents. The environmental impacts of doing that would be significant. I think there probably would be, like the fatalities, if all those people started trying to race back and forth on Kootenai Road with its fairly sharp curves. But it's not an easy place to do a project. We've had discussions with the Division of Safety of Dams about what they might allow us to do with that dam by way of a less-than-total reconstruction, and they haven't been very open to discussion of that. What we were told is that that dam is the worst of the worst, and it needs to be completely reconstructed, not sort of repaired and enlarged, which was one of the things that we considered doing, was removing some of the material on the upstream side, buttressing the dam with an additional higher structure there. The dam was strengthened back in the 60s with a downstream buttress, so the downstream side of the dam is stronger than the upstream side. But evidently, what was considered in those days to be a good thing to do is less something that they would accept as an appropriate strategy now. One of the other drawbacks to the dam as it's currently configured is that the current spillway, which is on the left-hand side of the dam, when they talk about dams, they always talk about left and right, looking downstream, so the way the water flows. So it's like you're in the reservoir, looking at the dam as it discharges downstream. And that is the, the spillway is on the left-hand side of the dam, and once the water goes over the spillway, it then runs through our treatment plant campus, which is really not ideal. Back in 1997, when we had our, next to the last spill over the dam, we actually spilled this year for the first time in 20 years. In 1997, we had a five-foot spill over the dam, and it undermined the raw water storage tank, which is on the left-hand side of the stream as the water heads down to the creek.
It undermined what? I didn't hear what you said. It what?
It undermined.
Undermined, thank you.
Yeah, the raw water storage tank. But also, you know, fairly near that stream channel is our raw water pump station, our plant water pump station, the equalization storage tank for the wash water. So if we were to have a really significant spill there, which, you know, could easily be in excess of 10 feet over the spillway, it would do probably some catastrophic damage to our facilities there in treatment plant. So that's something that is kind of a drawback. The original dam construction, the spillway was constructed then, the dam was modified a few times in various ways, but the spillway was only really changed in 1953. The original spillway had a structure on it that had some gates and whatnot, and I believe that those were then demolished in that period of time, and that there was some additional kind of repaving and restructuring in the spillway. Some of the spillway concrete, I think, so goes back to the, you know, 100 years ago when the dam was constructed. So what are some of the problems with the spillway? Well, besides the fact that it goes right through, after the water goes through the spillway, it goes right through our treatment plant, there's concern about, in my mind at least, about the capacity to pass the design flood. Just to back up a little bit, we just recently, in the last couple of weeks, I guess it was, got a letter from the Division of Safety of Dams asking us to investigate the quality of the spillways at both of our dams.
Now, this was from Regional Water Quality Control, wasn't it?
Department of Water Resources.
Division of Safety of Dams.
Division of Safety of Dams. And in that letter, they're particularly keying on the things that they have identified as failure mechanisms for the orgel dam. That was, you know, a major wake-up call for them, when that spillway failed in such a spectacular way that's, you know, got the attention of the world. So they're interested in having an investigation of the quality of the spillway concrete, the drains, the material that underlies the spillway, the soil and rock units that are underneath there, things like that. But one of the things that their letter also mentions is the capacity to pass the design flood. About 10 years ago or so, we had URS do an analysis for us, a hydrologic and hydraulic analysis of Paradise Dam, when we were looking at the possibility of putting a bladder dam on the spillway and being able to seasonally store a little bit more water at Paradise Dam. And they did an analysis of the hydrology of our law shed based on the revised reports that were generated after the 1997 event, that actually was a fairly significant hydrologic event compared to others of record. And some of those tables were redrawn, and they were increased, so the design flood actually was larger. But when they analyzed that for Paradise, their analysis showed that routing that storm, the design storm, to Paradise Dam, and even having the bladder dam component there, that it would work to route that new designed flood past that facility. So that was good, everything's fine. They did not, as part of their scope of work, investigate Megalia Dam and its spillway. And I was kind of concerned about that, because I was curious about, well, you know, what would that same amount of water flowing past Paradise down to Megalia do? And so I did a spreadsheet-level analysis of this. Now, for a detailed analysis, you really should have software that I don't have access to. I've used it in the past, but I don't have access to that, and it wouldn't probably be cost-effective for the district to acquire that and have me do it, rather than having a consulting engineer do it. So what I did was I did a spreadsheet analysis, which is, you know, more simplistic, but it looks to me, from the analysis that I prepared, that Megalia Dam is in danger of overtopping, because the spillway probably does not have the capacity to pass that design flood. This is something we probably should have investigated. It's entirely possible that as a result of the state making these new requirements and notifying us with the letter, that we're going to have to do that. I'm actually working with our dam consulting engineer, kind of as we speak, going back and forth with them on emails. They are in the process of putting together a proposal for us to address the state's requirement to prepare a work plan for how we're going to look at the dam spillways and make sure that they're going to work. When this information was brought to the board at the last board meeting, legal counsel suggested that he look into whether they have the authority to make these requirements, and that's something that, you know, go for it, Dustin, if that's appropriate to do. I, you know, I don't have any problem with that at all. But we are currently in a timeframe where the state wants us to have a work plan in place and submitted to them by June 15th, or July 15th, by July 15th. So that's a little over six weeks. I'd like to encourage the board to consider hearing from Dustin sooner than the next board meeting, which is the 21st, right?
Yes.
I guess the 21st, which that's me there.
It is, it's the 21st.
It's the 21st, okay. And the reason for that is that, based on what the consulting engineer told us, is that they would probably need to have a notice to proceed by the 6th in order to complete the work plan and be ready by the 15th to deliver that to the state. Now, that's assuming that Dustin says, "Well, yeah, it looks like they do have the authority." Now, if Dustin advises the board, "I don't think they have the authority, you shouldn't do this," well, then that's a whole different thing. Then that'll be his direction to the board. But in the event that we do need to do this, we need to move very quickly. So I would encourage the board, if possible, to hear from Dustin.
Shouldn't we know the answer to that question, whether or not they have the authority to make us? It sounds like it's pretty important that we know.
I think it is important. I just wouldn't encourage the board not to wait till the 21st to find out.
Well, what I'm saying is, is, you know, maybe it's prudent that we address this and do it, if it's that critical, and not worry about whether or not they have the authority to ask us to do it. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I certainly understand what you're saying, and the board, I guess, could say, you know, "Let's not wait for legal counsel to weigh in on this."
Yeah, I hear you saying it's important that we... Yeah, I hear you saying it's important that we know.
The problem is no action item in the...
For this meeting anyway.
Yeah, for this meeting.
We can still do it.
We can call an action item anytime we want to, as a board.
And you don't, we don't need action at this point. If you're direct, you can direct staff to continue going forward with what Neil is presenting. If he comes back with a cost estimate that's, which we don't have yet, that's over my authority to approve, then you guys will be in the loop no matter what, because that's going to be a cost associated that you guys have to approve.
I wanted to ask some questions. When we put in the bypass pipeline, we opened up the spillway. And the inspector that was in the field, I understood, said it looked all right, but then the Bureau of Dam Safety came back and said, no, close that back up. It's because they found what was, wet earth in the dam. You remember that?
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is that, at the time that we did the raw water bypass pipeline, it travels through the dam. There's actually two dams as part of what's called the Magalia Dam. The smaller dam is the saddle dam, and that's the one that that pipeline passed through. And it passed through just to the right of the existing spillway. So a fair amount of earth section was removed from that area, so they could bury that pipeline underneath that section of the dam. And one of the things that had been discussed at that time was possibly widening the spillway in connection with that construction effort. Just, you know, since the soil's already gone, they can look at what's there, that would they give us permission to make the spillway wider by maybe another 20 or 30 feet, with the intent that it would pass more water in the event of a flood? When the excavation was done, I believe that the DSOD made an appearance at the site, and they looked at it, but no decision was made giving us the authority to widen the spillway. Basically, they just kind of backed away from it, laying it safe, put it back, leave it alone. I think that their concern was they didn't have enough time, kind of a spur-of-the-moment type situation like that, where we were asking for a decision with, probably within days, to identify whether those changes were going to be appropriate and properly reviewed by the people and their technical groups at DSOD.
That's my reflection too, Neil. They were afraid that we were going to run into rain sooner than they could make a decision to do anything, so.
So I understand the security of the dam is really not at question with the lowered level of Magalia reservoir, but the spillway that we currently have, in your assessment, would not be sufficient to keep from overflowing Magalia reservoir if we did have a severe flood issue?
I think it's conceivable that Magalia Dam would possibly be overtopped.
And the consequences of that would be flooding and contamination of our water treatment plant, right?
Yeah, that would probably be the biggest concern at that point in time. An overtopping failure of a dam generally is a total failure. Generally, what happens is that as the water goes over the top of a soil constructed dam, it immediately begins a fairly aggressive erosion process.
We've seen how that happens.
Speeds the flow of water, which further accelerates the erosion process, and typically what happens is a catastrophic release of water.
Right.
So that's the kind of thing that is considered an acceptable...
So it sounds like if we do this inspection and they find it to be inadequate, then we're going to be on the hook for, it's kind of like Legionella, if you don't look for it, but if you find it, you got to do something about it. So, you know, we probably have to decide. That's a, on the one hand, it sounds like it could be fairly critical. On the other, it could commit us to an additional project that we probably don't have the money for unless there's some federal funding available for something like that.
Let me ask you another question. Excuse me, Cliff.
Sure.
Is there any thought of just leaving that spillway alone and building, I hate to use this term, an emergency spillway, separate spillway? Maybe that would be, you know, at a high elevation, obviously, to allow the, and maybe it would be located further downstream, or shall I say, to the west, so then that extra water would be going into the creek away from the treatment plant.
There has been thought of that, and there has been some preliminary discussion of that. We have not, to the best of my knowledge, had any discussions with the Division of Safety of Dams regarding that idea. But actually, one of the things that happened back in the 90s, before we lowered the water level, was we had a number of communications back and forth between PID and the division about Magalia Dam and its spillway. I believe that kind of what precipitated that was that we wrote to them asking for permission to install flashboards on the spillway. And their response came back, no, we don't want flashboards. Furthermore, we don't have a good feeling about the water level behind the dam. They didn't want us to increase it artificially by raising the water level above the spillway, but they were even concerned about the spillway level. In 1992, we had a fairly extensive investigation done by Dames and Moore, where they looked at the technical properties of the dam and investigated how it would perform in the event of a design earthquake. And that was what led then to the lowering of the water level to its current 2,200 level. But during that same timeframe, there were communications about the spillway. And one letter in particular that I'm aware of, in 1994, directed the district to repair the dam as previously described above, I think it said, and permanently, or permanently lower the reservoir to elevation 2,200. So basically, either fix it or
Drop it.
Keep the water level at 2,200. While permanently lowering the reservoir elevation to 2,200, I think is pretty much synonymous with lower the spillway. Because with the high spillway that we have right now, we can't keep it at 2,200. This year, for instance, we had a spill. We went up 26, well, actually, it was only 27.4 feet above that restricted 2,200 level.
Right.
Because we had a lot of water coming in, and the release valve was open 100%, and we simply couldn't contain that release to just what that pipeline would hold. It had to have someplace else to go.
We have a pumping station there that goes to the water treatment plant that we don't use for the most part. In high-flow events, can that somehow be used and redirected downstream to give us that additional spill?
Well, that pump station is supplied by a 48-inch, I believe it is, pipeline that runs through the dam. If you drive across the dam, you'll see a concrete structure standing out with a little bridge going to it.
Right with it?
That's the outlet works. That has a series of gates. There's three gates that are set at different elevations to allow drawing water off the reservoir at different levels. I think only maybe one of those is currently underwater, and maybe there's one and a half.
One and a half.
Because they were designed for
For a higher level, sure.
Full.
Restrictive level.
They can only use one level.
And then the water goes through those gates into that kind of vertical structure, and then enters that 48-inch pipeline, comes out the dam on the other side. Actually, it doesn't pass through the dam, it passes through a rock and all that defines, divides the two dams, the saddle dam and the main dam. It goes there, and then there's a tap off of that pipeline that goes into the raw water pump station. The pipeline continues straight ahead and goes to an energy dissipating release valve that we can open if we need to release water. Basically, we could conceivably run water through the pump station, but I don't think it would probably change the hydraulics of how much we could deliver by very much, because basically, we just can open that pipe wide open and dump that water to the creek.
When you weren't able to achieve that 2,200-foot level during that high event, did you use that to supplement discharge?
That release valve was our principal way of releasing water. Where the outlet works with the dam, the pipeline goes through the dam, and then it basically goes straight to a ball valve that can be opened by the operators. They control that to identify how much water is released.
So that, but I'm confused. That's not your spillway?
That's not the spillway.
So that, when the spillway was going full and you couldn't keep up, did you have that pipeline valve open to discharge as well?
Actually, we start by opening that pipeline.
Okay.
Because we try to hold
So you were already using that? Okay, that was my question.
We hold the plug.
Okay.
And we try to drain the bathtub, and it just kept gaining.
Yeah, that's exactly it. We had that valve open, actually, we probably had it open before we even got to 2,200. We tried to pull the reservoir down in the winter time in anticipation of storms.
Of the rain.
So it might have started out at, you know, like 1995 or 1992 or something like that.
Right.
No, that's not right. 2095.
Do we have the, did we ever exceed capacity in Paradise Lake? Or did we have adequate room for runoff?
Well, we spilled Paradise.
Spilled to Paradise Lake, too.
And I think we may still be spilling Paradise.
Yeah.
But I mean, but we still could have gone higher than...
Oh, yeah.
So I'm wondering, you know, because George, early on, when I first joined the board here a year ago, he mentioned a project to pump the Magalia reservoir water back up to Paradise Lake and then have a co-gen to capture some of the loss for pumping it during off-hours or whatever. Is that something that is feasible or ever been looked at anymore?
I don't think we've looked at it in any detail, because we haven't really been able to find a power generation partner that has found that project sufficiently feasible to them. It would take a fairly significant capital project to develop a pipeline that would go from one reservoir to the other. I'm guessing that the capital costs offset the value of the power, because it would be a pump-back scheme where you'd run a lot of water down the stream, or actually, the pipeline, during the daytime when power rates are high, like noon until somewhere, and then at nighttime, you pump that water back up and do it again the next day.
Right. It almost seems like Magalia reservoir is a bad stepchild that we need to get rid of, because if we don't use it, it cycles up and it grows a lot of organic material, and it becomes very difficult to process when we do need to use it. And unless we recycle it with Paradise Lake to where we can keep fresh water coming in and not let it sit there and concentrate and become a mudbath, then it doesn't have much value, and it sounds like it's almost a detriment. It sounds like it really has very little value. What is the value of Magalia?
It certainly has some cons, as you pointed out, but it has some pros as well. I'll maybe be able to outline some of those, and I encourage other staff to jump in as well. One of the things that it does is it does allow us to, through the raw water pump station, take water out of Magalia reservoir, if for whatever reason, maybe the plant process is running a little out of sync with the bypass pipeline. We try to run the bypass pipeline as close as possible to delivering just the water that we need for the treatment plant, because as we talked about, once it goes into Magalia reservoir, it's not exactly great water anymore. We'd probably rather not mix it with, you know, a lesser quality water. And if we dump it in that reservoir, it's also eventually going to leak out if we don't use it. But the water in that reservoir does allow us to, if we need to do, for example, flushing events at the plant, and the raw water tank is down a little bit too low, we can grab some of that water with the pump station and supplement the water that's coming through that bypass pipeline. And the thing about the bypass pipeline is it doesn't go all the way to Paradise Lake. If it did, we could control the rate of flow out of that thing in real time, but it doesn't. A fairly significant distance from Paradise to the diversion dam is open stream. And so there's about a 45-minute to an hour lag between when you open the valve at Paradise and when you've actually got water available at the other end. And that means that, you know, if a plant operator needs to get water right now to deal with an event in the plant, they can't just immediately dial up the water coming through the bypass pipeline. So Magalia reservoir does serve the purpose of providing us with a source of quick water, a source of water that we can grab right now. Turn the pumps on, it's there. It also helps us when we get into these kind of unusual water quality events that happen with early rains in the fall. Something happens to our water quality. We're not even sure what it is, but the treatability can fall off to the point where we lose the ability to properly treat the water. Bill can do a better job of describing this than I can. I think you maybe already heard about the fact that we have these fall events where water quality changes, and we have to switch over to Magalia reservoir, because even though Magalia reservoir water may be rather, you know, not good quality, it maybe has some taste and odor issues, it at least allows us to switch away from this water, which we can't treat. We can't get it to treat properly, because for whatever reason, it doesn't respond to the treatment chemicals the way it should.
You're doing a big one.
Yeah, you are.
That's the big ones. It's a buffer for flow changes, and then the bigger one is the fall rains.
Is that because?
When Paradise Lake is spilling, when Paradise Lake, we get the early rains, and Paradise Lake is spilling.
Oops, sorry.
If we get a heavy enough rainfall, for whatever reason, we lose the treated water in the plant, the turbidity starts flowing through, it'll go through the clarifiers, and if you wait long enough, you'll see it coming through the filters. And we're not meeting the turbidity standards at that point, so you lose the treatment at the plant.
I'm curious, is your total solids from your, in your filtration, drop down at the same time? Of precipitated solids, does that fall off as well?
Obviously, solids are starting to pass.
Yeah, that was the same question I was going to ask. It doesn't form flock.
So this is, right.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
So basically, what we're saying is, is that the distilled water, the rainfall, is lowering the solids content in the lake water to the point where it upsets
Organic, it's organic.
We're not able to form a flock.
Yeah, you got, yeah, you have less solids in there to...
My research is these cumins and
Yeah.
acids coming out of the duff, out of this canyon.
Mm-hmm.
Effect of evaporation.
Yeah.
And so much, the rainfall comes down and flushes this canyon, which is natural dirt, natural duff, and the consequence of those organics. That's the best I can do, looking at my textbooks and looking.
So it changes the quality of the whole lake water?
Yes, well...
No, it's the stream. It's not the lake.
Yeah, it's not the lake, it's the flush, the runoff.
It's between the lake and the diversion stretch.
Okay.
Canyon is like this.
So pH really falls, do you notice a drop in pH then?
Not at all.
Really?
I'm surprised.
If it was acidic, I would expect that they'd drop in pH.
Once we start spilling Paradise, and that canyon is flushed with a lot of water, it stops. We can treat it now.
And we can treat it.
So there's, it could be a two-month period, that long, untreated Paradise water. That's not unusual to have two months, that's...
And that's pretty consistent that you have to switch to Magalia every time then?
Yeah, in the fall.
Okay. So Magalia has a purpose, and so we have to live with the stepchild. We need to figure out how to train it.
Magalia just covers 25% of our watershed. It covers 25% of our watershed. So if you were to get rid of the dam, you lose 25% of your watershed.
Okay.
Do we have any minimum flow requirement in that stretch of little creek between the two dams? Is there any flow requirement?
Pass through half a CFS through our diversion at all times.
Half a CFS, oh, so it's the same?
There's a half a CFS, and I don't know exactly where other requirements is, but I think it's at Paradise to pass it through. But we pass it through from Paradise all the way to the bottom of Magalia. So there's a half a CFS minimum always flowing through the reservoir.
Right, but I was just wondering if there was a requirement in that section of the stream, because if we were to, I mean, it's a long stretch, but if we were to extend that pipeline all the way to Paradise Lake, in conjunction maybe with a power project, a small turbine or something, we produce a little power, and maybe it will make it a little more economically feasible.
We would likely at this point be half a CFS, because that's what we've done.
Well, and just to piggyback on Mark saying, if we recognize that we have to keep Magalia reservoir, and we also recognize that we got to do something to improve the quality of the water there, and if it doesn't make sense to raise the dam, and we need a way to pull excessive water during flood times back up to Paradise Lake, then a means of pumping that back up and then generating power coming back down in conjunction with the pipeline might be a good...
I was just thinking...
...in floods, though, because you're already flooding.
Yeah, I was just thinking, one direction, one direction.
But does that whole bypass, so, because, explain this to me, then, when the creek that comes down that becomes the pipe that feeds the plant now, does the outfall from the rest of that go into Magalia reservoir? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
When we were releasing 100% out of Magalia Dam, 125 NGD.
Okay.
Pumping that, that kind of water is...
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not doing that.
The other issue with the pump storage project that we discovered was because Magalia Dam is so, is, is so bad and that we have to keep the lo, lake level so low, it doesn't give us the capacity to do a pump storage. Because you're going and you're filling up one and then you're pumping back the other. We don't have enough capacity to fill up one because the dam is so bad. So part of a pump storage project would require a brand-new dam.
Oh, okay.
So it's just, it just doesn't make sense to put in the pump storage because you don't have the, the bucket to fill up.
Let's, this is a time for me to say, one at a time. We've got three people talking, let, let's be polite, wait till the other first person's through talking, then go on, okay?
I'm done.
So, it, it sounds like if, the only thing that we currently need Magalia reservoir for other than some limited water storage is for turbidity issues when we can't control the water coming from Paradise Lake because we don't have a pipeline all the way up to the top. So a pipeline to the top would eliminate the need for Magalia reservoir other than if you're saying it would run short of water. What I hear you saying is from your studies that we have enough acre-feet of water and enough reserve to not have to worry about utilizing Magalia reservoir.
I'd like to, to change the subject on Magalia reservoir. We haven't touched on it. And that is geological study that was made about seven years ago or so about the earthquake fault underneath the reservoir. And I have one answer because I ran into the engineers that did the work at the, um, thing over in Oroville for, they had a booth there, talked to them. And I'd like to hear Neil's version of what, that's, what happened with that study.
Well, we hired Oldridge and Call to investigate the, uh, Magalia fall. Because one of the things that was really a big unknown in, in all of the considerations that went into thinking about a new Magalia dam because rehabbing the existing dam seems such, like it's, it's brought up problems with regard to the highway particularly. We'd been looking at a new Magalia dam, a larger dam in a slightly upstream location. But one of the big unknowns for any kind of design like that was, well, where is this fault and is it active? Actually, to go back a number of years, uh, we met with, uh, Division of Safety of Dams at their offices a number of years ago. Uh, I believe that was when Ray Arbach was manager. And, uh, they, the division had quite a few people in the room. And we were embarking on a project that I think was done in two thousand and three by, uh, URS, which was looking at it and could we raise the water level behind Magalia? Not, not back to spillway level, but could we get another additional amount of storage there? Because there was some consideration that with the changes that had been done in, I think it was the peak ground acceleration, uh, standards that had come out of some new earthquake information subsequent to the nineteen ninety-two analysis, that it was possible that it might be possible to put maybe another ten feet of water in Magalia reservoir, which would amount to a fair amount of additional storage. URS was, was with staff and we met with, with DSOD who had a lot of people in the room. And one of the underlying assumptions for that entire analysis that URS was going to do was that the Magalia fault was inactive. And they specifically brought that up to, to DSOD at that meeting. And nobody challenged that assumption that Magalia fault was inactive. So URS went ahead with the analysis. It was a very costly, uh, engineering analysis and at the end of it, uh, they concluded that we could raise the water level ten feet. And DSOD dismissed their analysis as being unacceptable because we had assumed that the Magalia fault was inactive. And they assumed that it was conditionally active, which is the same thing, and their book is active. We didn't want to re-enter that spiral. So before making any additional determinations on what Magalia fault would have as an impact on Magalia Dam or a subsequent iteration of Magalia Dam, we hired this consultant to do the, the investigation. And they did field work where we did a fair amount of trenching to try to, to expose what was believed to be the fault trace through the Magalia reservoir area. There was a fair amount of trenching done kind of by, uh, Furhaven Creek. I can't remember if they did any other subsurface exploration besides that. But one of the things that we underscored with them was please interact with DSOD ahead of time. Make sure that they're buying your assumptions and, and your analysis approach. And I don't believe that ever happened, which I think was unfortunate. I don't think it was necessarily, I don't know that I would necessarily rule out that they would have gotten the same kind of silent treatment that Lores got when they asked a question about Magalia fault. But at the, at the conclusion of the work, the trenches were backfilled. And I don't know, did, did a DSOD inspector ever verify the results? The consultants, engineers and, and, and geologists looked at the excavations. They, they drew up their report and their conclusions. They did not see any evidence of a, of a fault trace in the area that they investigated that was less than fifty thousand years old, which I guess is the, the dividing line between active and inactive. But once the report was complete, DSOD again said, we don't accept your conclusions. We think that you should have investigated other potential fault traces. So I, I don't even know if they would necessarily have bought into the fact that that, that fault trace was not active, but they certainly didn't.
I heard that, at least I was told, quote unquote, that the op that we hired was not on the SOD's approval list for geologists. And that's why the report wasn't accepted. Now, I don't know if that has any truth to it or not, but that's what I heard. And then when I talked to the fellows in Oroville this last winter, though, he was one of them involved in the actual work. And he told me that they didn't find anything, but they couldn't get DSOD to come and look at it. So basically the same thing again. And I think the only thing that would need to be checked out is to ask DSOD, do you have a list of approved geologists? And if we hired one, you would accept their work, so.
Yeah, I, I did not ever hear that particular, um, issue coming up that, that they were not on some list of approved, uh, geologists. That may be the case, but that's not something I ever encountered as, as being an issue involving the thing.
When I talked to him at the economical meeting was, uh, he was like, oh yeah, we did the work, I remember it, da-da-da, we did this, this, this. And, but evidently he could, they couldn't get anybody to come and they couldn't find the fault either. And by the aerial photos that DSOD is using evidently, Tom Kelly, he lives here, presented some of those to a meeting several years ago. And it clearly shows this aerial photo and it was recognized by PG&E and that's how the fault was found. Nobody on the ground actually found it. It was just this aerial photo that shows a crease going up across the reservoir. Not across the dam incidentally, but across the reservoir. Anyway.
So, uh, kind of a radical thing here, but in, in the last ten years, if Magalia reservoir had been bone-dry, would we have run out of water to supply our customers?
I don't believe so.
Okay. How close would we have come? What's the total acre-feet on Paradise again?
Paradise?
Yeah.
Is, uh, eleven thousand five hundred.
Okay. And, and the, and the max that we used, uh, per year in the last ten, twenty years, what?
Well, that's a little difficult equation to make because the amount that we use and the amount of water taken from storage is not the same thing. Uh, we have a right to direct diversion and we exercise that right. And we also have actually excess direct diverted because we don't have a right under our two storage rights to direct divert that we have in the past because of just the, kind of the necessities of the way it, it works. Uh, I can't recall what the low, the minimum storage was over the past ten years. Do you, Bill?
Is it?
I'm afraid I just don't have.
Because I'm kind of curious, what, what would happen if we drained Magalia reservoir and said, well, if we have a flood situation, we can spill into that if we need to. It's kind of like an overflow pond. But we run a pipeline all the way up to Paradise Lake where we don't have the turbidity issue anymore and we, and we use that. And now also Myosene Canal, right? We, that would allow us water if we needed it as well, good quality water. So why do we keep messing with Magalia reservoir?
I'd like to comment on the two things. I've been trying to get across the last two years, the return on investment, ROE. In agriculture, this has become a byword if you change things in your operation or something, you figure ahead for an ROE. The ROE on the Myosene Canal doesn't work. There isn't, in the dry years when you'd want to use it, one in ten is what we came up with. One engineering firm said five million, the other one said seven. Um, George collected the reports afterwards and I'd probably be the only one that kept it. And so, eh, there was no return on investment. I mean, it was a disaster financially. And there was no, PG&E was not willing to give us any water rights from there. The only way you can get water rights, and this was part of the proposals that have, you go down and pave. The part of the Myosene Canal that isn't gun-ided. All of PG&E's share is gun-ided. I went out to a ranch to talk about something else and walked up to the Myosene Canal and here it was gun-ided. Went down a hundred yards and had these beautiful plants growing up and I couldn't figure out what they were. It was a huge leak of the Myosene Canal. That's all California. What do, what do?
Cal Water.
Cal Water owns that part. So the idea was to, we were going to pave the Cal Water thing and for that, they would give us water rights. And that was estimated, I think just estimated five million. So it, it doesn't financially pan out.
What was the one-time expenditure, in other words?
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't over twenty and thirty years. If you're only going to use this thing for one in ten years, it doesn't make any sense. And you don't have, and that's what we came up with with these studies and the engineering studies that they did for piping and plumbing and all this, going up the hill between five and seven million bucks.
What does it cost us to keep Magalia reservoir happy?
Nothing practically, other than managing it.
That, that, that's kind of what we're talking about is that there is, there's this looming letter out there that has now kind of, Neil's thinking, kind of awakened the giant.
Right, and this is, this is what I'm getting at. Maybe it's time that we.
And, and we, we're not sure, you know, we're, we're not sure what the solution is.
Right.
We don't know what, what's the restriction, if there's going to be a restriction. We're just preparing you for this because we, we see, we see this, the dam failure at Oroville is going to blanket everybody. And in that letter, they spoke about not only is your dam secure enough, but also based on the geological studies of faults and different things like that. So we're, we're assuming that there's going to be bringing up a lot of different issues with this, with this dam. So that's why we're kind of, we're, we're prepping you through this process so that we, you guys have the most information possible. You know, maybe, maybe getting rid of all of Magalia Dam, maybe that is, that is the best solution. I don't know what it is. Maybe building a brand-new dam is the best solution with partnerships. I don't know. But, but it's not, I don't think that we need to, to come up with the solution today, but we need to understand the problem today. And so I think that's what, what Neil's talking about is you have a spillway that already had issues. You have a dam that has issues. You have a spillway that's above the elevation of what you're restricted on, on your, on your, uh, dam. So it's kind of like, we're kind of, we're holding this bag of goods going, it, it, it might not look good once we get this scope of work and this study done. It might not look good on paper, therefore they're not going to just say, you know, it's, 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 you know, just like, just like Oroville Dam, we ignored studies and they got their hands slapped and they're going to continue to get their hands slapped. They're not going to ignore studies anymore and that's kind of our thought process.
I was, uh, but I would, what I do hear from Neil today is that he would like an answer from Dustin right away. And I think we could move forward on that, just giving him a call and getting that, that ruling.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. I think we're all in agreement that we don't, we need, we need to do our due diligence here. We don't need to wait. It, it sounds like you're the, you're the expert on that side and you're saying that in your opinion, we need to get on with it. And I think what we're saying is, is we recognize that we don't need to wait for somebody to say, well, we're going to make you do it. If it needs to be done, we need to address it and move on with it.
Well, the other thing is that geological study, since that one was never accepted for whatever reason, is to find out from your dam safety, do, what will they accept from engineering firms?
And that's where this, we feel like maybe the scope of work kind of will flesh stuff out like that.
Okay. We need to have a concrete answer of some sort.
But, but they, and what Neil was saying too is that because it is a snap thing, that their, their timelines are, are almost so short that it's, it's hard to even fit those in. And so we're trying our best to, to get the most information, keep the board abreast of what's going on, but also make sure that we're trying to meet the timelines associated with something like that, um, with that letter. So, um, but we'll, I'll definitely get on the phone with Dustin today and, and have him, uh, flesh out his opinion based on that. But what I'm hearing is, uh, I think that it doesn't, doesn't mean just because we haven't heard from Dustin is that we're, we should, shouldn't keep treasuring down this, this path of, of where we're going.
Yeah, while we're waiting for Dustin's response, I'm going to continue to interact with the engineer to identify what are the, what's it going to take to get this thing moving? Because if Dustin says, oh yeah, they, they should, they've got the authority to do this, well then we need to go ahead and meet their timelines.
Well, we'll call a special meeting for you, Niels. If, if you need action, just tell us when we can put a special meeting together and we'll put you on the program.
But yeah, and I don't know how Dustin wants to give you his feedback. I don't know if he wants to sit with the board and be able to interact back and forth so that you can question.
Probably just email us.
Yeah, email us.
Whether a letter is going to be sufficient? And if it's a letter, maybe then that's enough that you can just receive that in email or something. And I don't know. That's, that's all your side of the table. I, I don't know how you want to deal with that. I just want to encourage you to, to be ready to move fairly quickly on this because we don't have a lot of time and they're asking for a lot.
Yeah. My personal opinion is that the only difference this answer from Dustin makes is how quickly we need to do that. Because it sounds like we still need to do it. It's just, do we need to do it in six weeks?
Right. Yeah, I, I, I would say that from my perspective, this is something that.
It's something that needs to be worked on, whether or not it needs to be done in six weeks. It still needs to be done.
In a different timeframe or not is, is the open issue. I'd like to return to your question though about, can we just say, you know, well, Magalia reservoir is just a nuisance item. Let's just dry it up.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that was one of the things you said, drain it. Uh, could you, there's been a bunch of discussion since then.
Well, I was just curious if, if we actually needed it other than for emergency flood control as an overflow.
Right. Actually, for the emergency flood control, it, it contributes very little to that. If at the beginning of a really large storm event, that Magalia reservoir basin was empty, it makes almost no difference to the ultimate outcome of the design flood because it only holds eight hundred acre-feet before it gets to the spillway. And when you're talking about the design flood, eight hundred acre-feet is nothing. It's a very, very small drop in that bucket. So it doesn't really help us with flood control. To say that we would just take the reservoir out of service and we wouldn't have any water in it anymore? Well, we can't do that. I mean, the environmental impacts of drying up Little Butte Creek, which is what Magalia reservoir is, a, a stretch of Little Butte Creek. We can't do that. We, we need to continue to pass flows through it.
Wouldn't the flows pass through anyway, whether or not the level was raised or lowered?
Well, there's a couple of things. Yes, you, you could, you could conceivably breach the dam in some way and let the, the natural stream flows just travel down through the valley the way they used to when the dam was there. And that would be a, a more doable thing if it weren't for the fact that there's this highway that crosses the dam and that there aren't really any good alignments to put that road somewhere else. I mean, if we had a nice place over here that, that, that could skirt the reservoir as it is right now, then perhaps that would be the solution. Remove the dam, put the road somewhere else first and let the water continue on the, uh, stream the way it used to be. Now, we would. Now, we would lose all the benefit of that 25% of our watershed that currently drains only to Magalia. How much is the, the value of that? I don't know that I've ever really tried to quantify that number. I mean, it's 25% of the runoff, but as I pointed out, it's got a really small bucket to catch it. But there is value for that runoff in terms of the direct diversion rights because in the early part of the, the season, when Paradise is filling, the water that's not going into Paradise and it's draining to Magalia is water that we directly divert into our plant. And actually, in the winter time, that's pretty much all we use is direct diversion right water. So, we would lose that if we didn't have a way to divert it. Now, we could conceivably have a small diversion dam in place of the big Magalia Storage Dam. There's, there's all kinds of different alternatives that we could roll out. But there are some things that constrain us, and one of them is the county's highway. That's, that's always going to be an issue for us. To go back to what you said, Mark, yeah, there's been discussion about putting in a new spillway. A spillway that would have the spillway crest at the elevation that's restricted, as opposed to having it this 26 feet higher than restricted. That way, when the water started coming out, it would just go through there. I've run some preliminary analysis of what that new spillway might look like and, and my first cut at it, and I, I want to encourage everybody to remember that I'm not a dam designer, I'm not a spillway designer. I worked in a geotechnical group in a consulting firm 20 years ago, but it's, I was, I was a newbie then and I don't have all the answers to this. But my first thought would be that we might construct something like a, a cut-and-cover culvert through the dam. A very big culvert, probably something on the order of 12 to 14 feet square, that would be on the west side of, of the reservoir. And that, because, you know, typically spillways like that tend to be open shoots, but typically you don't have 40 feet of freeboard on your dam either. For us with a 2,200-foot elevation water level and 40 elevation crest, we've got 40 feet of freeboard there. If you were to build a bridge with abutments on each side, by the time that, that chute passes underneath the, the skyway, it would be about 60 feet from the bridge deck down to the chute, which is a pretty significant engineering feat to have a 60-foot-high abutment. And another concern I have about an abutment that high is that it's going to be interfacing with Magalia Dam, which we know isn't properly compacted. And you start getting into this kind of snowball effect of how do you, how do you, you know, where do you stop with trying to fix that? I think that would be a difficult thing to do, so this is, this is my kind of preliminary proposal. And I think that it would be possible, conceivable anyway, to reroute traffic, to, to build the conduit in, in two sections, to build the upstream section first and reroute the highway traffic, as you can see there on the far right-hand side, with a kind of a little bypass road that would go over the new, the new conduit and then construct the rest of it with the skyway offline and then, and then restore all of that to the way it is on the left-hand side. It's not an easy place to work. There's not good laydown areas with the exception of Magalia Reservoir itself. That would be a fairly decent laydown area for excavated materials, which are going to have to be restored to the site for the most part. So, you don't want to truck them away to, to someplace and dispose of them. I think this would be an ideal design-build project because the constructability issues are going to be every bit as big as the design issues. I think it'll be a fairly expensive project. I did a preliminary cost estimate, and again, I want to condition this as, you know, this is, this is based on numbers from other things that, and a very preliminary analysis, but I, I came up with a construction cost of 7.4 million dollars. I think that by the time you put in engineering and environmental costs, permitting, permitting would be fairly significant and odious with this because it would require a streamlined operation permit, probably 10 million dollars plus.
Still cheaper than a new dam.
Much cheaper.
But you're still left with your old dam, that's the problem. So, you, you haven't, really haven't, you fixed, you fixed.
The spillway part, not really the dam part.
Yeah, and so, that's, and again, this is something that was not on the horizon, that we were thinking, oh, capital, you know, our long-term capital project, oh, we'll put a new spillway in, that sounds like a great one to do. Again, it would be a forced project upon us.
Well, I wonder if, did the spillway, you know, although focus on spillways, let's say from the state, if there'll be some funding coming down the road. I mean, you would think if they're, well, maybe not for these studies, but then if, if the studies prove out to be capital-intensive, shall we say, and, you know, then, you know, you would hope, you would hope that there'd be some state monies available for something like that.
We hope.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's not really my side to.
Right.
Project where money might be in or how, how it would work out, but.
But I, it, it does appear that the state is very aggressive on this. So, if there is, if there is shown that there is a need for something like this, I think that hopefully there is state money. But also, I think the timeline's not going to be very long. It's going to be kind of get it done now type of thing, just based on what they've gone through with the Orville situation.
There, there was quite a bit of federal money available.
Have you talked to any other agencies, just, you know, let half spillways to see, you know, what their take is on this too?
I have not.
We were hoping maybe the consultants, because the consultant does a lot of these, would be working and have maybe gathering some knowledge from other agencies about what maybe the requirements they're looking for.
So, I think what's going to happen is, is if we do have somebody come up and look at this or if the state looks at it, they're going to look at all the previous data and inspections that we've had and come to the same conclusion that you've just stated is that it is inadequate. And now they're going to want us to do something about it.
I'd say there's the possibility. It depends on how focused they are on the issues that, that were fatal to the Magalia, or the.
Spill.
Orville spillway. If they, if they get really focused on that, they may not look back at, at some of the things that are in the file. But, I mean, there's that letter from 1994 saying that they directed us to permanently lower the water level. I don't think this thing would probably pass muster on a hydrologic analysis. But if they, if they stay focused on what's the condition of the material under the spillway? What's the condition of the concrete in the spillway? What's the condition of the drains in the spillway? It's entirely possible that they might just blow right past it and never think about any of these other issues, even though their letter does point out that they're concerned about things that could lead the spillway to not pass flood.
Well, because that is the issue.
And you see how they perform.
What you said yourself is that we were not able to maintain that level with everything wide open. Like say you pull the plug and we still weren't able to maintain that level. Well, that's what happened at Orville spillway. And they're going to look at that and they're going to say, this is going to be a repeat of the same thing. We want you to fix it.
I'd say that's a reasonable expectation, that would be their conclusion.
That's kind of what it looks like.
We have the same, a similar.
That's why I think we need to move ahead on this thing and not wait because I think that's where it's going to come down to, actually.
Yeah, I mean, it remains to be seen what the outcome will be with the DSOD. But you need to be aware that there are some skeletons in our closet, particularly Magalia Dam. Actually, looking at the preliminary scope of work that was developed even for Paradise Dam, they're being fairly aggressive about the issues there in their proposal to us. I don't have the final proposal. I had, I just read the first draft this morning before the meeting. I saw there was another draft in my inbox already. There's supposed to be a, a subsequent draft yet this afternoon. So, I'm going to, like you say, I'm working actively with the, the consultant because this is a very compressed timeline that they're on. So, and they're, they're cognizant of that and they're, they're really working to help us, so I, I appreciate that from them. But, yeah, if we have to roll this thing out on the DSOD timeline, it's going to have to be.
One, one more quick question, Neil. Do we have any issues with Paradise or is it just Magalia?
Well.
Any skeletons, basically.
They did outline some issues on the Paradise spillway as well. One of the things that they've actually commented on in their annual reports to us, because this, this consulting firm is the one that does our, our annual inspection and they develop the narrative for our, our annual report. Staff pulls together all the data for that report. Treatment plan staff reads the instrumentation on a, at least a weekly basis, some of it monthly basis, it depends. It's all, all laid out in, in what our monitoring plan is. That information comes to me. I put together tables, charts of, of that information. That goes together with that narrative that's done by the, the experts, the, the consulting engineering firm. And then that all gets rolled together into a report that goes to the DSOD on an annual basis. So, we prepare one of those for each dam, Magalia Dam and Paradise Dam. This is the same firm that's preparing these proposals for us right now. We have an agreement with them that has two items of work. Item A is this annual inspection and report. Item B is other services as needed. So, we can call on them and get them to do things for us quickly when we need that.
But, but are there any noted deficiencies there on Paradise?
Well, yeah, as, as they included in their report this year, they, they were concerned about uplift forces on the spillway. They're looking at one of the piezometers that's on the left-hand end of the dam having water levels that are as high as or higher, I think, even than the reservoir level. And so, they're concerned about that being indicative of hydrostatic forces that are coming from the adjoining hillside. Because the spillway is kind of built into the hillside, not into the dam. They're, they're concerned that, that that, that water is, is coming from higher land adjoining the dam. That could, you know, if, if there's high pore pressures, that, that water could be essentially lifting the spillway from underneath.
What's, what's the expected fix for, for that?
They haven't even outlined that there's a problem yet, but they, they feel like it warrants investigation. And they already went on record as saying that before we asked them for this review of the scope of work for the, for this work plan. That was something they identified in their review of the instrumentation data from 2016. And I believe they maybe had similar comments in 2015.
This could become a bigger issue than the recycle. I mean, seriously, if, if they've got issues with both.
That's why we're, that's why it's being presented to you today.
Legal counsel's just looking at it.
Yes.
Next.
Including Paradise in that letter is not a blanket decision. It's thought out.
What do you, what do you mean by that, Jim?
They got the letter, including Magalia and Paradise. Including Paradise in that letter was not a blanket decision on River Stamp. What they just included, it was thought out by the OFSC.
Whether it's targeted.
Right, so, so they're going to be looking at both. Exactly, that's, that's my point. We need to.
Oh, you got your names.
No, no, no.
Forget about that other one.
That's why I wanted to know if we had any noted deficiencies because the first thing they're going to do is look at current data that we've documented. And you're saying we have some documented issues. And if I were, if I were going to do my due diligence, that would be the place I would start. And then I would drill down on anything that was noted in the FAST, so that's something we better take seriously.
And that's, that's where their scope of work starts, with the review of records, collecting records from DSOD, reviewing data.
Right.
They're going to try to determine as much as they can from looking at things that are already, you know, facts and evidence. And then from there, they will identify, well, where are the areas of concern? And then how do we pull that information together? That, that's where I think this could end up being quite, quite expensive because the field investigation work could be pretty substantial. I, whenever I start hearing about drilling rigs going out and taking core samples and having geologists, you know, looking at samples and whatnot, I start thinking dollar signs. I don't know yet. I mean, we haven't got any kind of preliminary idea of even what the, the cost of the work plan is. But the work plan involves extensive field work. This will not be an inexpensive endeavor.
I wonder if we should draft some type of letter to Regional Water Quality Control to shift our priorities and have them agree to backing off on our deadlines until we get this more urgent issue. I mean, does that make sense, Kevin?
I, it would be nice if they listened to you, but I think it's too different.
Well, you got, you got the state, you got the same, I mean, it's the water board. But you've got the state saying this is a declared emergency and we want you to get your act together real quickly on this. And the others an ongoing.
I think, I think a better, maybe a better, I think we're moving in the right direction on the water quality control board. But it almost is like you're looking for a lobbyist in a way to lobby a state agency to kind of say, hey dudes, get off our back because we got two guys coming at you at one time. That's more like what it sounds like to me is you're almost going to try to look for representation that you can receive to, to, because I, I don't, I mean, we can, we've, we've asked a lot of stuff from this State Water Well Control Board and I don't think they're too up on giving us anything at this point. But I don't know if a representative could help you with something like that or somebody that has some pool in some legislative part. I don't know.
Well, it would seem to me that they're more concerned about this as a safety aspect, whereas the others.
It's more urgent.
Regulatory thing.
Well, but the, I, I just, the regulatory thing, there's a safety concern here that doesn't have any statute behind it. And you have a regulatory thing that has statute behind it. So, they're, they're regulated by statute on one side where these guys are regulated by fear on the other side. So, I, it, it's kind of, you're almost, there's two different forces pulling on each one of those decisions.
Well, it's the same agency, basically, and they're.
Well, the.
Jim, I mean, you're, you're.
I don't, don't get them confused or not.
No, I'm not talking about a division. I'm talking about the state of California telling us, this is a high priority and you got six weeks to give us an answer or else. And then I got another state agency, they're both related to water, saying, we want you to comply with these regulations. And what I'm saying is, we need to, I think it would be folly of us to make this a backseat to the recycle. I think the recycle gets shuffled to the back and this gets brought to the forefront and we address this first as a higher priority. That's what we're talking about, is priorities, right?
We're going to talk priority, but we're also talking unknowns with this one too still. So, I think that as we get further along. As we get further along, I think that that's, that's where the board's going to be giving us direction. Whereas the priorities, where do we want to go? How do we want to fund all of these items here? But I think preparing ourselves for both is the, is the correct way of going about it.
Oh, sure.
And I think that, you know, as Neil follows through with the consultant, we get some kind of preliminary ideas, then, I mean, if we're getting, if we're getting pressure on both sides, then, you know, I think we do get ourselves in a position where we kind of, you know, ask for some relief or ask for some representation or ask for something to say, well, well, you know, hold off on that. But I, I, I think we, we still are, still an unknown on this one at this point. And I still think that we need to travel down the process water or the NPDS side kind of equal to it until we see what the global cost of everything is going to be truly is.
Now, they're just looking for information from us right at this point, correct?
Actually, with this one, it's more a matter of, I want you to have information. You need to have an understanding of the background, the issues that are, that are happening. How those will play out as we go forward with this? I, I don't know. We'll just have to wait and see.
Okay.
But it's important that you not get blindsided by, you know, why are they telling us we have to build a new spillway?
Thank you for that.
Right, because.
Things for a while, but this is, this is the, the kind of format where we need to be able to just bring you up to speed on a lot of different things. Some of these things are going to be things that will help you to make decisions later on. You don't have to do anything about it now, but just be aware. And, and then the one thing that, that the board will need to make some kind of determination on is, you know, what, what do you do after you hear from legal counsel? I think that's, that's going to be the first question is, you know, when legal counsel tells you, I think they have authority or they think they don't, then you have to make some decisions based on that. And if, if they don't have authority, then this entire thing could be something that, that goes to the courts or whatever. And that gives you breathing room on the NPDS side because, well, they haven't done their homework on the other side. They're not ready to defend their authority to, to require these things. If on the other hand, the board says, well, no, we're concerned about this, quite aside from anybody else's concerns about it, well, then you have to decide what kind of timeline do you want to roll out? An investigation of quite a few issues here. But a lot of these issues are very much interconnected, which is why I wanted to talk about the water supply side of things. Because if, if the answer was. Because if, if the answer was, well, we need a whole bunch more storage, that's going to definitely factor into what happens with one of our dams. If on the other hand, we're moving in a direction where the state is, is requiring us to use a lot less water, and that's the new reality, we don't want to continue to perpetuate a mindset which says, we're going to spend money and build a sixty, not a sixty, a 6,000 acre foot reservoir in the vicinity of Magalia Dam, because if there's no bang for the buck there, we're right back to what Bill was talking about, you know, how, how do you make a, an argument for this being something that'll give a return on investment? If we already have reliability, building more storage can't really augment our reliability, and there's really no value to the community. And growth impact it? Well, certainly it will, but is 55 gallons per capita day the, the final answer? I'm not so sure it is. I mean, there's already communities in this state that have indoor water uses that are below that. And if they're, if they're setting the pace at 50 or 45, how many years is it going to be before the state mandates Paradise U2 will be at 50 or 45 gallons per capita day? I think that, from my perspective, I think that's the new reality. I think the state is going to be much more hands-on with the way people acquire and use water. We're seeing it on various fronts, I mean, we just prepared the alternative compliance plan, where they want to look at our, our reservoirs, and they'd really like to see it in real time, exactly what's happening with our water right, exactly how much water we're diverting right now, and how much is going to the reservoir, and how much we're taking out of the reservoir. These are not things that are easy answers to come up with, because technologically, they're very difficult to do. So we've proposed an alternative, but it wasn't that many years ago that this kind of level of detail of investigation of, of quantities of water being diverted, they never gave it any thought. Maybe, maybe somebody in the back room was thinking, yeah, we need to get these answers, but now it's becoming a reality that, that everybody's being forced to provide these answers. I just think that a significant storage project may not be in the district's future because we simply won't need it. We've already got a good reservoir at Paradise, and we got a less than stellar reservoir at Magalia, but it provides important operational considerations for us that right now we're not prepared to let go of. I think that's pretty much all I'd have to say summarizing those, those things. Now, the water rights permit is next, and that, that also folds right into the same stuff. So what we're doing here is taking, trying to take action with License Permit 476. Permit 476 is the oldest permit in the state, so we have another feather in our cap for that. Also, maybe, maybe not something we look with a lot of favor on, because the idea of giving somebody a permit to develop their water rights, you're supposed to actually develop them and, and go to license. And we've, we've taken a long time to do that, but we're now trying to license Permit 476, because it looks like we probably can justify that we've made beneficial use of all or most of that water. And we're also looking then to extend our other permit, which is the much more recent one, and that, that would not go to license, because actually we haven't demonstrated water use from that permit yet. And so the efforts that have been directed at getting our water rights permit renewal and going to license, we did a fair amount of environmental work, which, as you heard earlier, was a fairly expensive endeavor. We still have some more work to finalize that. I believe that the draft, yeah, the draft was, has gone to Water Rights staff, so they've had a chance to kind of preview that and look at it. And it sounds like, from what I've heard from George, that, that there's maybe some movement back toward working on that pile of work on their desks, because throughout the drought period, the Water Rights Control Board has been completely sidetracked with the issues involved with the drought. So perhaps we'll see action on this. They're, they have, they carry a huge backlog of work, and I don't know how we're going to fall into things as far as, you know, the line of getting people down, are we going to be first, are we going to be toward the end? I don't know. They've got, they've got a huge backlog, we can only wait and see how long it's going to take for them to do that. In the meantime, we're doing everything we can to communicate with them, all the things that they need to go through the process. Any questions on the water rights permitting?
What is the 16040, what is that one?
That's a permit that, I can't remember what the date was that that is on that permit, but it's a, it's a more recent one. That permit is for...
Storage?
Yeah, it's a storage-only permit, I'm trying to remember how many acre feet it is, it's around 9,000 it seems to me. I'm sorry I didn't bring that information with me.
It's okay.
That, that one, I believe, only allows us to take water during certain periods of the year. I believe it's in October through May diversion interval, and it's under Term 91. I don't know if you're familiar with Term 91, but Term 91 is a, is a thing that basically the state can make a determination that water is in short supply, and they can invoke Term 91, and then everyone who's under that is, you're cut off until further notice. So it's not as unrestricted a right as our old right, the Permit 476.
Is Term 91, that's what they invoke for the drought? When they conserve water?
Well, I'm sure they invoke Term 91 early on in the drought.
And, and other things?
That's like the first one they invoke, I believe.
The first one, okay. I think I vaguely have heard of that before.
The 16040 is only for storage in Paradise reservoir, there's no storage component there at Magalia. Permit 476 is split between the two reservoirs, and I don't think that it's properly aligned with the current storage in the reservoir, so in the process of going through an extension or licensing, there will need to be some realignment of some of the things to, to better fit the way that they've been used operationally and the existing storage.
We have a pre-14 right, and that's just diversion?
It's a, yeah, we have a pre-1914 direct diversion right that goes back to, I think it's 1896, and that one's for direct diversion only, four and a half CFS when four and a half CFS is available in the stream. There's a carriage loss component to that water right as well, which allows us to divert up to a total of eight CFS. But we have to, we have to basically demonstrate that that amount over and above four and a half CFS is carriage loss, but we do track the, the lost water component and, and try to make sure that we track what portion of the direct diversion is lost water, so that we take advantage of it as much as we can. Because with, with water rights, what you want to do is you want to justify your oldest right first, and then you move to the junior rights from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, our, our two, two permits, they, they are only for, for storage, and we have, we have actually direct diverted water over and above our direct diversion right, so those would be direct diversions under these permits, which is not really entirely legitimate under the language of the permit, but it sounds like the state doesn't have a problem with writing a direct diversion component into the extended or licensed rights that we're working on. What happens, where we get into problems with direct diverting in excess of our direct diversion right? Our direct, that four and a half CFS direct diversion right is something that during the winter time, if there's normal stream flows, pretty much all our, our water that goes into the treatment plant comes out of that direct diversion right, because we don't use that much water in the winter time. But in a normal rainfall year, we'll fill our two reservoirs, and then the, the demands will start to come up in the system, and so we are using more direct diversion, we're, we're taking more water than we can cover with that old direct diversion right. But water's still coming into the reservoir fast enough that we don't stop spilling. So the reservoir stays fixed at basically pretty much spillway level, but our customers are, start to work in their yards, and they're turning their irrigation systems on, and our demands increase dramatically. Well, that means we're direct diverting that water, because our reservoir levels aren't changing, and we're using more water than we're entitled to direct divert.
I'm a little confused, that, that works out to about five billion gallons per day, eight cubic feet per second?
Right.
So aren't we using more than that sometimes?
Oh, we definitely are. That's, that's the point I'm making, that we, we use more than that. Actually, we can't take advantage of the entire eight CFS, we can take advantage of the full four and a half, plus whatever we're losing in leaks. And so we track how much water loss we have, so then that water loss comes out of that remaining three and a half CFS, but it, currently, we, we never lose water at the rate of three and a half CFS. Our, our leak losses are low enough now that it's, I think it's more like two CFS.
So, okay, if our Permit 476 only allows us a maximum of eight cubic feet per second, then how are we getting away with using more than that per day? I'm confused.
Well, that's, that's the point I'm making. Under the terms of our, our two permits, which are storage...
Both of them together give the same.
Storage rights only. So under the one permit, we can store water in the two reservoirs, the, under the other, the 16040, we can store water in Paradise reservoir only. But what happens is that there are times in the springtime, when flows start to come up, when people are using more water than that four and a half CFS, plus the, whatever it is for lost water, say two CFS, so our flows go above six and a half CFS, but our reservoirs are still full, because the water's coming in faster than we can use it. No change in storage means that that water's coming directly out of the stream.
It's not building.
That's when we're direct diverting more than we're entitled to under that direct diversion right. So we're direct diverting under a right that's only a storage right. We need to correct that, but it sounds like the state is fine with allowing us to correct that. That's not a problem. There are, you know, we've had dialogue with them about that. But those are some of the things that'll realign as we go to licensing and extending on these two permits, is that we're going to have to address these things, like the fact that the storage, I believe, on Permit 476 is not properly linked to the size of the reservoirs. Because back when that permit was issued, we had a full Magalia reservoir, now we've got a much less full Magalia reservoir. And unless something changes with the dam, we're never going to be able to reuse that space. So we're going to have to realign these things to get them to line up with the fact that we direct divert out of those rights, and that we have storage that's different than it was before, things like that.
And we, we also have a consultant that works with Neil and Wagner and Bonsior, and they are our water rights engineers, and you'll start to, you see, you see some of their bills come through fairly inconsistent regularly, but I think they probably will start ramping up more as we start speaking with the Water Rights Board. Thank you, Neil. I think the Process Water Recycle Project, I think we hit that pretty good, so I think, if there's any questions on that, but it's just to kind of highlight that this is another one of those long-term capital projects that, that are outstanding, that we're, we're going to continue to, to work on. The PGN Powerhouse and Water...
Hang on a second, Kevin, on the recycle, okay, at the last board meeting, we talked about the alternative of having that company work with, looking at whether or not to get back the guys off the, on this permit level.
Right.
So what...
So Jim has issued the RFP, have you issued the RFP for the alternative, for the study?
Study.
The NPDS permit renewal?
That's not a study, but, um, no, we're not. Yeah, we sent, Kevin sent a letter to the regional board last week, we should share that as part of this.
Okay. Do you want to share that?
I can.
Okay.
I, I'd like to know where we're at on that.
Yes. So I have the answer.
Good.
So we haven't submitted the RFP, because the regional board has not agreed to renew our permit yet. So what is the point of sending out consultants to renew our permit, help without the regional board agreeing to renew our permit? That you don't want consultants to call the regional board and say, okay, we're here to represent the district in renewing the permit, and the regional board goes, what are you talking about? So, following me? So we sent a letter to the regional board last week saying, renew our permit process, initiate. Right now, it's proven to wait for the regional board to initiate our NPDS permit process and then issue the RFP.
Okay.
That letter's, that's what the letter said last week, last Friday we sent them. I have heard nothing from the regional board yet. Now, regardless of that note, I asked the regional board to renew our permit process three weeks ago, maybe a month, no response. I asked them to do that because of all the comments we've had from Sand Tech and Peterson O'Brien, that we're on the wrong path, which is what the board supported, we're on the wrong path. We don't want to do a receiving water study, we don't want to start designing the pond So my plan is probably to call, unwind, and waiting the regional board to be proactive, and I copied higher-ups on our letter. So it's come a point in time where I call the regional board and say, we asked you to read, we asked you to initiate our permit process. We wanted writing. That's the right.
I'd like to add something that's sort of news, news-worthy.
Action fine.
Well...
Just a minute. I get emails and information from agriculture. There's an agriculture group that's moving to get rid of NPDS permits nationally through the new politics at EPA. And the new director of the EPA is definitely not, if you're NPDS permit holder and so forth, they might be changing things, who knows? They've changed so many other things. But it's not a hot issue with them to strengthen NPDS permits, it's on the other, swinging the other way. Now, the state, every state has their own rules, but the basic rules they work off is the EPA. So you've got politics in the back, I don't know how to call it, at any rate, the politics are really active, and I wouldn't be surprised to see if some water districts or other water issues were, ended up attacking the NPDS permit under the existing management that's there. So I...
Okay.
It may be off the wall, but it's partly why they're not answering you.
So that, so back to my question, I, I'd like some clarification. So we had agreed that the recycle project was not a good fit, and that we were going to pursue a modified recycle where, where we would enlarge our holding ponds and do something short of the total recycle, but then, at the last board meeting, the issue was brought up that there was an organization that was successful in getting the Regional Water Quality Control Board to back off on the restrictive guidelines that they were putting on permities, okay? So we, I believe, directed staff to investigate that and find out what we had to do to hire this group, organization, whatever they are, to represent us before we made a decision to go forward on the modified recycle. So I don't want this to keep getting the can kicked down the road, so I'd like to know how much we have actually done. It sounds like we basically haven't done anything.
No, we, we have, so I'll, I'll kind of, I'll kind of start it, is, so our NPDS permit, when we first was issued the, the violation, or that the, that the constituents were going to change, we told through, we told the board, the regional board, that our direction was to get rid of it. So we put that in writing. We are going forward with getting rid of the NPDS permit. So that's all, they, they had, they tunnel visioned themselves to say...
Through a project.
Through a project, right.
Recycle project.
Sure. So they tunnelled their visions to say, okay, we're not going to then, we're not even going to work on a new NPDS permit, because you're going to get rid of it.
Right.
So we're going to give you extensions. So with the change...
But, but then, Kevin, they came to that meeting, and we advised them that we were going to look at a modified version of that, and, and their answer was, put something together and come back to us with it.
Correct. And so, but what the consultants have said was, to, for us to do a study that shows that your discharge is not going to be violating your NPDS permit, we need to see what your NPDS permit is. So what we did was, instead of getting a consultant on board and not having that NPDS permit presented to them... NPDS permit presented to that consultant, we have directed the Regional Board to say, "We're renewing it. Show us what that new NPDS permit's going to look like so that when we get the consultant on board, they then can go to that Regional Board and go, "Oh, this is, this, we will prove to you that these constituents at these levels will not harm your blah, 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 blah."
But didn't, don't we already have those more restrictive numbers? They're documented.
No.
We had the interim, and then we had, "Here's what your final permit levels would be." So, we know that number already.
You have to get the report right. This is according to them, that you have to get the people that are going to write the NPDS permit, not just what, what they say is going to be it, what the actual permit's going to look like.
So, so the levels that they gave us as our permanent levels are not what our permanent levels would be, really?
I, I mean.
Because we know, we know that they said, "Here's your interim levels that we're gonna let you get by with till you perfect it, and then here's what they're gonna be." And that's what we based everything on was, "Well, we can't meet those new levels."
That's true.
Yeah.
So, we know those levels. Are we saying that that's a sliding scale?
I, in that, that, I'm not sure, but, okay.
We heard from them that there's a potential for dilution credits. And though that, if there's a potential for dilution credits in the reservoir, then those final limits could drop, or excuse me, could rise, excuse me. Right, it's one direction.
Yeah.
More allowable.
Right, right.
Yes. So, so that's what's kinda driving this, is that we go back with an RFP, well, actually just find out from the Board, you know, how that's going to, how that's gonna work if, if we will be allowed to use dilution, you know, credits in our new permit.
So, then are we, so are we at this point or this point? Are we at the point where we need to give them these new calculations so they could give us a more lax permanent level? Or, or are we saying, "Never mind, just issue the permit and then we'll..."
No, we're not gonna say, "Issue the permit." We're gonna say.
Initiate.
Initiate the process. Therefore, then, when we go out to a consultant, they're, they're both, the Regional Board is now on board to know that we have a consultant that's going in the direction that we have told them that we are headed to. So, we're, we're, we're taking the Regional Board and saying, "We told you one way to go down this direction, and we're now telling you to go down this direction."
Right.
So, that when we bring that consultant on, they're on the same path going down.
So, the consultant is going to look at these other calculations for giving us a more lenient discharge level?
Correct.
And then we're going to hire this other firm to take that and say, "And by the way, we're not gonna comply with that even because..."
No, that, that, what we're going for is that person right there. We're not going to comply with these because of this, because we, we, we've proven out that your numbers.
Okay. So, we're not looking to do the calculations to justify a more lenient level. We're just going to take what we currently have or what they will issue us as a permit and give it to these guys to say, "We're not gonna comply with it because..."
And as the report's being written, our consultants is working with the report writers, sitting down with them and proving out, this is what I understood, that, that they're gonna be our representative, or represent us in that process.
And is that happening?
So, what, no, what's happening is that we're, we just instructed the Regional Board that we're changing direction.
Okay.
In writing. We were waiting for them to come back and say.
It's initiated.
It's initiated, right. Then, once it's initiated, our RFP, if I believe right, and you looked at it right?
Yeah, it's all ready to go.
It's ready to, it's ready to rock and roll.
Okay.
It's ready to rock and roll.
It's ready to go.
Okay. Have we been in touch with this other firm at all? Have we been in touch with this firm that we intended on using to?
I've been in touch with, we've been in touch, District's been in touch with two firms, and they will provide in writing. And I have another four environmental firms of the same stature.
Okay.
That are on the same list, as well as major consulting firms that can find out other environmental firms.
Okay. So, we've done all our due diligence and we're just waiting on?
We're ready.
Last step to me is due diligence.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we weren't kicking the can down the road and killing.
We're moving.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
What Jim, what Jim is saying is that we gave them time to respond back, and they just have been unresponsive.
There's some reason, there's some reason why, a month ago, when I say, "Initiate permit," I haven't got a response. Now, then I said, "Well, have, quit in writing."
Yes.
And I've expected a response. This is Wednesday, Thursday.
Was your first contact an email to, to the Board? Is that?
The email, yes. That was a month ago.
Okay.
When we got Sand Tech, kind of smoking gun email.
Bear Valley.
Right.
And Peters, Robertson, O'Brien, Robertson, Ryan. They're both kinda smoking gun to do, seek information to give to the Regional Board that justifies higher limits.
Yeah.
Gonna do their work for them, so to speak.
Okay.
And say, "This is what justifies higher limits, Regional Board. Do you agree?"
Now, now by, by, by putting them on notice that we want them to issue a final permit, we.
Renew.
Renew.
Well, but, but the renewal permit that we've been on the interim all this time, once they do issue that final permit, now we've accelerated our time to comply, right?
We're just, we're having them initiate the process.
We were, we were told to initiate the process by the Regional Board, uh, three months ago, and they said, "Make sure you do it early." Well, we did that.
This is gonna take over a year.
Make sure you do it early because it takes a long time to renew a permit.
Yeah.
So, do it early.
Okay.
We did it.
Okay. All right, so we're.
We're definitely moving in the right direction.
Okay, balls in the court, then we've done.
That's kinda where, it was like, we're trying to get them to move fast.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. PG&E Powerhouse and Water, I think that we've talked about this. There is opportunities for public-private partnerships, and that's kind of a.
Is it close enough to lunch that we can break right now?
No, 'cause the sandwiches aren't here yet.
Not here yet.
Um, give me fifteen minutes.
Give me fifteen minutes? Should I time this now?
I'll time.
I can't see that clock.
I know, I know.
That's why I keep looking at my phone.
It's quarter to twelve.
Quarter to twelve, okay. You're gonna quit at twelve. Here we go. Okay.
Oh. That was a tough crowd.
Tough crowd, right.
All right. So, this, yeah, I, I do wanna, this is.
Okay, opportunities for public-private partnership that includes the Cal Water Intertight. ROI comes into effect on this one because I believe that that's what drives something like this, is a return on investment. It's, it's the, the ability to have, if, if Cal Water is really interested in excess water, we are the provider for them. I mean, we have the straight shot down the hill to them. And it could make financial sense for the district to become that provider. That could offer this district excess revenue. It could offer them that public-private partnership issue, which there's a lot of grant funding out there for. It is a, it's the buzzword of all buzzwords when you go to any type of conference, public-private partnership. So, I do believe it is something that definitely the district needs to continue to, to have interest in.
Yeah, my, um, concern is, well, obviously PG&E is wanting to get rid of this because it's not profitable.
Right.
Um, what does not profitable mean to them? Maybe non-profitable to them means profitable to us. And that's the thing that I really wanna investigate because even if it's break even, if it gives us unrestricted water rights and it gives us more opportunity, more flexibility, like we're talking about Magalia Reservoir, you know, well, if we have unlimited water rights and we don't need that, that, it could change the whole dynamics of how PID operates, um, in, in a lot of ways, so.
Absolutely. And the other thing too is, you know, from a, from a public entity, we have a lower threshold of profit margin than a private because we don't pay tax.
Exactly.
So, so there could be more opportunity for us to make revenue because it's non-taxable revenue, where tax always comes into effect on the other side.
And we don't need to make a profit. We can't make a profit.
We can supplement our.
We, we, we can, we can.
Raise our reserves.
We can do a lot more to make it a stronger organization, but the end results may very well be that we lower water rates for everybody and provide a more consistent supply. And Cal Water, as an Intertight, they definitely during times of stress need that extra water because I know, I know a lot of people in Cal Water, and I know that when the ground table gets pulled down, they have issues.
Yes.
And this could definitely be an opportunity to work together with a very cash-strong company.
Absolutely.
And this would be a big benefit to them, that, so much so that I think that they may very well be okay with funding upfront money to make something like this happen.
I agree.
Because it would definitely be a long-term benefit to them.
Especially with the groundwater regulations that are in effect, the GSA and how they're...
And we have a connection with Cal Water now.
We do have a connection, that's right.
Heard it. Well, I'd like to speak to this too. I'd like us to look into it. The federal government's told them they can't sell it. They have to sell it to another people, person of interest that'll keep it running. Other words, for the short term, PG&E has to keep running it. FERC is a federal agency involved. I don't think there's as great a things, there's a, what you're running to on the politics side of it is Big Butte Creek, and I think there's four or five environmental groups that are protecting that water. Now, most of the water that comes down, you know, the Desa Bla Powerhouse, that goes into Butte Creek. The water rights, you can't divert them to our lakes.
Right.
Okay. So, anything that's connected above on that because of fish and game and other things, and I've had fishermen tell me, well, even Dan did at a meeting, says that fish can tell the difference if they mix water from one watershed to another. And so, you're gonna be limited on Desa Bla's existing setup, whatever water goes down the hill. And however, the water rights are divided in Butte Creek. Then on the other side, where we go over to the Miocene Canal, and that side, we have to, the Feather River, that can stay in our watershed because we're, part of the water coming in is part of the Feather River watershed. We don't have to worry about fish and wildlife. But the Miocene Canal, like I mentioned earlier, is in good shape where PG&E has done it. They've closed one old powerhouse down that that canal feeds. But when we were talking about the Miocene Canal somewhat seriously a couple of years ago, a fellow showed up because it got in the newspaper, and he was a farmer that has water rights out of the Miocene Canal. And he raises rice. I know about approximately where he's at. He has a diversion canal and everything. And he came into the room and he says, "I don't know what you guys are talking about because when the water gets short, PG&E shuts us off out of the Miocene Canal." And it's just entirely up to them. Like in the drought we just went through, I'm sure he wasn't getting any more water from PG&E. So, we didn't investigate it. We just heard him talk about it. And he was coming on his own time and will just to try to explain to us, "You shouldn't get excited about the Miocene Canal." And these are things that I'm hoping investigation will bring up and study more. But I don't think, and then talking to people around PG&E and stuff, is that they've managed to delay maintenance on some of these dirt canals above us. And that's, that's a backlog and a bill somebody's gonna have to pay to fix them up. Then if you ask the Dales, where our, do our stuff, they've lost water. They had rights they thought were good, and PG&E just shut them off up there. And I've talked to somebody else, called me up on the phone and bent my ear for a half hour because he'd heard that we might be interested in buying, because he was in a fight with PG&E on the water rights up above, going into his orchard and other things. And they were fixing the canal and said they wouldn't be ready for ninety days. And of course, he was, what the hell was he gonna do for water for ninety days? Anyway, he went on and on, and I finally said, "Well, we haven't made up our mind. We're just investigating." But these are things that, that are coming out. PG&E's not known for giving things away, and even under the circumstances they're in, they're gonna be forced to do maintenance, which I understand is going on now, in that canal for their long term. And they certainly have the financial wherewithal if they wanted to change this thing or find better uses or do whatever. Base engineering, which I've mentioned before, has done work at the Desa Bla Reservoir the last couple of years for PG&E, updating their machinery up there at Desa Bla as a consultant and otherwise. So, they're a firm you can talk to about PG&E maybe, but they're also the firm that did the wetlands up in, outside of Cottonwood. There, what I'm trying to get at is, this should not have a silver lining. You should look at it thoroughly and question what your suppositions are, and especially return on investment. I'm being known to you, Cliff, if we don't make a profit around here to pay our employees and to bill our reserves, that's where that money should go. We're, we're very short on reserves, as far as I'm concerned, right now. So, we need to make sure this district is sound financially. And we certainly don't need to invest a twenty million dollar pipeline to Chico, who Cal Water is so excited about, that they never showed up at a meeting or gave any information when we were talking about it. And it was estimated at twenty million dollars. And I think the sewage pipeline the town is talking about, where's it at? It's probably double that, I guess. And if you drive down the skyway and you start looking at the ups and downs, you're gonna realize that it's not a downhill flow. You're gonna have to have some pumps on it. And I don't see any PG&E lines for power along the skyway. In other words, you're gonna have to pay to wire it and everything else if you have to put pumps in. So, all those things have to be looked at. And so, to me, PG&E is something we should talk about, look at, but don't get particularly excited because we're not in any position to go out and spend money we don't have.
I, I, I think that we would do our due diligence. It's gonna be a long, long process. Um, I think it would be something that I think the Board would do a lot of research and investigation, and something that would have to pencil out revenue-wise, profitability-wise, uh, for them to ever take a, a, a shot at it, so.
Kevin, I don't mind spending Cal Water's money.
Huh?
I don't mind spending Cal Water's money.
Oh, I know. You've got a good deal going. I wouldn't question that. As long as they stay on those wells, you know, you really don't wanna to have good old point, water from paradise.
We're just starting to see the, what the val, true value of water is. And I'll tell you what, what we're seeing right now is just a pittance compared to what the value or the cost of water will be in the near future.
Yeah, but you have to remember one thing. We don't really own the water. The state of California does, and we have to live within their regulations.
But water rights.
No, well, this, that.
Anyway.
Hopefully that'll hold them back, whatever.
That's a big issue.
Dive for lunch, Kevin, right?
No, you got three minutes.
Three minutes, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not quite twelve yet.
B reservoir. Yeah. B reservoir storage, again, I, the Board's actually pretty up to speed on this one. The most critical storage tank in the district. A hundred percent of the treated water of the district goes through it. The main security of the B res is a rubber bladder. The district was successful in securing the SRF funding, which is huge, for the replacement of this B reservoir. So, we're talking two percent interest on this, uh, and that we get free money through the design and construction. Um, we just signed the contract for the design, um, and the district was pre-approved for four point five million of construction costs associated with this. So, I think this is, this is.
How many years is the note?
Thirty years.
Will the new, um, construction last thirty years?
Yes. It'll last a hundred years, right? Right? Fifty years.
Right.
Right.
Thirty-one.
Right?
Thirty-one.
It's not a simple answer.
If you're still around when nothing fails, you're entitled to complain.
This one, this one will be something that we'll be paying at least the design portion on for this current budget year. Actually, we won't be paying it. We'll be, we'll be reimbursed for it through the SRF funding. We'll actually have eighteen months after the design is complete if we don't go into construction before we pay on this. Um, and then, how quickly do you think, do you see a turnaround on the, uh, construction after design?
It is. To complete the project?
After the design's complete.
Eighteen months.
So, we, we probably won't pay anything until after construction's complete. So, we, we probably won't pay anything until after construction's complete.
And that's six months after it's completed.
Yeah.
I just wanted to comment on the second bullet point there. It's a little bit misleading. A hundred percent of the treated water for the district goes through the B zone. It actually doesn't go through the B reservoir. The B reservoir is not flowed through reservoir. The water comes down to a junction box at the skyway, splits to a 20-inch main that goes down the skyway, a 36 that goes past the B reservoir, which has a common end line out.
Thank you.
Relatively combined on these...
No, that's good.
Thank you so, thank you for that clarification.
As we start talking about the B reservoir project, they come in.
So, it's an accumulator. Basically, yeah.
It moves up and down depending on water pressure. The pipe underneath it, I've been told, is 25 feet in the ground. My former field superintendent, who's now passed away powers, had to dig the pipeline 25 feet below that. Comes up, I don't know much, that's all I remember on it.
Okay, pipeline projects. So, we kind of have two, two separate kind of things with pipeline projects. We have district constructed pipeline projects and we have contractor constructed pipeline projects. The district constructed pipeline projects are more of the, the smaller ones, the off-the main beaten path ones, still, still critical to, to the infrastructure of the district. We have 60 miles of steel pipe that still needs to be replaced. I believe that we are in the process of doing a pipeline project currently that has fire flow...
Yeah, and Country Club.
...benefits to it at Country Club. And Keith can kind of talk about maybe some of the pipeline projects that we're doing and with our own construction crews going forward and how that works.
Yeah, we have, we have a Country Club project that's underway now. Over two, about 2,000 feet down the Country Club from Sterns Road down to the bottom of the district, which is at the end of Country Club where it makes the turn back to Pence. The next project in line is the Crestwood. Crestwood, Crestwood. It's a, it's an hourglass effect in our piping. There's good water, bigger pipes feeding around that neighborhood. And it's chucked down four inch. Long story short, one of the main fours runs through the backyards of those homes. So, it's in a horrible spot. It has given us issues in the past. It's not huge on the leak list, but it's insufficient flow, horrible pipe, horrible flows. When we flush or do anything, you really got to watch what you're doing in that neighborhood. It is, it's, it's a much needed project. Kevin kind of hit the nail on the head with the, with the R crews. And as long as I've been here, we are much more efficient with the smaller pipes, with the six, eight inch, with the off the beaten paths for what we do and what we can accomplish. Some of these bigger jobs, these bigger pipelines that we've contracted out over the years, the Billy Road, some of the skyways that can be traffic area, the larger diameter pipes, larger the pipe, the deeper you have to go, you start exceeding that five-foot level. For instance, ensuring is needed in some of those cases depending. If it had to go on and on, I can, we can talk as much as little as you want, but just a bird's eye view of it. We, there are certain things that we're very good at and we can do efficiently. This Country Club project, Crestwood, Crestwood, those are a couple. There's been a lot over the years that we've done, some of them we've probably bitten off a little more than we could chew, in my opinion, because it's like, boy, this is, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of traffic, there's some, there's just some jobs that we just, I don't know, some things, in my opinion, just kind of need to be left to the professionals. So, it's not that we're not professional with what we do, but we do have our limits and always have as to what we should tackle to get the best bang for our money and especially the customers.
On some of these pipeline replacements, is, is the new, the new life expectancy vary based on the size of the pipe you're putting in?
No, with the, with the plastic pipe that we're putting in the out cliff of C900, Dan mentioned this, I think, once before in a conversation. It's kind of like we're just talking, is it 30 years, is it 50, is it 100? For the length of time C900's been in existence, that's, nobody knows for sure what the expectancy is being of the material. And lack, zero really corrosion issues, being that it's plastic and it's not steel. It doesn't have to have a liner on the outside, it's not C900 liner on the end like some of the steel because there's type, CML type pipe is a much better product when you're talking steel. In my opinion, with what we've seen as long as it's been in, unless you stick a boring rod through it or you hit it with a tooth of tobacco, boy, I, it's indefinite. I can't, I can't answer how long we would expect it to stay there in place, but I can only bet and imagine it is going to be years and years to come before there's an issue. I think, in our opinion, what we see, sometimes having too much installed without being covered, probably that some has more of an effect on it than sitting in the yard than it does as far as we know in the ground. Jim, do you want to elaborate on that, anything that you've learned with it?
I've heard claims from companies that there's a 100-year life expectancy for PVC and it is PVC, what we use, polyethylene chloride. So, it's, it's, it's just big PVC. It's thick PVC. It's Schedule 40 and Schedule 8 PVC has been used for a long, long time. So, what we see now with the PVC and the PE, high-density polyethylene pipe that we use for service lines, seems to be pretty durable. So, I would expect that some of those claims, especially based on the smaller PVCs, the Schedule 4s and the Schedule 8s that are acting on their...
They have, they have, there's lots of, for instance, tapping C900. But if we go out, we have to tap it, we have service lines up, a valve for higher height or whatever. If you are putting a hole inside that pipe, you have to fix your, just staying away from that. If you have to add a tap to it, no closer than two feet, three, makes me personally feel a little better. You do not want to create a crack or a split because you have tapped into it too close to the last.
What, what's our total rough mileage of, of pipe out there?
171 miles.
And we've got 60 miles of steel pipe that still needs replacement. So, am I assuming the 110 miles have already been replaced with PVC?
No, since, since, so is this data collected and recorded in this fashion, Cliff? 1995, 53, almost 54% of the pipe in the system was steel. Today?
That was in 19 when?
1995. The system consisted of steel pipe approximately 53, 54%. Today, we're down to about 34% steel. Now, that 34% craves to currently about 58 miles left of steel. That's not...
Okay. So, the rest is all PVC then?
No.
No?
No. When you run it down through...
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah.
You have AC, CML.
Seventeen miles approximately of AC, half a mile of ducted iron, 52 miles of C900.
The only thing we don't have left is wood.
Well, I'm just kind of curious on the zinc orthal phosphate, for example, that we're feeding into the water for corrosion protection. You know, as we're transitioning to all this PVC, then, then that need should drop down as well on the feed rates and...
You still have to protect the customers.
Well, true. We have to change our sampling points as well.
We don't get a lot of pipe in a year, not a good year. I mean, we're not talking about miles and miles of pipe in one year. I mean, and we're going from section to section. So, how that equates, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but how it equates with the way that we put pipe in the ground.
Aren't we still testing the pipe once a year for leaks now?
Well, we have, we have the last two years. You made leak detection?
Yeah, leak detection.
We, we were pretty, pretty steady there for, I don't know, we probably did three or four years in a row, but we haven't had one in the last two.
Okay, because that was...
Those are the things we'd probably like to talk about. Come in no way this afternoon or maybe now is appropriate.
Just keep going, well, what we'll do, can everybody hear our voice?
I can hear you.
Because Jim and I cover a lot of the same things, but we're going to just kind of split this up a little bit. The, the leak detection.
Well, why don't you...
You want something?
Well, I mean, we are, we are...
It records others, what he's trying to tell you.
Sure.
As far as, as far as the leak detection, one thing that, that we found in, in the years that I've been here, and I've been here a lot of years, and I'll just give you a quick. There was a company that was hired probably 13, 14 years ago, leak detection. They came out and at the end of the day, at the end of their survey, there was far more dry holes. When this company said, "There's a leak right here," and they marked the spot, there was far more dry holes than there were actual leaks. Okay? I can give you all kinds of numbers, but it is expensive to dig down if you fix a leak or not, especially if you break down through pavement. Okay? This costs go down a little bit if you're in gravel or the dirt because of materials that you don't have to replace or the trouble to get down through or not. Anyway, they thought, well, boy, and I was here working then, but I was in the meter department at the time, and I remember, I remember a lot of gripes about, well, jeez, this is not working out too well because this costs us X amount of thousands of dollars to get these people here and then we're not even finding anything. So, then we came across this company finally, Utility Services, and they've been the one primarily. Bill's seen and heard from me and John Price in the past about this company. And these people were just spot-on. When they put an ax on the ground and said, "You got a leak here," and I'm talking, these some of these leaks have a gallon a minute, a gallon a minute, they're pretty small, not let alone a real, a real gusher. But it was almost spooky how they could pinpoint those to where you're still going to pay to get down to it, but by golly, you get down there, man, they're right on the money. And I'll let Jim elaborate a little more in a minute, but then we got to thinking of some people, some of the guys that mentioned and it's been talked about. I mean, we're talking the last few times, and I'll give Utility Services this, they, they didn't change the price. And I did check with other companies and a real quick story, and I find these things fascinating, but it's the world we live in. I did, got three estimates, second to the last time. One was Utility Services was about $22,000. The one higher was, I think, about $26,000. They were $3,000, $4,000 more. And the one that was really fairly cheap, $16,000, $17,000. The guy asked me, "If we get the job, do you know where I could rent some equipment when I get there?" Hey, well, we didn't use them. I wrote a memo, it was an easy sell. We don't want them here. We could go down 10 times and eat up $16,000, even then. It's just, that's what it costs. So, then, because we had to use one of our people with a line locator to go out and show the tech where these mains are, and especially some of the cross countries and these ones that are kind of in strange places, to let that tech get a little closer. He doesn't want to look all over the room, he'd like to let them know more, come to Rose's chairs, that helps him do his job much better. But we've got a person tied up for about a three-week process. And we did not necessarily do the C900 mains, some of the AC mains. They're very hard to listen to. They're probably not leaking anyway, you follow me? So, there's, there are some things we could cut out, but we still have miles and miles of pipe. I'll let Jim elaborate a little bit on what some of the thoughts have been of late as what it is we could do to accomplish the same thing as often as we want.
Yeah, we just, we, I mean, we try to get more efficient on all of the things that we do and this is one of those that I think we can. So, I totally advocate doing in-house leak detection, personally, and I'll mention why, but I think to make some of these things that we're going to suggest or talk about work, we need to look at a bigger, a grander scale on what we do in the field and maybe even slap some in district wide, but mostly in the field. But in regard to leak detection, and Keith's right, I mean, Utility Services hit the nail on the head, they were very accurate and helped us out a lot. But we learned a lot and it's not, it's not, it's not something that we can't do, it's not something we can't learn. In fact, we already have a couple of guys that are pretty dialed in with leak detection. One of the limitations with pulling in, and Keith said, $22,000, $25,000, $26,000, that's for 50 miles of steel, nah, sorry, almost 60 miles of steel pipe. We're down now, but that's all we're hitting is a steel pipe. That seems to be the most problematic, but is it really the most problematic? And that's my thought. Is that really the most problematic? It's the biggest portion of our pipe for sure, but that may not be the only place it's leaking. I mean, we see CML that leaks. One of the problems with CML is that it's all, well, not all, but a lot of it is well on fittings. They put up a well, a coverer, right, too, and that's where they put the cup into the door or something. Those wells leaked right there. They're hard to fix. Sometimes you've got to shut the main down, cut that thing off, put a clamp over it, put a saddle, it's just, it's very difficult to do. We know those things leak. Neil had mentioned it earlier about Billy Road, he found some massive leaks out there. There was one that we estimated, I was actually out there that day, maybe about 60 gallons a minute. It was not surfacing. There are some places on Billy Road where there are actually three levels of pavement. So, I'm imagining years ago that road did this, right? And then they just filled it and then it did this, and then they filled it two more and then it did this, and now it's just this. Except for the transline, the transline's smooth. So, I, I guess my point is, is that I'm advocating some suggestions and especially in leak detection, that we look at investing in equipment and training of our own personnel so that we can actually carry on throughout the entire year and hit our entire system, even the plastic. Because, I mean, there's a potential for plastic to leak. We did, it wasn't so long ago that we did a little pipeline project on Pence Road and we needed to do a tie-in on a lateral and we needed to pull a joint of C900 apart. There were two roots that were in it. Yeah, they were small, but it's just a resilient basket that's in there. So, there's a potential for that to leak. I don't think for breaks or anything like that necessarily, but things like that. So, there are potentials that we could cover that we're certainly not going to be able to do with an outside service bringing in, right? Let's just be too expensive to have the entire system. So, that's what I look at.
I've asked several times in the last few years if we get our own equipment. So, if you want to put it on the agenda, I'd put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. And if you can give us prices and costs and to point out the savings that might be in it, but I'm certainly in favor of the district having their own sound, this is all sound devices, if you see them operate. And before we had that, we were going on age of pipe in the district and very often the oldest pipe, some of it was still good, some of the newer stuff was what was failing. And so, this is why this is so critical, I think, to, we don't have a lot of money to spend on pipe, so we need to get where the leaks are and get those pieces fixed. It's like cemetery property over here. There was a leak there, what, year and a, about a year and a half ago now, and the guys came out and it was quite a leak. It surfaced and I'd called in and I caught the crew, that's where I have some cattle and I, it was a very big clamp that went over this thing and I thought, wow, what's it going to be like two feet away? You know, it won't be long and this thing is...
We also, ladies and gentlemen, we call some are stainless steel. Because it's just stainless steel clamp, but it doesn't...
So, it makes sense, it makes sense we should own our own equipment for finding it in the water business.
About...
Yeah.
It's actually a really good point, too, and if you don't mind me just segueing into this, is that we used to use primarily a leak detector, or I'm sorry, a leak database and that would tell you how many leaks were in a section. You'd go, oh, man, look at all those leaks in there, we should go replace that line. But what we've done in the last several years is we created a database now to where we can record the condition of the pipe. And it's very interesting you said that because we've had the conversation about gallvanized pipe before. Keith's house, my house, were built approximately the same time. He looks at his gallvanized pipe, it's really clean. He looks at his gallonized pipe, it's really clean, I look at mine, and it's just choked down one inch, I can get like quarter inch of water through it. So we look at those, and we're like, "Well, what's the difference here?" We look at our steel pipe, and it's what you said, we put a clamp right here, and that, you can tighten that clamp so much, it'll literally crush that pipe. Ten feet away, beautiful pipe. So we're looking at conditions of the pipe now, including that with the, with the leak database, and using both those components. Before, it was just, it was just, um, it was just the leak database, well, we could've been replacing hundreds of feet of pretty decent pipe. And sometimes we don't even really know what's in there, because there've been repairs made before, so there could be two hundred feet of plastic or something in there, and we can find those particular things, where we say, "It's steel here," and then, ten feet down the road, it turns into AC pipe, but we went all the way around that, AC pipe's really good.
Well, my story is illustrated in the yard, if you walk around the yard, there's this huge piece of concrete pipe and steel pipe that blew apart over below where Safeway used to be, below Ace Hardware, one of the biggest leaks we've had in the district, and it was in a place where nobody checked it, because you thought, "Well, it's, that stuff isn't gonna leak," but when it went, it, it went. I remember-
That was a little, that was a little different story, though, because what we can, we, we looked at when we reviewed that pipe, and we were able to cut that section out, you can actually see where probably an excavator had come down, and they did some storm drain work, probably, or maybe even when that pipe was placed, and you can see where the teeth of the bucket had dragged across there, and right where that depression was, where the teeth, the teeth came across, or the tooth, um, that's exactly where that split was. So actually, we're assuming that it probably does CML, a sixteen-inch CML, it probably knocked the CML off of there, for one thing, inside, and obviously, I mean, it was, and you can see it, it's super, super thin where that fraction, you really take it close, it can act as very, very sharp, and we're in there trying to figure out what we could do with that, so, so there are instances like that, that, you know, we don't, obviously, we're not gonna know about, but-
You gotta understand, when you ask the field staff, especially these two guys, they're not known for short answers, and-
It's all good. Did you guys have an estimation on the cost of a, a set for what you were looking for?
Yeah.
For leak detection?
It's under twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Maybe a tick more, depending on the technology you wanna get, but no more than thirty-five.
Yeah, and just, just to give you guys a history of, I believe, what, ninety, when did, when did the district ramp up, uh, pipe, pipe?
Ninety, ninety-two or three, I, it's been so long now, I forget what year I started.
But, and I think our water loss was, what, twenty-five percent, around there?
I, I know that, I know that in nineteen ninety-four, 'cause I was one of the guys out there, I think we fixed six hundred and fifty mainline leaks in one year.
How many, uh, how many times did you have to hire the other firms to find leaks for you?
We've hired, um, six, six or seven.
Okay, and the average cost each time was?
A little higher than, I think it was around twenty-two thousand dollars, or less.
Oh, for the service?
For the service?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand.
Well, that paid for itself pretty quick.
Yeah, it paid for itself, yeah.
Really quick.
Yeah, even in the first year.
Especially if you could just go throughout the year, and we would look at, and we've been talking about how we can combine that with other functions, um, especially flushing, because if we're flushing, we're probably flushing effectively, um, oftentimes we create leaks, um, and so that would be a good time to coordinate, um, really, that'd be leak detection in the particular areas that we're flushing.
No, just a, just a side, quick question, in, in regards to flushing, there are companies that I've seen in literature that, uh, manufacture a system where you can flush the water, run it through their filtration system, rechlorinate it, and put it right back in without dumping it on the ground. Is there any cost savings of that, or?
We, we look at some of those, and we'll continue to look at those, they actually have a pretty intense system, I mean, the theory is pretty simple, right?
Yeah.
You pull it out of one hydrant, pull it through, and you gotta coordinate valving, and, and make sure you shut off and turn on right, and everything like that, so they're pulling it through and putting it back into a hydrant. So you have to really look at that, see what that would look like, we haven't, we've looked at it to the extent of what it is, what it does, and how it works, but we haven't really applied it to our system, but those are always things that, that, that we want to look at, and we haven't excluded it by any means, but we haven't really gone down that for flushing.
When you, when you, when you flush a mainline, what roughly does that cost us, uh, water-wise gallons, is it substantial, or?
It depends on what the water looks like when we pull it out.
How many, yeah, how many, you know, we have to run through it before we clear it, absolutely varies, and it varies, of course, in an area that's got a lot of C nine hundred. I can tell you one thing, I'm experienced, once that treatment plant's put in, the amount of time needed to flush all organs was cut down significantly, just a lot of damage dealt with, and taken out of that water pad that plant, where previously it wasn't. I remember back in the nineties, I don't know, I can't yet, a hydrant, wide open, you know, maybe, I don't know, fifteen hundred, two thousand gallons a minute, kind of, I mean, it's a hose and a fuser, so it really wasn't, you know, so we gotta choke down an hour, you know, a hydrant or something like that, an hour before you would even think about wanting to drink it again.
So your mains were acting like sand basins.
Oh, could be, not say a hydrant today, it could be ten, fifteen minutes, it varies, but much, much less time to clean that water.
Rarely more than fifteen minutes, if we're doing unidirectional, depending on the size of what we're doing with unidirectional, uh, has a lot to do with that. Some of these are dead ends, and that's one of the problems with our system, is we have a lot of dead ends, and some of those dead ends are relatively small, they're pipes horrible, and have a warbed, and you don't have a ton of flow in there anyway, and so, are we getting the right velocity, and how does that look? Some of them, rarely less than, well, no, we definitely get up into the five-minute range, because that water will change from, it might start brown, and then come out clear, and then brown again, so we're getting some movement in there.
During the drought years, we were able, two, two, the last few years, we were able to do a system-wide flush, because we've got, had water bottles. Prior to that, a year or two, we did at least dead-end mains, to just at, at least get the dead-end mains cleaned up. We weren't able to, kind of hardly ask the customers to cut back to, well, at forty-one percent, and go out there, and be pushing thousands of gallons, in some cases, a minute on the ground, it just didn't make a lot of sense. We even still had to talk a few people into it this year, until we tell them how much water's going under that spill, and then it makes more sense. And we have much less complaints from our customers, though we do it a little differently today, as far as letting the customers know ahead of time that we're going to be in your neighborhood tomorrow or next week, so it gives them an idea about the dirty water complaints, and the aesthetically bad-looking water because of flushing, partly because of the plant, partly because if you do it on a regular basis, you just have to walk period, because you don't have as much time for anything to build up. Those dropped off dramatically, which is a plus for all of us of all, because they're not upset, they're not moving a white bucket of clothes into the washing machine, because they didn't realize it, so it all, it all matters, and it all makes sense, but the more of the pipe that we replaced, the more C nine hundred that's put in, of course, having a treatment plant, it all adds up to a cleaner system.
It was kind of odd, though, this year to me, um, there were, because obviously our flows have been considerably less than they have in the past, there were certain areas where we thought would, no problem, we'd go, "Why is that? Why is that so dirty?" And we flush it out, and it cleans up, of course, um, but it was, it was odd to us, because in beer baths and our clothes have been pretty decent, okay, we don't really have as much, and so, it seemed like this year, we were looking at, I mean, there were places, where would you take, we got a twenty-five hundred gallon water truck, where we were taking six, seven loads out, and not a lot of those, but I mean, you're talking fifteen, eighteen thousand gallons, so, um, out of one stretch, and sometimes those are large stretches, or maybe they're larger diameter pipe, but, um, and our customer comments, customer complaints this year were really, really minimal, in fact, we had more positive comments, uh, than I know of, than, than I had two people call in with a, kind of a complaint, or a concern, I should say, that was easily rectified, so.
Great, thank you. Lunchtime.
Lunchtime, great for lunch.
I wasn't finished.
Darn it!
And then Neil's gonna kind of explain what, what this is, it actually kind of all works into the next two topics, which is, continuing with the pipeline projects, the, remember, I told you we have two? We do our own, and we do the contracted pipelines. Um, the contracted ones are the big, the bigger ones, higher traffic, bigger-sized pipe, where the smaller ones we do for off the, off-the-road, smaller-sized pipe. Uh, the one thing I do wanna remind, that's why I was asking Keith, is when we ramped up in ninety-two, we had such high water loss, like twenty-five percent, we're now down to eight, which is below industry standard. And the other thing, too, though, is, the district has put a lot of capital investment into replacing our own pipe, so not only have, do we have personnel out that we've put a, put a investment into, we've also put an investment into, uh, uh, equipment, and all of the necessary needs for, for replacing pipes. So at this time, I feel like for, for what we're doing, for what our crews are doing, I think we're doing it very efficiently, because there's always that thought of, well, some, you know, Cal Water, they, they do everything contract out, you know? And so why aren't we doing that contracting out? Which, I think, right now, from an in-house standpoint, which we've looked at before with the investment that we've put into the equipment, and training our own personnel, I think that we are very efficient in doing what we're doing within the pipeline projects. Um, that leads us to the bigger ones, the contracted pipelines out there. Um, Neil kind of did a, a, a good kind of priority list of where, what big projects, big pipeline projects we have outstanding, and kind of how he would prioritize them, and, um, based on that, our, our leak history is so, our leak percentage is so low, you kind of start looking at other reasons why we need to pipe, to change out some of the pipelines, and one of the big ones is redundancy, about redundancy within the system, and, and creating that redundancy. And so, um, what I'm gonna do is now turn it over to, uh, to Neil, and just to remind you, the top three high, very high priorities are ones that are listed in our FEMA grant. So those, those projects are, hopefully will be funded through the FEMA grant.
Yeah, what I looked at, I mean, we've got a lot of pipes in the ground, there's a lot of things that we're gonna need to do over the years to come. Started with the list, it's on page eleven of the, uh, the budget documents, the budget documents in front of you, and I kind of looked at each one of those projects that's in there, there were a few that we've actually built portions of, and so I removed that from consideration, because we don't need to build them again. Uh, there were also some projects that I felt like were probably projects that could be better kind of parsed into separate pieces, and on a few of those, then, I said that, "Well, you know, certainly they're good projects, but I won't, wouldn't identify them as high-priority projects." And so, in the list that's, that's in front of you there on the big piece of paper, I basically ranked the projects by priority, and so the highest ones are at the top of the sheet, and the lowest priority projects are at the bottom of the sheet. And after going through that exercise, I, I would say that, I would recommend that the five low-priority projects at the bottom of the sheet, which came from that previous table that's in the, the draft document, that those would be projects that we'd set aside for now. I don't think that they have the priority that would, would probably suggest that we should be keeping them on a list of, this is something that we, you know, need to get to in the next five, or ten, or fifteen years, uh, when, when the, uh, leak history with those pipelines suggests that they need to be replaced, because we're starting to lose water from them, finding problems with them, or perhaps, sometimes we, excuse me, sometimes we'll prioritize pipeline projects on the basis of, perhaps a major overlay project that the town is doing with the road, and we, we'd rather be ahead of that project than after it, because they'll, first of all, they'll, they'll establish a moratorium on open cuts in the street for a period of time, and then, the, after that moratorium is over, they'll often have more stringent requirements on us for pavement restoration than they would if we were to be opening an ordinary street around town. So sometimes we'll prioritize, prioritize mains on the basis of, of some town project that's gonna be doing a major reconstruction of a street, but the, these five on the bottom, the fire flows are good to excellent, leaks are either no or low leaks on those facilities, so I'd suggest that we could just set those aside for now, and we'll continue to watch them, and make sure that if they cause us any problems, that we would, we would move those up and consider, uh, replacing them. So for the very high ones, as Kevin pointed out, they're, they're, uh, the top three are already in our FEMA grant proposal that Silver did, and we're hoping that we'll get funding for those on a seventy-five, twenty-five percent basis, which would be excellent, because each one of those three components is something that, that basically allows us to avoid a situation where currently, our forty-two-inch transmission line is the only way that we can deliver water from our source, the treatment plant, to the town. We have one well, but our well doesn't produce enough water to even keep up with leaks in the system, so if we were to, for whatever reason, lose the forty-two-inch transmission line capacity, we would very shortly after that be looking at a complete failure of, of the ability to deliver water, system-wide.
What's the construction of the, what, what's the material of those right now? Are they steel, or concrete, or?
The forty-two-inch?
Yeah.
That is a cement-mortar-lined steel line.
Okay.
It was originally constructed in, I think, the fifties, and it was cement-mortar-lined in the mid-nineties.
Yeah, Keith, you have to worry.
Early, it was nineteen ninety-four, something like that.
So it, we don't have any reason to believe that it's a bad facility, but it's the only facility that'll allow us to get water into town. So if there were some, be some kind of event that, I mean, we couldn't have that line service, a landslide, an earthquake, something like that, if that thing were to be severed, we'd be really scrambling to try to identify how we could get water into town.
Would these be, uh, alongside the existing, or would it be a different location, or?
It would be a different location, that's one of the things that would help to provide safety in a redundancy situation, so we don't wanna use the same alignment, because what happens, if you do have a landslide, it is both, the client that we're looking at for this paralleling pipeline that would be used to deliver water to A-zone, would be along the new skyway, so if the, uh, the forty-two is kind of on the other side of that hillside that, that, uh, you know, the, the new skyway's on the east side, then there's old Magalia in between, and then on the, the west side of that hill is where the, the forty-two is. So those are our highest priority ones, and then we also have some other redundancy-type projects in, in our system, uh, one is on the skyway in the A-zone, uh, we have some kind of borderline fire flows in that area, and if we build these top three facilities, we're gonna have some additional need for strengthening of the system as the water gets into A-zone, and we need to move it to B-zone. Then some, there are some other ones that, uh, on your page eleven table, there was a, our project on Pence Road that went from Billy to Sterns, I've divided that project roughly in half, and suggested that the, the southerly half project is something that we would wanna prioritize, and that the northerly half, we would, we would set aside for now. The southerly half is something where we have relatively small diameter main on Pence Road, and the southeast portion of our system, that is to say, east of Clark Road, south of Pearson, is essentially fed by one main, and it's a sixteen-inch main on Follen Road. Again, if that facility were to be offline for whatever reason, perhaps a failure, uh, that six-inch main on Pence Road would not be sufficient to, to provide flows to over a thousand customers. So that's why I, I think that this Pence Road southerly project needs to be prioritized. Another one that we've got a high priority for is, uh, the lower skyway from Longview Drive to Crossroads, that area has extremely poor fire flows, and so it's a high priority for Paradise Fire Department, and it's an old steel main, so it's not one of our best facilities either, and because Paradise Fire is interested in replacing that one, uh, they would be taking on a fifty percent cost share, which is very helpful to us, when we can, uh, reduce the cost of the project, because we have a, a partner. Questions on that?
How, how does that work, again, with, uh, we contracted out our firework, but, but this kind of stuff actually goes through the town, is that right?
No, we would, well, what would happen, we would work, if it was a PFD project, so we were working with the PFD fund, we would work in- working with the PFD fund, we would work in conjoint effort to come to an agreement on the contract associated with it, but we would still take ownership of the pipe and all of the facilities. So we would be the ones that owned it and that basically monitored it and cleared it at the end. But because of the benefit to the fire system down there, they would be, they'd be working with us to cost share at half-half out of the PFD fund.
Okay.
Would we put together all the specs for that project and put it out to bid, or?
Maybe you would do the contract administration for that. Whether we would do the plans and specs would be, I guess, a decision for the manager to make whether we wanted to do that or not. We have outsourced some project designs and we've also done some in-house. It kind of depends on workload issues in-house.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. Neil, the fourth one, Skyway A-zone main, Clark Road, the B-res. What, can you describe that? What is that?
Yeah, that would be basically taking off at the northerly end from where the district stopped its 12-inch installation back in around 2004, I think it was, when the town signaledized the Clark Skyway intersection. So we replaced all the main line in that intersection from, pretty much, I think it was above the corner of Bader Mine and Skyway, and then down Clark Road, south to Cabernet Lane, and down Skyway, south to, I don't really know, Cross Street or anything there, but it's.
Just below the smog shop there, a few minutes down?
Yeah, yeah, like, south of the smog shop.
Yeah.
So that, we put in 12-inch main through all of that project and then with an eye toward in the future, extending 12-inch main down the Skyway. Currently, that stretch of the Skyway has an assortment of smaller main sizes. There's some 8-inch, there's some 6-inch, there's some 4-inch. There's actually a parallel 8- and 4-inch mains in there. It's kind of a hodgepodge. We'd be looking at getting rid of the dual main setup in there and going to a single 12-inch.
Down the middle.
All the way down to the vicinity of the B-res where we would then install a VRB station probably to bring the A-zone water into B-zone. In the event that we ever had to use that A-zone pipeline to deliver water system-wide.
And that VRB station is the one that you say, that's the third one down, which is on the FEMA grant?
Right.
Right? So that's, when I saw that, I was wondering if that's what was going on. Where Clark Road, where we set the future at the 16, coming from Forest Service, would that have any, would we be looking at that and look at that at all, or?
Clark?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was on the list, the original list, and I've moved it to kind of a lower priority spot now because we haven't seen leaks on that, and fire flows on that stretch are good.
They're good.
It's, I think it's for down there, so it's not an undersized facility. Someday, I'm sure we're gonna have to, it doesn't suggest a self further a top priority project, whereas the Skyway, that's kind of sketchy through that area.
Yeah. So on a couple of the places we've gone in there, it's actually where I was mentioning before about not just the heat data things, but also looking at condition of pipe. So Christmas Eve, we were here for a little over in there, and we could not do anything but cut a section of pipe out to get that fixed because we could not put repair cons on there, pipe is in such a shape. But as we dug the trench to find out where we were gonna get good steel, well, then we finally found good steel, but that's part of that right there. So that was a teaser test run in that area right there. So that's about where all that transition with the 4-inch and the 8-inch and all that takes away, so definitely sections of bad steel that are in there. So not just leaks, right?
Yeah, not just leaks.
Any other questions? So just like what we said, the FEMA grant is something that we're hoping to secure at the end of next month, and these three projects are part of that FEMA grant. So the total cost of the FEMA grants, total cost of the projects in the FEMA grant are $3.7 million. But we as a district are going to be putting up $934,000, so a million dollars. Again, that's money coming out that we're gonna figure out to make sure that we're able to afford these type of things, which through this budget process, we'll definitely do. What's the timeline on these projects being completed?
Well, I thought we said 18 months.
18 months on the FEMA, on the FEMA grant? Okay.
Once everything is.
So it's probably over two budget cycles that you'll see this. And then part of that FEMA grant is a 16 KW emergency generator that would be replacing the old generator at the treatment plant, is that correct? So that's another thing. And then what's the seismic and hydrology study associated with that? Do you want to clarify?
Neil, you wanna go ahead?
Sorry, I caught you in a bite.
Under the FEMA grant structure, it's really laid out in such a way that it's straightforward for certain types of projects. Like if you're in an area that's a designated FEMA flood zone, well, then you're a candidate for funding. But those FEMA flood zones tend to be valley areas, places where when the water runs to the bottom of the hill, it pops. Well, our treatment plant is nothing like that, but it does have a stream that runs right through the treatment plant campus, and it's subject to flooding because of that stream there. But it's not the kind of thing that FEMA maps. So if they've already mapped it for you, then you can just say, hey, look, I'm right here on your map, give me some money. And they're good with that. They completely understand that, they're ready to dispense money because they've already identified that as an area of need. For us, we would have to first identify that, yes, we do have a hydrologic issue here, which is not on one of their maps. And so that was that study. The seismic study basically is looking kind of at the same thing. We know that there are seismic issues in this area, and they're cool with that, but as far as, well, what does that mean in our context? We would need to have that study to demonstrate, what does that mean to our dam? What does that mean to our facilities? So that's what that part is. Basically, it's the first stage of the grant process for certain funding because we would have to demonstrate that if they fund this, they're actually gonna do some good within the constraints and parameters of their program. Now, some of the other things, the A-zone pipeline, that's not probably hinging on some of that same studying, but some of the funding is. I don't know that I even know for sure which portions of the funding first have to be justified under those studies, but certainly to get the full fund share, we would need to justify some of that.
Water treatment plan upgrades. I just have this as a needed upgrades, because I'm not completely sure what we need. But the reason why I put this in there is because the AECOM design had upgrades associated with it. And if we're kind of moving away from that design and going towards more of a study side, then I wanted Jim to cover what additional upgrades would be needed if the AECOM project or design didn't go through there. So that's why I kind of put it as a bullet point to let Jim kind of explain some of the upgrades that we would need if we don't go with the AECOM design.
You might want to do some tag teaming on this. I would start with the worst case is our SCADA system XP. It's not covered, I mean, it's no longer supported. Maybe Mickey could talk or Bill talk more about the consequences of our SCADA system dying. Yes.
Wasn't that long ago that we put that in, was it?
It's been quite a while.
How long?
Eight years.
It's been a long time.
Eight years.
That's a lifetime.
Yeah, for software, for software, this many life, many generations.
That's ancient in software.
18 months.
It's antiquated, as you say. It needs to be upgraded comprehensively with Wonderware. We don't want to just, we don't want to Band-Aid it, piecemeal it, we want to have a comprehensive SCADA upgrade. Sure, you're right, Jim, you know, being a little flippant, but what we did eight years ago stabilized the SCADA system. It was very, very valuable. We don't really have any hiccups, but this is taking it to a current technology.
Yeah, you're telling me it's still working.
It's working, but we, you know, it could fail. SCADA is an issue.
And you currently don't have the support?
Right.
Okay.
It's based on XP. It's based running XP.
XP.
So what happens if it fails? Give us a scenario.
Well.
Right now, if it fails, we have two computers, so we have one that backs it up. The problem is that both of them fail. We did buy a backup computer, Jeremy's gonna be working on it, we put in the software onto the backup computer, and we're seeing if we can run the software on a non XP computer. We'll see what happens. It's gonna be an experiment. Doing study online, some stuff says it'll work, other stuff says it won't.
This key word is, it's prudent to replace it, and it needs reliability.
Basically, it's upgrading all the, it's upgrading the machines and the software along with it all at the same time.
Wonderware's come a long way since, our version is quite old. Wonderware has a lot more functionality now than it did when we first installed it.
Is what you have upgradable to that?
Well, yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
Okay.
Because we, well, because of the Allen Bradley DLCs we have are very top-of-the-line DLCs that are where the program resides.
Sure.
Okay. The, I guess the second one I would put on the list is in terms of priority is relocating our hypochlorite tanks. But without the project, even though I'm saying it's kind of important, it could stay. It was designed as a temporary facility, but unless we have another project, facilities, it doesn't, it could stay. They're dual tanks, so insulated tanks, tanks are really top-of-the-line tanks, pumps are top-of-the-line. All the piping was done professionally by our staff, which I'm very impressed with the piping, if you'd like to take a look at that system sometimes. So I suppose that could, that could be deferred or?
It probably depends on what the project ended up being because the idea of the EQ paint goes right where those tanks are.
Right. Are those 5,000 gallon tanks or 2,500?
65.
6,500 each?
Remember, the one key component of the process water project as designed is put those tanks to take our, equalize our flush water and our backwash water. That's the location. So if we actually build something there, then we would have to relocate the hypochlorite system.
But your feeling right now is quite a ways away from?
It's a long ways away.
A long ways away, right?
Not ideal.
And then drop a load of bleach and the drivers usually.
And it's pretty tight too, right? Okay.
I guess the short answer is if we have to build something in that footprint, you gotta relocate it. If we need that land footprint, gotta go. So that's second priority because we might put something there.
That doesn't take that long to move those tanks anyway, does it?
What's that?
It really wouldn't take that long to move those tanks.
Yeah, what was the estimate on that part? I couldn't remember. Do you remember?
It doesn't take long, but it.
Oh, you mean cost wise?
Because you have to have one tank up and online while you're moving the other tank. The moving, physically moving the tanks is the easy part. It's moving the SCADA hardware that controls the pumps that are tied to the tanks is a whole different story.
That's a good point.
See, so the creek crossing was in the project. We have a FEMA grant for that. That's the one with OES, different FEMA grant. That's Cal OES FEMA on hazard mitigation to move the creek crossing pipeline, you're one of your favorite ones, okay?
Yeah, it has supports underneath it that doesn't have any steel in, and it's been on the agenda for 10 years that I've been here.
Well, we got a package to the project.
How much is it gonna cost now? It was 25,000.
It was about 400 to 500,000.
To do it now?
To do it properly. And it'll be solved. It'll be in a road, so there's, that project, hopefully it'll get funded.
Can't we just replace the braces underneath it?
Well, Bill, the pipeline isn't in very good shape either, so that probably would.
Well, the pipeline itself needs to be replaced?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an old steel line, right?
Yeah, that's a little 1950 steel pipe.
Yep, yep.
It's a bit more early.
So there's three, keeping track.
Okay, I am.
Another one was the pavement, because part of the process water, we're gonna tear it, a lot of pavement at the plant. So it's gonna have to be replaced, but we have all this cracking pavement, so we would replace the crack pavement and just restore all the plant pavement to do it.
But when you guys, when they ran, oh, come on, to check it, there was not much subsidence, subsidence.
Subsidence.
Not, not, bottom line, not serious, it's a shrinkage. Bottom line, asphalt.
Oh, the shrink, it went that way.
It's a shrink in tectonic plates. You wanna repair tectonic plates to.
And those cracks are wide enough, has there been any wash into the fill underneath?
Well, Bill's saying tried to dump stuff into them. It's an endless cavern underneath pavement. He was trying to fill them with slurry. You couldn't put enough slurry in these cracks to fill them. So there is voids potentially, but we don't know.
We don't want to run a forklift over to test it.
That's good, here you go. Could be.
Be dangerous.
Could be, or a chemical delivery.
We haven't lost a truck yet. You got a cliff story.
Yeah, yeah.
Never know.
See, that's number four.
Yeah. What about repairs to the clear well?
To the?
Your clear well, did you ever get all the leaks repaired?
Oh, I can't support that. There may be a difference of opinion on that. We saw, as far as I'm concerned, crack sealing with epoxy removed about 80, maybe more percent of the leakage.
Okay.
Another, we were scheduled to do another crack seal with epoxy, could have solved it completely. And I don't, I don't, I don't agree with working under a tank, even though they were considering injecting grout. I don't see a need to, George supported that.
You're okay?
I just can't see messing with compaction underneath the structure when it appears to be, the problems appear to be solved.
And so the way you repaired it was having divers go in and use grout?
We drained it. What they use is zert fittings, every foot, they put a zert fitting. So they drill and tap where the cracks are.
Injected.
Then they use high-pressure injection with epoxy. It really, it's a standard method that I've used in my career, and it worked. In our particular case, we were gonna do a second round of this injections, and like I said, it's really not.
You're happy?
And the thing is, we didn't find, we drilled into the rebar, exposed the rebar, I mean, and didn't find any consequence of corrosion on the rebar, on the steel structure. And we primarily believe that's true because concrete has pH above 12, that creates, that minimizes any kind of corrosion on steel. We have professional engineers look at this. The other part of that clear well is different than the project about, these same engineers all said we don't need to coat the inside of the treated water tank. Concrete's not showing any, and that was a 500,000, we have a placeholder, $500,000 planned into our, I can't recommend recoding the inside of that treated water tank.
Okay.
We have a letter that says, it's not from an engineer who deals with tanks, Harper, Krista Harper, said it's not necessary.
Okay.
I think that's.
Plant water pumping.
The plant water pumping, plant water pumping is that, actually, I might have wanted to put that number one.
Number one.
The plant water, the plant has processed water, or just water for sinks, water for flush, dilution water. It's based on a hydromagnetic tank, which is, it's at its end of its life, hydromagnetic tank. It's based on a hydromnematic tank, which is, it's at its end of its life, hydromnematic tanks. If you, if you're a fitting man would say, get rid of it before somebody dies. Okay. It's not that bad. I had a boss that never let me forget I said that early in my career, but talk to, talk to Aqua JPIA. They have, they'll support what I just said. It's, it's, but nevertheless, regardless of all that scare tactic, forget it, the tank is at the end of its life. It needs to be recoated inside sandblasted recoding to rehab, rehab. But replacing the tank is just as cheap as trying to rehab a tank. Okay, so we had, there's other ways of getting around having a hydro tank there at all. Is putting pumps in the treated water storage tank and that, and maybe Neil could explain that.
It's all part of the A-zone. If we, if we go to the A-zone pipe from the plant and pump the A-zone, we'll just use our house water off of A-zone. And so we can eliminate all the plant water pumps.
We think the B-res, the B-res product, project as recommended by our consultant when we just hired, will include how important that is for the operation of the B-res. To keep the size of the B-res smaller than it needs, than it might be if it didn't have this improvement. So that, that particular one actually equal to a SCADA upgrades.
So, so you're saying that this will be fixed with the B-res construction?
If likely.
Do the A-zone pipe.
The A-zone.
A-zone pipe, yeah.
And that was, that was in there, right? A-zone pipe, in there.
But the B-res, beginning with the B-res project right now is a hydraulic study, hydraulic analysis of our system. And they're going to be able to justify the need for the A-zone pipeline and this pump station and to replace the hydromnematic tank.
Okay.
At the plant.
So that, can the tank wait this long for the process to take place?
For the two years of construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I will, uh, no scare tactics.
Okay.
It'll hold on.
Okay.
It's just something, hydro pneumatic tank can't just stay there for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Take a big circle around that tank.
Hydro pneumatic tank has to be built.
We can replace it.
Okay, okay.
Hard hats.
Um, Kevin, a bigger picture, um, okay. The section here on our major goals for fiscal year 2017, 2018 for water treatment, I'm assuming I'm referring to the treatment plant.
Yeah.
And so I hear Jim talking about some things that are in the first paragraph here. Practically nothing on the backside. Are we going to, are all of the departments going to update this information for us so we can have an accurate picture of these priorities that we're
Yeah.
talking about now? Cause, cause it, it doesn't follow, it kind of makes this not worthless, but not worth looking at right now.
He, he already did an update and they're, they were going to be reviewed. Uh, we can look at them right now, but they're right on your screen if you want to look at them.
This is an older version.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, no, what I, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see a binder with up to date facts in it so that we can actually assess some priorities based on current needs and not stuff that, some of this has already been accomplished, some has been abandoned.
Good point.
And.
And that's kind of, the thought process of this was to set some of those, uh, uh, goals too. To figure out where we are going, where you want it to go.
Based on feedback that we give you guys. No, that's good.
Absolutely.
But yeah, if after this meeting today, we can sort of update our goals and priorities and then get that information back to us, that would really help us.
I, I felt the same way. You know, I realize a lot of these things have gotten pushed. They just keep getting pushed forward. I get that. So that, that would stay in there.
It's just a little confusing because then I'm wondering, gee, did I not know anything about that? Then I recognize things that.
Yep, that's what this, that's what this was for, was to kind of get goals, to get direction from the board. What's the priorities of each department, not only from their standpoint, but from your standpoint also. So you.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, what I'm saying though is.
Yeah, you'll get an update.
If Jim's discussing these items, I'd like to have known about them ahead of time so that I could ask appropriate questions. Him giving me stuff now that's not on here is new to me and.
Yep.
You know, I don't really.
We can do that. Well, we'll get you a new, new, it'll all be updated here after all of.
Cause I'm sure after we get an updated one, we're probably going to have more questions.
Yeah. I think this stuff was in here. It's just that you're, you're telling us the priorities now.
Yeah, and in different order.
Yeah, in a different order.
Process water. I think some of my, what I have updated though, um, because these components are sort of in limbo. I'm not quite sure how, they're not quite represented yet because there's no clear path.
Okay.
Could have them in there as a placeholder, but somewhere, but.
Well, and that's, that's what we'll have to maybe figure out where to put some of this stuff because we got to kind of like paint a picture. This is kind of this picture that says if we're able to do X, then this will be something that is Y. If we're not able to do that, then we got this and we got, so it is, it's kind of a limbo type thing. But we kind of. Lot of moving parts here, right? Right, a lot of moving parts.
I got a big monitor.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's why he's got the big monitor, yeah.
With that matrix that you see, standard matrix with the, the project, I think you're looking at. As long as those are listed in there with a cost estimate and a timeline, schedule, that's kind of really all you need. Then you kind of understand by hearing, listening to us define what they are, it'll make sense to you. So matrix can really just tilt you everything.
Mm-hmm.
Schedule, cost.
Well, I see other things in here. I don't know if they, you know, simple thing like, uh, schedule the purchase of an all terrain vehicle for the water treatment plant. Did you get it? Is that, is this old stuff?
No, no, we have.
You know, is this a high priority? Is it low?
And that, and I could speak on that, I guess Mark too, because we have both, uh, gone to the lake and also been to the treatment plant up to the ponds where, um, we could see that, uh, especially around the lake where they're having to clean out the homeless encampments. And they have just their big trucks that they bottom out or were actually damaged just going through there. And then going to the ponds, instead of taking a big truck would be able to just go, you know, up to the ponds in all terrain. And that was kind of something I was going to make a pitch for in this, in this budget.
Well, the, the lake has a Jeep. Maybe it, maybe it needs a trailer. If there is a four wheel drive Jeep and with a small, you know, utility trailer, you could probably get into tight spots and do some other work. I don't know.
Yeah, that might be a fix for, for that one.
As far as doing the Jeeps there.
And then the other about, um, the all terrain man lift for when you get deliveries. Could you speak a little bit about that?
Well, all terrain man lifts isn't for deliveries. It's for working on tanks.
It says to take deliveries of treatment chemicals and containers.
Forklift.
That's a forklift.
Oh, I'm sorry. All, all terrain man lift. I didn't say the last two words.
It's sort of a safety thing and convenience, but y'all, we have a lot of elevated surfaces. Tanks, lights, standards, different things. Safely getting access to elevated surfaces requires some, they specialize.
Okay.
Bill would certainly support that too. We actually rented those in the past. They need and certainly more regular media, but we can certainly do.
Can you share it between the two?
Exactly.
Yes.
Can I, can I ask another question in relationship to the major goals? As this is a forecast for budget, I'm wondering how some of these items, if it's appropriate for them to be in here, beings how they're ongoing tasks that don't require a dollar figure attached to them like, continue evaluation of turbidity removal options of the lake raw water, stuff like that. Are these things that are in here because they have a big effect on the budget or?
No.
So, so I'm just wondering why.
It's, it's been tradition on how the goal, the goals have been set more of a guideline to kind of tell the public what's, or the board what they, what they were doing. Uh, but it's, it, we could, we could totally change up that format.
I would love to see goals and aspirations of improvements, but if this is, uh, an outline for us to review as budget, it would be a whole lot straightforward, more straightforward and cleaner if we just had budget items in here review and not lofty goals.
You had my current version just a moment ago. I've rewritten those goals, long term goals in bullets. And they're all related to operations. Where staff goes and does these things, costs amount. So a budget is about, these are the major, did you, you'll see it in a second.
Sure.
What, you'll compare.
Major goals. Water treatment.
The top, very top section.
Major accomplishments, long-term goals?
Okay, so I took that paragraph and I really didn't lose the intent of the paragraph, but I turned it into these bullets, which is way easier to read. But all of this has to do with staff time, labor, they're operational things. Um, but of course this is treatment and some of those are capital.
Sure. No, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, yes.
Personal box.
These are, uh, uh, these are ongoing projects, uh, of things that you do at the water treatment plant. If, if this item needs to be put in here because it requires additional funding from what the expenses are running that thing are already, then I expect it to be in this budget forecast or proposal. But if it's not, but if, but if you're not saying, you know, for example, continuing evaluation of turbidity will require us to add X and so we need this money, then I could see it in here. But otherwise it just makes it more confusing for us to look at priorities of. Okay.
Yeah.
That was, that was.
Can you see your monitor?
There you go. It's gone.
See the three, all, I think all those three long-term goals have consequences on money if the standards, water quality standards change and the regional board standards change. And then all that's about aging equipment and costs and. Those may be more appropriate than what, to what you're saying, if it's on your screen, not.
I think I understand kind of what you're saying, Jim. It could lead to a project down the road or, you know, something that could.
My point is if there's a project, put it in the budget. If, if it's not, then, I mean.
Projects are in the goals at the end of this, this document here.
That's what I was just looking at.
Those are, these are projects, current, that affect our current budget. Money.
We can, we can, we can work with it to make it. I hear what you're saying.
That's the idea though, is to question all these goals, you know, and, and find out what they are.
No, these are all lofty goals and, and, you know, even starting from we want to provide the highest quality water. I get all that. I get all that and those are things we should all be striving for all the time in, in our daily operations. I guess what I'm saying is, is maybe we need to separate that out from the actual budget unless there's an additional monetary value that you can, that you can identify and give us a dollar value so we can prioritize it as.
Do we talk about those things? Are you looking at a budget in like an operations conversation or are you just saying, take them out of the budget and just put budget?
I, I'm saying if it's just a daily operation thing and we're just saying what we want to accomplish, then that shouldn't be in the budget so much as, uh, what should be in the budget, uh, planned purchase of an all terrain vehicle. That's appropriate because that costs additional money. That's not part of your daily operation. But just to continue to make sure we have good quality water is just a fluffy statement, which it's important. But there's no monetary value applied to it that we have to try and determine where to put it in the budget.
I think what he's talking about is smoke and mirrors. Other words, sometimes wording is put in and it's smoke and mirrors and later on you get to the dollar part, but we're concerned with dollars and cents. Our primary responsibilities of directors is the financial health of this district and that we're sending this money on something that needs to be spent.
Not to take away from what you put down, this is all appropriate and obviously that's what we all strive for. I'm just wondering if we could be a little more concise in what we actually add to the budget that we're supposed to review for additional dollars.
I, I just want to say something real quick. I think that once you guys do your whole strategic planning process, then you're going to have your goals and these bullet points are always going to meet those goals. And I think that what staff is trying to do here is because absent of that entire strategic business plan that you have, they want to remind you why you're spending this money.
Sure.
You know, we're coming to you. We need, you know, these forecasts directly support achieving these goals and that's it.
I mean, like the SCADA. Okay, the SCADA should be in there. That's going to be a cost expenditure. You got to justify that, but it costs money. That definitely should have been in there. I didn't see that there.
No, it's not. It's not.
So.
That's a little problem I have at the moment.
Maybe we could reformat a little bit and have those goals, uh, you know, in the front section or something like that. I, I totally could get it because this, this is a guiding document for our, our district, the budget. I mean, that's really what everybody looks at.
Right.
Okay, strategic plan, eh, you know, they'll, they might look at it, but this is what people will look at. And so I, I do get the linkages, you know, to, to what.
Those two go hand in hand, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe, maybe put it in a different section.
Where you want us to go.
We would love a commitment to replace SCADA within this next fiscal year.
Okay.
Get it in the budget.
You're gonna have to wordsmith it. You're gonna have to wordsmith it.
How much was that on there?
Okay, uh, just, we got one last slide for the long-term capital that we can get through.
Let me, you're going to read in the old budget, tanks F and G. One million dollars. We have no F and G plans. Where that came from, I don't know. F and G, you can get.
There you go, there you go.
The reason why I'm saying that is because I want that million dollars of C, D and E. Because C, D and E have problems.
Oh.
The roofs, the roof of all of those three tanks has, has some severe corrosion as well as lead paint. We have to use sandblasting and those tanks were deferred two years ago when the budget brought to eighteen happened. And I was, I was poised to put those out the bid. We have plans and specs, ready to go. But since then, we've decided, well, staff has decided and hopefully you'll agree, that because we're sandblasting C, D and E roofs and replacing metal, fighting corrosion, and the rest of the tanks have lead base, lead base paint. So while you're sandblasting the roofs, we, we are recommending that you repaint C, D and E completely. Not just piecemeal, not just the roofs, but go ahead and get, just get rid of all the lead base paint now as part of this project. That million dollars from F and, Phantom F and G can go into some real tanks. And you've seen, you've probably seen C, D and E. E's on Nunley. D, I, C is working Mercedes.
C is on Armstrong Place just above CNH Church, vacuuming behind Trader Park.
Oh, yeah.
There's my home park in there.
You can see it sort of.
Those aren't lead base paint on the interiors, are they?
No, the exterior. And the tanks. They were, that was resolved, but, um, in 2003, these tanks were recoded, so they're, the roofs are shot already. And the, the tank sides have some, some pitting going on, not severe, but it just seems like it's prudent just to do it. It's a one project, get it done with.
The last time that they were, uh, recoded, was the entire tank done or just partial?
Entire.
Entire tank.
But they were, the exteriors were simply covered over.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They avoided the lead base problem in 2003 by just covering it.
And you could do that again.
Staff, once you're sandblasting the roofs, Bill's logic, Jim, why would you?
Yeah, do the.
Why would you save it? You're already there.
Yep.
You're, you're already dealing with OSHA. You're already sandblasting. Just get on with it. Hopefully you buy into that.
Yeah.
I'll put it in the budget.
Well, a lot of times, especially exterior of tanks, it's been my experience, what you do to one part of the tank, you do to the other because oftentimes you can create like a thermal incline by not, but, uh, from the water in the tank, a different quality or a different, you know, different things going on because you didn't coat the whole thing at the same time.
Okay.
Different thicknesses or something.
Yeah, yeah, just, I've seen it happen in Vallejo, so we learned that way. We learned because we had graffiti around our tanks and we would just paint over the graffiti year after year. And pretty soon we had two different thermoclines in the tank.
The other thing I'd like to include, so we've used Harper and Associates engineers in the past, um, very, very successfully. They have a long history of doing work for us. They did the condition assessment on all these tanks. They wrote the plans and specs. They did the condition assessment on all these tanks, they wrote the plans and specs for the, before we stopped doing it. So Harper and Associates is already.
So you're just completing the work.
Was under contract to do these tanks for us, so I would, I would want to recommend just calling Harper, doing a new, brand-new agreement, and having them finish updating plans and specs, which would be, um, expeditious to get this project moving quickly. Uh, sorry, it's sole sourcing.
What's the.
Well, that's it.
It's well justified.
Yeah, that's well justified, sole source, because they've already, they were ready to do the project.
Well, those, those are the kinds of things I'd like to see in the budget, so that we can actually take a look at them and, and do a little research ahead of time, so that when you bring it to us later on down the road as an agenda item, we've already done our research on it, and we can just load on it, or send you back to the drawing board.
Okay.
What's the value of those projects? Do you know the cost?
I think that's a million.
Million?
Three hundred thousand per tank. Yeah. Maybe, you know, we'll get, we're going to get a package due.
Okay.
It could be four hundred thousand. We won't know until we bid. Well, of course, Harper will give us an engineer's estimate, once we update specs.
Well, unless we change our policies and procedures, we're going to have to get additional bids, even though you'd like to go with one, because.
For the engineering services? Or the.
For any expenditure that's, that's of that dollar value, does that not have to go out to bid?
No, it will go out to bid, for construction.
You can sole source anything, truly, as long as you have justification behind it, and the board can basically do anything, unless there's federal funds involved that require you to, uh, to, to bid it out, the board has the opportunity to sole source anything. You guys are the final, you guys are the final say.
Okay.
I'm suggesting the engineering is sole source.
So then, bring us supportive data to convince us that that's how we want to do it, you know, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, when we get to that point, the more information you can give us to justify why you want to use one particular organization, that helps us to try, because we don't know.
The usual, usual way is, if I'm sole sourcing, I have to provide a sole source, um, agenda item for you guys, so I have to justify that, sole source.
Fair enough.
Because you're hiring them under a contract. If I can't, if I can't convince you through that board memo, then, then you'll instruct me to take, it's our, all the documents they, um, generated are our documents. I can use them, send them out to other consultants if I have to.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. So, let's kind of re, recap here. There's a lot of money that's being requested. And I think we, as a district, need to figure out what's the best, not only highest priority on some of these things, but the best way to fund some of these things. I think if we're looking for, we're in critical need of high-priority projects, I believe the best way to fund a lot of these is through debt, but that's a big obligation that this board is going to, you know, take under, under consideration. I'm going to kind of work back, uh, to the, um, to the budget now. So, I'm just going to highlight what we had as originally kind of in the, in the draft budget. In the draft budget, or, this is what our current year estimations are, actually. We have a cash increase of about three hundred thousand dollars. That's about where we're estimating our cash increase this next, this current fiscal year, so sixteen to seventeen. We budgeted two-point-eight million-dollar increase in cash, and the reason why is because we expected to get reimbursed on some of those, on those, uh, the, uh, design of the, uh, process water recycle project. We assumed that we would have gotten that, uh, application through this last budget year. Didn't happen, so we have a cash variance of about one-point-nine million dollars. The shortfall, we had a shortfall of about four hundred thousand dollars in, in revenue. We, we assumed when our rates went out, that we were going to have about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar reserve at the end of the year, increase in reserve, um, and because of the consumption revenue budget versus actual, we had a, a four, four hundred thousand dollar revenue shortfall. And, again, debt proceeds, we estimated to be two hundred thousand, two million dollars, and they turned out to be nothing. So for current year, operational expenditures are actually a little bit down this, this current year, uh, four-point-eight million dollars. I mean, we're going to get some relief, because, uh, it's going to take a while to get a general manager on board, that's kind of a savings there. We've done a pretty good job of keeping our, our expenditures down on, on, um, personnel, and, so, right now, we estimate about a four, eight, four-point-eight million-dollar operation, about a million-dollar in pipeline. We're, we're boosting that up, we're going to get that pipeline going, um, but remember, that's a fifty-fifty project, too, with, with the PFD. Uh, we probably won't get all of that in this year, but we're, we're putting in a pretty, uh, pretty nice little pipeline budget. Capital improvement, we only have two-point-six-five million of there. I've heard more than that already, so, so that's something that we're going to have to boost up, to look at, to, to try to really figure out, prioritize that from board input, and how we want to really prioritize what we're going forward with, and debt service at a million dollars. Revenue, water sales, eight-point-three-five million. This one's a little bit a tough one, because if you remember, when we put in the Prop 218, we had a three-year increase. One of the increase, we had, well, we had the original increase, then we had the second year increase, and then we had the third year increase with a big increase on the debt service charge. But, right now, we're not going to be absorbing that debt service charge, so, but I do believe there's a need for that revenue. I believe that we have justifiable means to push that revenue from that debt service charge to that reserve charge, to maybe take care of some of these capital projects that we are now seeing. We have a dam spillway investigation, we don't have no idea how much that's going to be. We're still working on getting a MPDS study done. We have tanks that are, obviously, need to be rehabbed. Um, we have the FEMA grant, that's a million dollars, that's outstanding there. So we have a lot of stuff that's coming up, that I do believe there's justification there, but it's going to take the board to, to, to buy into that also. So I think there's something there to think about.
I've, I've been thinking about that, too, that increase coming up, Kevin, and, you know, obviously, we're not going to have a project ready to go next year, you know, January first, okay? But, would it be possible for us to take that fee increase and maybe halve it for the first year? In other words, give, give the ratepayers a break? And, and as we go along here, we're going to find out, you know, what, what a project's going to be, if there's going to be a project.
Right.
Somehow drop that down, I hear what you're saying, we've got lots of projects, I'm seeing. Bring it down, uh, you, you know, the ratepayers will be happy about that, I'm sure, I'm thinking they would be.
Hopefully.
But then we'd, we'd be able to fund some of these, but then, of course, if we had a, a, a big project come up, and it was still fifteen or sixteen million, then, then we're facing it again, so.
Correct.
To bring it back up, but.
No, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm done, I'm just throwing that out.
I think that, that's one of the problems we got into before, was we saw the writing on the wall, we didn't do anything about it until after the fact, and that made people a lot more unhappy, because they're like, you know about this for a long time, why did you wait as long as you did? And I think if we, if we don't follow through at that rate increase, and put that money in the right place, and use it for these projects, then we're doing ourselves a big disservice, and ultimately, the customers, and we're right back where we were before, to where then we have to raise the rates after the fact to justify it, because we did have the expense, and they're going to say, well, why didn't you plan for it ahead? And I think that's what we're doing now, is, is saying, we know it's coming up, let's put that money in reserve for those needed expenses, and not surprise anybody, in my opinion.
I think, I think the, um, that was put in there as a placeholder for the recycle project, and that's what the money was for, so I think we should wait until we're closer to the, the January eighteenth rate increase deadline, before we decide what's going to go on. And I don't think it should be charged to the customers until we actually have a debt that we're paying on. That's how I've always felt about it, but now I'm listening to all these, um, improvements and projects, and that we don't have reserves for, and then I'm thinking, maybe it might be a good idea, but I'm still saying, for this, we, we made a commitment to the ratepayers that this money was for the recycle project.
Did we make that commitment, actually?
It was, it was earmarked as debt service for that project.
For that project, okay.
But, but what, it's, the, the Prop 218 stated rates, end rates. So there is, there is, you have the flexibility in there to, to change the components of that rate. If you were to decrease the rate, or delay the, the, uh, rate increase, you wouldn't have to go back out for Prop 218 to bring it up to what you already have.
Right, you're delaying it.
So there is, there is that.
You have that option.
Appearance, you can delay it. The reason why I'm bringing it up is because it is a budget item, so you're budgeting that rate increase into the, into the current year budget.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where a, a board needs to figure out kind of what they're, what they feel is the appropriate thing, um, to, to, to go forward. Right now, the current reserve charge, um, is, we, well, we had it at seven hundred thousand, what we were hoping to, to, to come in at, but based on our current consumption revenue, that we, we, based on when we set these rates, that we're actually decreasing those consumption revenues down. So, that's actually eating into some of our consumption charge that we were estimating on getting, so we're actually kind of running a deficit on that, about three hundred thousand every year now. So what we estimated we were going to reserve is now down three hundred thousand dollars, less than that portion of it. So, there is, there's some ebbs and flows in there that I think that we kind of need to look at, and maybe I can bring some, some examples to you guys to show you what we're looking at, and then I can bring what, what we're looking at from a capital side, now that we have kind of flowed out what we're, what we're looking at, to give you an estimate of where that would leave us if we were to pay for it, debt service, all of it, cut out some here, here, and here, and give us some of those estimates that way.
I'd like to comment on this. My, my take on it is that you don't, you don't increase the rates. Actually, you ought to decrease them a little bit, for we can increase consumption. We have people that are not using water, because they can't afford it. And the district can tighten its bill, as it's been doing, and we can be very prudal and build up our reserves. I, I don't think we need the rate increase. Politically, it'd be like putting a knife to your director's throats, because there are people out there that are still waiting for us to either reduce it or get rid of it, and we can get along without it. The, lowering the rates, which is sort of radical to most people would think, but the rates got raised so much that people stopped using water. And if we can sell them on the idea that they can use it conservatively, and we have two years of supply of water in our reservoirs, and it's for sale, it's not going to do us any good sitting in the reservoir. And if I'm right, it's like you'll increase the rate, the consumption, to make up for the loss of the higher rates. Now, as far as the things we talked about, all sorts of projects, they don't want them on the wish list, but I think what has to be done is they have to be prioritaries. Other words, which is the most important one to the operation of the district? Which are things we absolutely have to have on this list of wish lists? So, I'm not in favor of raising the rates at all, I'd rather we reduced them, if you wanted to reduce them to the point where you could go back to it. When we went up to Cottonwood, Doug and I, and visited up there, these people re, like we were, where'd you guys come from? How did you ever turn down a 218 price increase? What did you possibly do? And then they told us that the whole valley was watching this district, because what had happened here? And that they had this three-million-dollar project, and they're a very small district, and they were trying to figure out how to finance it and everything else. And they said, the first thing we did after we saw your example, is we went out and talked to our people, our customers, all around town, it's not a very big town, and they had a sewage plant and a water plant, and they were wanting to revise both of them, and they wanted to get out of their MPDES permit. The Pace Engineering, which was their engineering firm, that's the first time I heard of them when I went up there, worked with them to find funds, to fund it. They went around their community, they had community people come in and say, this is why we need to do this. They educated their community thoroughly to why they needed this three million dollars. So instead of raising the overall water rate, they went back to them and said, we want us, build a special fund to do this project. We want to borrow the money for twenty years, the fund will last, it'll cost you so much per household per month. And they sold them on it, they had like ninety percent backing them, they did not raise the water rates, they raised this fund, extra fund. These, the people we met there were excited, because they got all the community support, they were almost finished with the project then, and I, both Doug and I, coming home, were talking about, if we could only have been doing this at PID, if we had done the kind of education that was done, if we hadn't sat up on the podium and acted like we had all the answers, and that we were doing the, what was in the best interest of the district, and we didn't care what our ratepayers cared about this, in spite of them coming up in the microphone and talking, and talking, and talking. I, I just don't want us to go back to where we were. I don't even want us to look like it. You've got a real good board now, they're, they're asking the hard questions, we've got the staff all talking, like I've never seen you guys talk before, you're relaxed, you're willing to put forth any of your ideas, your programs, and so forth. And Kevin's done a nice job moderating this, but it comes down to this rate thing, that's like playing with a stick of dynamite, and it's just sitting there fluffing a little bit, because the community's watching us. And you can go out and talk to your friends in the community, that'd be a good idea. If you've got projects, and you say, you want to boost something, go out and talk to the customers, and see if they'll support it. And if we come back in with a budget where we want to do a lot of projects, then the next thing we have to do right away is boost it to the public. We have to say why we need the money and justify it. And we have to do this over and over again. It cannot go back to where it was. And this, politically, Kevin, if you, the board will decide, but to me, we'd lower rates just a little bit, and hope that the consumption goes up to make up for the difference. And if we have to have an increase, we're going to have to sell it to the whole community, piece by piece. Thank you.
So, if we're going to lower the rates to offset the increase that we haven't applied yet, aren't we going in the hole?
No, because they'll, they'll use more water. You didn't listen to Kevin when he said the water use went down when the rate increase went in. It did. And every time we've raised the rates too much, since I've been on the board, the consumption goes down.
But the water rates went down, the water consumption went down, because all of the good citizens listened to the state who said, you must conserve, and they complied.
They're still conservative.
I think that's why the water rates went down. I don't think they went down because it cost more.
They were going down before the.
Yeah, it actually, there is a two-way street here.
But, but the only point I'd like to make, Bill, is, is this, and I, and I think this is true, I could be wrong, but, um, if, if we have an organization here to run properly, to provide good quality water to all of our customers, and in order to sustain that effort, we have to take care of the infrastructure, that's why we're here today to look ahead, and not, and be proactive instead of reactive.
I, I agree with you.
And what, what's happening is, is that if, if we're not proactive, we will be reactive, and then we're going to get the public saying, you should have known about this, and you should have done something about it in advance, and that's, I think, what we're trying to do here today, is to do these things in advance.
No, I, I think this was an excellent meeting, and it's got us on our. No, I think this was an excellent meeting, and it's got us on our way, but I think we have to live in a world of reality, and the world of reality is that we're not a private business. The people that own this are our customers, and they have the say in whether we serve here or not, and they're the ones that have the long-term say on how we're doing as a district. And as soon as we lose that, we're in trouble. And the districts that watched us go through the 218 thing and the recall thing, all were watching to see that it didn't happen in their districts, so they changed some of their policies, and they went out and sold things. I'm not saying we have meetings like George had. I don't want any more of those meetings. I mean, we should have meetings where, if we can get Niels to talk like he did today, talk about a subject on, because he's passionate about what's going on here. We don't have to worry about Jim and Keith, we just have to keep them within a time limit, but they're both passionate with what they do. You know, and Bill and Jim in their own ways.
Yes, we are.
So you guys could be, and Kevin too, you can represent the district and have, if this is things that you think we absolutely have to have, to set the priority, then you guys have the job of helping to sell the community on it. If you want to keep part of the water rate increase in, boy, you better have good, solid reasons to sell to the community. Otherwise, we're gonna just fall back into where we get was before and won't be in worse shape. So this is just politics, and whether we like it or not, the positions we hold as directors were in the political arena. And you, you know, now, because you had the one guy get up and threaten to recall you, and I had to tell him to sit down, and I didn't catch what, part of what the board was doing, trying to get him to sit down and be quiet. And I know that guy, he was part of the recall committee, and I'm going, "Oh, no, we've gotta diffuse him. We can't have this." And this is what I'm talking about. You're gonna have to sell these things, not just on us up here, you've got to sell them to the community. Why you need these pieces of machinery, everything else, why you need the rate. Yes, Mark, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Bill, you know what? I think we all agree with you.
Yeah, with communication.
We do. It's not that we, it's just that, you know, we don't want to get into a point to where, I hear what Cliff's saying too, crisis management, you don't want to get to the point where something at the treatment plant breaks down, and then you have to go to the ratepayers and say, "Gee, we got this broken piece of equipment, you know, gee, I don't know why it happened, but we did know it was coming, but we didn't do anything about it, and now we have to raise our rates." So that's the kind of thing we want to avoid. We want to be, we want to be ahead of these things, and that's what all these projects are all about, and I totally understand, it sounds like, you know, more than we can handle. I mean, it's always gonna be that way.
Yes, always moving forward.
I have a question as a community member who pays the water bill, and I also have a statement, if you don't mind, as an employee, because I think this board right here, and I've mentioned it before, and both of us, we're hopeful, I think as a staff, we're hopeful, we've got a new board that I think really wants to move the district forward. I hear that, and I want to believe it, and I do believe it, and I think that we have a really good opportunity to start right here, because you do. You said, "Bill, you can't chut me and Keith up." You know, we're passionate about what we do, everybody here, this is really important to us, it just isn't, isn't just a job. And we have an opportunity to be led by Kevin right now, to work with Kevin and develop a plan, a strategic plan, and ideas and thoughts, and bring, put this all together as a staff, and present this to you and say, "Hey, this is what we're thinking, this is what we do, and this is what we need to do," not just in a budget, but in an operation kind of plan, "Man, this is the goal that we'd like to achieve, what do you think?" That's my employee side. On a water bill payer side, I don't want to pay more than I have to, but I know I have to pay something, because I know what it takes as an employee to get water down here, treat it, and keep it going and all that. So I know that I have to pay for that. If what I'm hearing is correct, if I stated right, we still have to talk to the water board about what we're gonna do about the recycled water, right? But that's what the increase was based off of. It's earmarked, if that's the right term for that, for this project. There's no decision on that project yet, although I'm thinking that it's gonna be a few months or something, within a few months, that we're gonna hear something from the water board, right? So wouldn't we wait until then and just not try to make any decision based on that yet, until we know exactly where they stand with what we need to do or not going to have to make? So it seems reasonable to me, I just wanted to throw that out there, so.
There's, the reason why it's being brought up now is just like all these other projects, we gotta be out in front of this. We can't wait till November and say, "Well, what are we gonna do? It's coming, it's coming, what are we gonna do?" We gotta be out in front of this at this point. I don't believe, I don't live in your guys' political environment, okay? I work for you guys, you guys work for the public, okay? And I can tell you right now, if we bring, if there's dissent within this board about something like this, it's going to create a nightmare for us. It will. The political environment that oversaw that whole Prop 218 and the dissension within the board, it was, obviously, it was stressful on this board, it was extremely stressful on this organization, extremely stressful. So that's why we want to get this out now, we want this to be discussed now, we want these projects to be sold not by us, we believe in these projects. You heard the passion, just like Bill said, you heard the passion, we want the passion from you guys too, you know? We want you guys to be able to sell this to your constituents that voted for you. That's where we want this. And if you can't sell that to your constituents, then we don't want it. We don't want it, because we don't want that coming back on us. So I think it's a two-way street here, and that's why we're discussing this at this point. If you can't support it, then we can't support it.
You can't, you can't run any business without proper revenue, and you do nobody a service if you do it so cheaply or so shoddily that you can't guarantee to your customers that you're gonna be around. So you have to do it correctly. Your, sustaining your business is the most important thing, because if we can't maintain this organization properly, we can't guarantee that we can give our customers the quality product that they're paying for. And we can't collect money in excess of what we need for a rainy day without a good reason for it. We also can't turn around at the last minute and say, "Oh yeah, well, we screwed up, and so we need more, please." And then they say, "Well, why didn't you tell me before?" And I say, "Well, you know, we didn't do our due diligence, or we were afraid to ask." So we can't be afraid to do the right thing. Prop 218 ties our hands, and it says, "You can't collect anything in excess of what you need to properly run this." What I hear is, and that's why I said, "Put it in the budget," so that I can tell people when I talk to them, "It's right here. This is a budgeted item, this is how much it's gonna cost." And we had to know that so that we knew whether or not we had to raise rates and give you the advance warning that you need, so we don't surprise you with a rate increase for something you weren't expecting. So I think it's absolutely appropriate that we don't just arbitrarily give money away to make people feel happy short-term, just so we can make a mad six months or a year down the road. That makes no sense at all. They know that law prohibits us from making a profit. They also know that if we don't buy a leak detector, when they have a leak, we're not gonna find it, they're gonna pay more money, because we had to wait till we could afford to hire somebody to do that. Or because we can't afford to have the right personnel to fix a leak as fast, so you had to go a little bit longer. Or your water tastes terrible, yes, because, you know, we didn't budget the money to make the water treatment plant the best that it could be. This all makes sense to me, and as long as it's explained, I'm a customer, I get it, you know? I don't want to drink water that has excessive chlorine in it, or tastes like mildew or anything else. I get that, and I think that the customer does too, and as long as we're honest with them, and don't, you know, throw the money away, we spend it wisely, it is what it is. We gotta charge what we need to charge in order to continue to give this level of service, it's that simple.
I agree. So I know we're kind of running out of time here, let me go back. I just want to make one more point there on that too, is if you remember this slide right here, we've already done that. We've already done, we've already kind of said, "We don't want to raise rates, we don't want to raise rates." We know it's coming!
Yeah, yeah, look where it got us.
We've already done it. Don't repeat history.
But I'm, again, I'm gonna go back to that point of, this was earmarked for recycle project, it's a placeholder, and until we incur the debt, I don't think we should raise a rate. Now, I'm not saying that we may have to incur a different debt-
Correct.
-because of the spillway situation or something else, but...
And that's another option that you can go about, is you can be very transparent with it, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna raise this rate, but you can inform or prop 218 a special rate for those specific projects. I mean, it's another incurred cost, it's definitely transparent to the customer, you know, it does create a little bit of political heartburn, you know? But again, you're the ones that are fiscally responsible for this district, you're the ones that incur the wrath of the public, we do too, but it's, those are the decisions you guys make, and we, whatever, we want you to be able to support those decisions.
And I'm also, you know, I'm not for recycle, I see that in different businesses, organizations, or whatever I've been involved in before, where they wait until the roof is leaking to ask, you know, "Well, we need some money for the roof." You know, that's, I'm not a proponent of that. So I do want to see those reserves, but I, it's a fine line to walk between, you know, what-
The transparency issue.
Yeah, yeah, what's really needed, what's a top priority, but I'm still, I still want to see those reserves built up so we have money, so we have a cushion, so if something-
Absolutely.
Or we can say, "Okay, this FEMA, so we've got $1 million in reserves we can put, so we don't have to incur debt," or, because pretty soon, we're gonna have, if we wanted to do, if we wanted to fund the projects, we all have, you know, pet projects, or say, "Oh yeah, that's a priority," or you may feel a different one is a priority, we could easily all of a sudden have a debt ratio derivative that's not favorable, so we don't want to go there. So it's just a balancing act to serve-
Correct.
Yeah, to serve the public, serve our employees, and, you know, get things done and be transparent.
Kevin, can you answer a question for me? When we need a rate increase because of expenditures for items that we have to take care of, according to Prop 218, do we have to, I mean, when we got that, when we got the rate increase passed, and we said, "This is what it's for," is that a commitment to, "This is what it's for"? I didn't-
That's why, that's why it's such a quandary.
It's not legal, it's only political.
Because you have cushion in there, you have cushion in there.
So by making it, by telling everybody over and over and over, "This is why we did it,"
Recycle project.
We're shooting ourselves in the foot.
Yeah.
Because we have expenses, they may have been the recycle plant, other things come along, our expenses are our expenses, and as long as they are legitimate expenses, and that's what it takes to run this organization, then we need to explain it, but we don't need to be apologetic, it's your water we're taking care of.
Right, and that's the quandary that you guys are kind of in.
It's not a quandary for me.
And I want to make the point that at least four of your items were in the recycle water project, okay?
True, that's good.
From the plant. So those projects that you highlighted, Jim, were in that project that got voted in 218, okay? So with my line of thinking, that's what I was trying to get at, is that we've got projects that we were going to do in the recycle water project, okay? And they're still on the board here, okay?
That's a very good point.
So, so my, and I didn't, you know, I like what you said, Jim, we don't have to do anything right now, I'm not advocating we do it today or tomorrow, or we wait, but we could, we could step that increase, you know, make it more palatable to the ratepayers. To me, I'm a ratepayer too, right? So, but still move forward with those projects as part of that recycle water project, because we need them. Because you say those are your priority projects, and I agree, we've been out there, we know. I mean, at least we think we know. So that's all I was trying to get at, I didn't mean to start a whole thing-
Well, that's a good point, that's a very good point.
No, this is what the discussion should be, that's exactly right. And that's a very good point, too, is that you could step them in with the knowledge that these were actually part of that process. But it's about, and it all comes back to is communicating this to our customer base. Here it comes, and this was one of the things that came out of that conference I went to is value, value. What are you getting to, what value are you getting for your water rates? And this is where you get it, you expose yourself. Hey, your value is coming in X, Y, and Z, and that's what you're going to be paying for when this rate increase comes up. But it's that communication, it's the buy-in, it's that buy-in from everybody within the community.
I, as a board member, is only too well aware that the project had all these things put in it, that it was covering everything from demolition of the old water treatment plant, or circle, whatever you want to call it, that we talked about for years of demoing it. All these things were put into that water retreatment thing. The people that were in the recall committee, it was strange, they defeated 218, and Doug and I somehow managed to be in the first recall meeting, and we excused ourselves and left and never came back. But the thing they discussed among themselves is that they could get, they could defeat the next 218. They felt that they could do that, but they also knew they had put this district in too bad a financial shape to proceed ahead. So they decided not to defeat the 218, they'd take all their energies and everything and put it in the recall movement to recall the board of directors, that they did, and to remove the manager, and that happened. Now, that hasn't gone away. They're still sitting on the fence and watching you, to see what you're gonna do with that price increase. They're very much aware that the next one's a whopper compared to the two previous ones. So I don't, this is politics in the rawest form, and you've got to somehow communicate to the community that if you're gonna keep that price increase going, even a portion of it, you have to sell them on it, you have to do better. When George had his meetings, what he didn't realize, and what I tried to explain to him and the board at the time, that most of the people that came to his meetings, which was about 12 or 14 people there, at least half of them, to three-quarters, were the recall committee. And they came back consistently to listen to what he had to say, and decided that they had to work harder on the recall. It was almost like he threw wood on the fire, he didn't know he was doing it. The board members patted him on the back, and they patted each other on the back and said, "They're gonna be all right, all these people out there don't know what they're talking about." So I'm trying desperately to get you guys to understand what you're playing with, and you can do it differently, you don't have to have this price increase right now, you could do a little bit of it if you think that'll fly, I don't know, but it doesn't work. It's just like, unusually, I called up South Feather when we were putting regulations in here to cut water uses, rules and stuff, I said, "Do you guys have any rules like this over at South Feather?" The guy laughed at me on the phone, says, "We're not gonna put anything like that in." And when the state came around and wanted their water cut back, I said, "What are you gonna do about that?" They did nothing. And Dustin, I asked him one day, I said, "Well, did the state ever find South Feather?" And they stopped sending the nasty notes and walked away. And so, different leadership, different things. We don't need the water rate or the use regulations that we have on the books for conservation, we need to handle it different. South Feather, because of their powerhouses, actually cut rates to their district a couple of years ago, their consumption has stayed up, and their income's in. We don't have powerhouses, and all that would investigate with George about powerhouses, putting one outside here, there was no place that they've passed any return on investment to do that. We put one powerhouse, I don't know if it's still running or not, underneath the dam- We put one powerhouse, I don't know if it's still running or not, underneath the dam. I don't know if that's running or not. It is? Yeah, okay, so we've got one powerhouse in the district. But I'm trying to back you up, and I'm trying to say to the staff, priorities, what you need that absolutely has to be gotten to keep this district running well, and to keep us from having tanks rust out on us and all the rest of it that you've talked about today, and the lines that need to be done and replaced and so forth. Please sharpen the pencil, go over it really tight, because I, without that price increase, we're not going to have money to go out and do a lot of what you want to be doing. So, that's it.
Thank you. I agree with that, Bill, what you just said, the last part there. First part, I think we've got to quit using the prior board, George, the recall, and all of those things that are yesterday. We need to move forward, because we don't, we don't. You're the only one here from the old board, and we don't have the old board. We have new people-
No, I already said I'm really happy with what the new board is doing and stuff, but I don't want to fall into the trap that the old board-
We're not going to. We're not going to. We're doing our due diligence, we're trying to do what's best for PID, for the employees, for the staff, and for our customers. I think, I think that goes without saying.
I, you know, my blood pressure's gone down probably five points since you guys got a meeting together on the board.
Good, let's keep it down.
Yeah, so let's keep it down.
This meeting is a perfect example of what we're talking about right there. This is a great place to start with exactly what you're talking about, Bill. All of you are.
It is. No, and I love your history. I mean, you've got knowledge that, because you've been here so many years, you've got knowledge. You can fill in blanks that we have.
Well, let's put it this way. I can't bitch about the gate anymore, because Kevin's got the money. I ain't the damn thing. So, I'm just curious what color you're going to do. Are you going to do a portrae style, you know, orange and yellow with a big eye?
A pink.
Surprise him, surprise him, Kevin.
And if you're watching, customers know we're not charging you extra for the color change.
We're going to try to get some diagonal striking in it.
You guys do whatever you think you should do.
Orange and white.
If it's black, I don't care. Paint it. Those are awesome. Those are way-
I have a question. I might be changing the subject, but when you went back to that very, that overview and how much you projected and stuff, I had a bad feeling about water sales, the projected water sales. The revenue.
Yeah.
There was, it's in several of them, but it was on that, I think it was on that slide too, on the first one, you were giving the overview, it was blue or whatever, but you had a-
Eight point three-five?
Yeah, you had, water sales, okay. Yeah, so, our, in our packets, we have as actual, but I think it's not probably-
We're missing a month.
Yeah, you're missing two months.
Two months.
Two months. So, could you, to the best of your knowledge, what the actual water sales would be?
Right now, so, actual water sales right now are six point three-three, so we still need an additional month on that. Let me hold on one sec.
Because somewhere, I remember you mentioning you were going to go on eighty percent of 2013.
Twenty fourteen, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said 2013.
I think it's fourteen.
Okay, maybe that's better, I don't know. I just did it 2013, because that's what I remembered you saying.
So, on my best of my ability, I'd say we're going to end up at seven point one million. Seven point two. I'll just say seven point two.
Seven point two for FYE 2017?
Yeah.
Okay.
Page twenty-eight.
And I'm on twenty-four as well.
Can I ask a question, or are you done there, Ann?
So, I'm, okay, so, seven point two, so going back to, you estimated water sales for-
Eight point three, but that also included that big jump for six months, which I just did a quick, quick and dirty, and if we, if we did not do that increase, our budgeted estimate would be seven point six.
Okay, okay, then I feel more comfortable with that, because I'm pretty sure it's going to be very similar to this year, next year.
So, I even dropped the consumption down a little bit. There is a component in that rate increase that does have a service charge increase from nineteen to twenty dollars. So, there is a, there is an increase in there that was an operational increase.
Okay.
Not, so that, so the other side will still be-
The usage side.
The debt service, the debt service side. The usage side is still, and that stayed flat. The consumption quantity charge.
Okay.
So, I'll show you that real quick.
Okay, all right.
So, in that rate increase, it's kind of hard to see, but right here, it goes from nineteen dollars on the service charge to twenty.
Yeah.
But the big jump is from nine dollars and sixteen cents to seventeen dollars and seventeen cents.
So, you just showed the one dollar, and, well, you could do it just using the one dollar and not the other.
That's what I just did to see kind of what the loss would be associated with not putting that rate increase in there.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair, I think we should go for that until we-
Until we make a decision.
Until we make a decision.
And then I can definitely do that. And then, like I said, we're not going to rush this out, so there's going to be multiple iterations that we can show to present what that would look like on a, on a financial standpoint, and if you look.
And it may be that we want to, in the coming days, do an outreach to the community about this workshop, about what we're doing, maybe to the newspaper, an article, one of us could give an interview or something, or you probably. You know, that's, that, you know, says what we're doing, the direction we're heading, or that what we're trying to do, and we have many balls in the air, not just the recycle project, but this spillway thing may turn out to be the number-one priority for this budget.
Absolutely.
So-
I'll calm down after a while.
Yeah, I can, we can definitely make an outreach to the-
You know, so that public knows, different ways, so the public knows what's going on.
Right, yep.
Yeah.
And that the board just spent.
Yeah, we even talked about news releases at the community relations committee meeting yesterday.
Yeah, but they better have a picture and interview.
Sure.
I wanted to bring up something on page two on your district overview.
Yeah.
Down in the very next and the last paragraph, I want to read this. Maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but it, but it kind of sounds like what Bill was talking about we shouldn't do. "The activities of enterprise funds closely resemble those of ongoing businesses in which the purpose is to conserve and add to reserves while meeting operating expenses for current revenues." So, it kind of makes it sound like we're stealing money from people.
Piling money away?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not our, our mission is not to add to our reserves. Our mission is to maintain adequate reserves to take care of our liabilities.
Yeah, maintain.
So, I think maybe we should reword that, because it does kind of make it sound like we're, you know, saving for a rainy day without anything in mind.
Yeah, to maintain-
Totally open to that.
Okay.
One thing I came across the other day, it was a write-up about different key words and something, and people don't like the word-
Show.
No.
Dan's not here.
To make things more efficient. If you're trying to sell something to somebody, you better leave that word out of it or the idea behind it, because people want to have things that make them feel better. They don't really care how efficient it is, and so, you leave that word out, or you leave out the sentences that he was just talking about. That's really talking about efficiency of the district, get the money, and it's a no. You don't gain anything from it with the public.
What is truly trying to state is that we're different from other governmental agencies, that we actually, an enterprise fund is a fund, or an enterprise business is a business that earns, it pays for its operational by seventy percent of what it earns, what it brings in. So, like, a school district is not an enterprise fund, because they get all their monies from the state, you know? Even cities aren't, because it's all tax revenues and stuff like that. We actually charge a fee, and we pay our expenses with those fees. So, like, an enterprise would be us in, like, a rec. district, maybe a cemetery district too, probably might be. I don't know what kind of fees they get from the state.
I don't think you talk about efficiencies.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking, but that's what that was kind of trying to state, is who we are. But I like Cliff's idea of where the reserves do come. And I'm going to kind of throw this out there. Let me get through my slide here, and then, we're getting late into the day. We've kind of walked through this, is the summary of where we're at. It's pretty self-explanatory of where the categories are and how they're stated, but, you know, we're estimating that we're going to have, well, actually, that's not even the right one, because it's LinkedIn, because I changed that number. So, it's actually, what we estimated was more in here.
Can you bump that up to a hundred percent or sixty, so we can read it?
I can bump this up.
There we go.
That's better.
So, our water sales, which are the main factor, we had at eight point three-five million. That's going to, if, however we fluctuate that rate increase, that number will change. And even with that rate increase and that change, I had debt proceeds coming in at a million dollars, which was going to be five hundred thousand for the B reservoir, and then, I think I had five hundred thousand in there for the process water recycle project, that we thought we were going to kind of recoup on that. It's a conservative estimate, but even with that, at the end of the day, we're still only reserving six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars this year. That includes that rate increase.
Yeah.
So, if, in a lot of this in here, the operations, you just can't cut a lot out of there. There's just not a lot of meat to it, you know? The pipeline is, it is what it is. It's the same thing. Operations, pipeline works together. Debt service, you have no choice on.
That's right.
PFD, that is two hundred thousand that we're actually, we're actually recouping some of that. That's actually going back into our coffers. So, we're spending two hundred thousand, and we're actually getting some of that back up in here into the other income, because we're spending it on our pipeline projects. So, there's not a lot of wiggle room in here. Your basic, your wiggle room is water sales and capital. That's it. That's really the meats of the, of the, and that's why we spent so much time on the capital. That's why, that's why we wanted to really hit you hard with the capital and not get into the minutia of the, of the operational stuff, because there's just not a lot to cut out there. You know, you can cut out fifty thousand dollars, and it's almost like, oh, okay, that's great. You really have to cut out the big stuff. So, what I think that, now that we've kind of really got this going, is that I think we need to go back, we, as a staff, will work together. We're going to prioritize. We'll try to get some estimates on the dam issue, because I think that could be something that's unknown out there, that's definitely going to affect this budget. The NPDS permits thing will definitely affect this budget. And then, what we're going to come back with is options. Option one would be, or your options are, to adjust the rates, cut capital, borrow money. Those are going to be what you're going to be, and I'll go out there and investigate what kind of borrowings we're going to get to solve some of these problems, because we have a million dollars here, we got a million dollars here, and we got a million dollars here. It just, it just adds up quickly.
Can you tell us how you're going to raise our bond rating back up?
How?
Yeah.
The bond rating is A-stable, which is not bad. It's not bad. It was A-plus, it was A-stable. Now, it's A-stable. The bonds already took into consideration the rates that are already voted on, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean they know that some of those rates were earmarked for debt coming forward. So, they would see that coming forward. To be honest, what I would look at is going to the infrastructure bank at, in the California Infrastructure Bank, to see what kind of rates we could get from them. That doesn't take a bond issuance, it doesn't take a bond rating, it doesn't take any of that into consideration. It's probably our lowest-cost money for the best bank for our money, for our buck. So, that's where I'd probably start. But then, I can come back to you with some information that shows what, what it's going to take to get Priority One, Priority Two, Priority Three done, and what the need for that is. I mean, the FEMA grant is, if we're approved for that, it's almost seventy-five, twenty-five, but it's a million bucks.
Yeah, if they have it.
Yeah, you know, so you're leaving two on the table if you don't put up the one. So, those are the things I really think that we need to now go back to. What I would like to do for a lot of the edits and stuff, maybe some of the small stuff, is if you guys have time, to come in and meet with me individually, we'll walk through it. I'll put all the edits together, and then I'll reissue it out to the board, and then, I mean, if you guys are still up for it, I think that we should probably do another workshop later on at the end of this month, and see what we can kind of go forward with.
Make it in the evening for Dan can make it.
Sure.
You know, he's-
I liked it, and maybe we don't need as many staff for the next one, because I think staff did put a lot of their input in. Maybe we do to kind of, when we're fighting for our priorities, but I thought it was really good to make sure that it was on staff.
I'd say bring the staff, but last year, we had two night meetings to be able to put out a budget.
I think for me, I mean, all the charts and everything are nice, but for me, you have all of these sections from, from the water treatment plant to transmission, you know, distribution, all that stuff. I would like to see those individuals updated and correctly reflect accurately and prioritize the issues that are important to each different department, so that I know-
Yep.
-what they're looking for. And if I say, "Well, maybe we can do this but not this," I don't have them go, "Oh, crap, that should have been up here or not." So, if we could have that, at least for me, that would really help.
No, I think we heard that, too.
A lot of things in here aren't current, even the graphs.
No, and-
I would suggest we don't have another meeting until we have that information-
And the text, I'd like to see come from-
We'll get the text all updated.
Yeah, from the department.
But, and we'll have better actuals at the end of the month.
About a week, if you had a, wherever the meeting is, at least a week. This is, you know, we're sort of rommy-domy by now, going through special meetings and thickies.
I got it to you two weeks ago. I'll get it to you early, so you have a lot of time to look it over.
I mean, if you want us to email some input on some of the, we could.
I would love that.
Okay.
Yeah, or just come sit with me, sit down, and I'll go walk through a lot of the edits.
When I phoned out, it was seventy-two inches, or seventy-two pages. I wasn't about to print it out, so.
But we could have an evening meeting if you, if we got all that in there and the staff's prioritization of their projects, you know? Then you wouldn't have to necessarily be here. We definitely appreciate and heard what you guys were all saying, so.
I don't think we should do a budget without you guys here.
Without or with?
Without.
I think they're-
I agree with you, Ann.
I would like these guys to come to every meeting we have. They did for years, and then gradually, they got pruned off, I don't know why. And you can, Neil's worth, wealth of knowledge, we don't have anybody else with that. Bill Taylor on running the water plant, Keith and Jim, they go to walks together, and I think you've probably seen them walking and talking, because they, I can't imagine it being a silent thing. And Jim, with his crankiness, we can always have a little bit of crankiness.
Well, I think-
He's locked off in his mind, that's rude.
I think if I can make you here to a board meeting during a working day, so can Dan, and I think it's more important that we have it when the employees, who are a big part of what we're talking about, you know, working on, should be here to answer questions that we may have.
See, I wasn't trying to preclude you guys, I was just saying that if we had to have an evening meeting, then if you had all your priorities in there, but, yeah.
I think it's up to you guys. I mean, obviously, it works best when it's during their normal work hours, and you can see that a lot of times-
In fact, hold on, Dan not being here is a yes, and Ann and I say yes, so.
Well, we don't count that, Bill.
Well, we could compromise early afternoon.
We have notes on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, from that standpoint, if we're meeting as a staff, and we're putting this together, and it's solid, it's presented to you ahead of time, you can look at that, so the duration of the meeting is going to just be more succinct and, pardon me, very efficient.
There you go.
So, I think we can, we can make, we can, well- So I, I, I think we can, we can make, we, we'll, we'll, we got a lot of good input back, a lot of understanding of where the board wants to go, and we'll get some good information, and we'll, we'll work as a staff to get this thing buttoned up, and I'd say at the, what is, end of May, so, end of June, I think that we could reconvene.
I like it.
And we can still flush out ideas, it doesn't mean we have to approve it at that point, but I think it'll be tighter, we'll get a lot of the texts, we'll be updated, priorities, goals will all be updated, and you guys will have that information to go forward with.
And I'd like to hear from admin and from IT and other, you know, other finance, you know, other departments that we didn't get to hear from today.
Sorry, I had an, IT did have a presentation, if, do you want to, I want to blow your steak.
One sentence, everything you see here today is because of IT in some way, that's all.
That's all we have to know, short and sweet, I like that.
Chalk liver here.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, yeah, we'll talk private, we can.
Yep.
Meet or, or email.
Just to let you know too, just a little updates, June fourth, which is Friday, I believe, June second, I don't know, what is, June second?
Second.
Is, is the due dates on the headhunters?
Oh, okay.
I think we only got one response so far.
Oh, disappointed.
We sent a gazillion to them.
Is it Friday?
I think it's Friday.
It's Friday.
Is the due date on that. The RFP for the retirement plan providers went out on the nineteenth, while I was at my conference at the GFPA, I spoke to multiple retirement providers there, I've gotten many, many.
Good.
People interested in, in bidding on it, from, who knows, they're all, they're all top-quality people, so, so I think we're going to get some really good responses back on that, on that, and just from talking to them, I feel like our, the size of our plan is big enough that the, we're going to get some really good rates, so, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about that too, so. Jim's got the RFP, as soon as we hear back from the state, we'll be sending that out for that.
Could we get a copy of that letter that you sent to the board?
Absolutely, yeah, I have a, before you leave, I'll, I'll, I'll run a copy for you.
Okay, thanks.
Trying to think of anything else that we need to update that's going on, we got country club started, right, pipeline projects, we got people out there moving, piping the ground, and.
Temps on board.
Temps are on board.
We got the last one coming.
I'm together, Pearson and Skyway, we'll complete that in the next two weeks.
So, just a quick and, quick and dirty update of what's going on at the PID, so.
That fifteen-minute thing we were talking about.
Fifteen minutes of lunch.
That's a good trick, Kevin.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate all the.
Thank you.
Thank you.